How you doing? What's going on, y'all? See what's going on out here is a Monday. We'll see. Still walking up right now. I'm doing okay. How you doing? How y'all doing? Ah, let's see what's going on. This guy? Oh, my God, y'all down right there. Y'all think I can talk to God? Y'all tell the guy? Watching Candace, perfect time and then. My day going well, thank you. It's a jacket. What's up, guy? Y'all want me to talk to God? Y'all don't want to talk to God? Huh?
Hey!
Now, that's the sign you got?
I have a simple sign today. I also made two other new ones over there. I got to show them to you.
Let me say the new ones.
Okay? It's some simple fuck MAGA. Okay? And then the other side is. Maggot stupid. I also have a special treat for people. Because when I was going through my sign making stuff, I found my old speech from Pro-Choice. Okay? And I didn't get a chance to read it a lot, so I would pass it out and have the, uh, to read and pass on. But I didn't realize I still had a copy. So it's for, uh, it's for Pro-Choice. For abortion, for legal abortion. Okay? So.
For illegal abortion?
For legal.
Legal?
Illegal abortion. Okay, I'm, I'm.
So you for, you for abortion?
I am for abortions, but, okay.
My chat like, oh, Lord, this guy.
The, uh, um, well, there's a cutoff. Okay? Uh, the, 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 uh, the most premature baby that survived was.
Yeah, they took it down a couple of days ago.
Yeah, yeah.
They gave them a notice, they ain't move it, and they just came and took the whole thing down.
Threw it all out. I think they threw it out, I guess. So, um, they, the, uh, most premature baby that survived is 21 weeks. So that's a good place to cut, cut off the. The, uh.
What about a great victim, boy?
Oh, no, no, that's, 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 that's exceptions. Okay? If she's raped.
Great.
Or there's incest, or that the mother's life is in danger of the body, or if the baby, they could tell if the baby won't survive. Stuff like that, then you could get an abortion. But otherwise, cutoff at 21. Okay? I'll read this to you. You trying to hear?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. "I will be calling our opponents anti-choicers. They cannot be called pro-lifers when they run peaceful protesters over, blow up clinics, and murder or injure doctors, nurses, transporters, and emotional supporters." That's my lead-in, okay? "The SCOTUS ruling, Supreme Court, ruling, striking down Roe versus Wade is wrong on multiple levels. One, the two sides have unequal arguments. Pro-choicers aren't, are not forcing anyone to have an abortion. We just want control of our own bodies. Anti-choicers want to control all women. They must believe abortion is done on a whim. This could not be less, true, less true. It is the most heart-wrenching and traumatic decision of their lives. Never a capricious choice. If you cite religious belief to justify your opposition, fine, we respect that. Understand you must not force your beliefs onto others. Two, anti-choicers are a minority. Seventy percent of people are pro-choice. This harkens back to an age of imperialism, colonialism, apartheid. All are examples of a minority subjugating, exploiting, and abusing a majority. We are not surprised by this. All anti-choicers are either white supremacists, religious zealots, chauvinists, bigots, or a combination of these. We will not bow to such tyranny. Three, including the fact many women will die in illegal back alley abortions, and anti-choice law actually costs more lives than it saves. Most women who opt for abortion have tried many methods to avoid pregnancy. The pill, IUDs, condoms, spermicides, the rhythm method, the after pill, et cetera. And abortion is the final option. A woman forced to have a baby at a time in her life when she cannot properly care for it will have devastating impact on her future life. For example, she is too young to rape or incest, afraid of the harm caused by an abusive relationship that could injure the child. A single mom in poverty with multiple offspring. The added burden could prevent her from improving her situation to a point where she and a significant other may be able to conceive and raise a happy, healthy family. Each month, a woman produces an egg cell. Men produce thousands of sperm. These are hundreds of possible offspring in future generations, all traded so an unwanted child can be doomed to a tragic life of misery. Do not say, put the child up for abortion or foster care. Wealthier white women will have no problem accessing legal abortions. An anti-choice law primarily impacts poor and minority women. Do you really believe these majority baby, minority babies will be adopted by wealthier white couples when there are white children available, albeit in smaller numbers? Poorer and minority couples will be financially unable to adopt a much greater number of minority babies. They will be put into the already poor foster care system. Sounds like a good way to blunt the replacement theory. Four, your Bible states anyone who accepts Jesus as their Savior will enter heaven, no matter how heinous they were in life. If you tell me your God would deny heaven to a desperate woman and an innocent unborn soul, I say this to you: Your God is evil. He is unworthy of worship." Finally. "Pro-choicers are aware anti-choicers will not stop at Roe v. Wade." I want to remind people, I wrote this in 2022, and all this stuff is now happening, three years later. Okay, I wrote this in 2022. "The traitor SCOTUS would immediately invite more draconian laws. Lower courts are already packed with partisan judges, prepared to impose their vision on millions of women. Contraception outlaw. Hmm. Criminalizing abortion procedures by doctors and nurses. Hmm. Prisons for failing to report anyone associated with any abortion, including transporters. We realize the evil intent in their hearts. The left is right, the right is wrong. Democratic socialism will defeat religious capitalistic fascism. We are in a majority. We will win." Yeah. That's what I can produce when I'm not wild. And I wrote that in 2022. Okay, come over and show them my other side.
You making a sign today?
Yup.
Yup?
I'm not, I'm recycling, in fact, when I found this in the back of my closet, I thought I'd gotten rid of it. I found a board that had ideas for signs, and I thought I missed it. So now I'm starting to incorporate them in some of my signs. Okay? Some of this stuff is like, based on 2023 stuff. I don't know if I, uh, if I got any, I got two.
So you been mad at the Republicans before MAGA?
Oh, yeah. For 50 years. That's why I'm upset.
For 50 years?
For 50 years, I didn't like Republicans. But it was always like, I know I'm right. I know they're wrong. But they think they're right, they think, I mean, it's fine. We'll go with it. But now they're telling me I'm wrong and forcing, can't have that. Can't have, I've been right my whole life. So 50 years of pent-up rage against Republicans. This is the point we're at.
Don't that sound like Trump? I've been right my whole life?
Yup. You know what the difference is? He's lying. I'm telling the truth.
Oh, my God.
Tommy Tuberville. The guy who lives in Alabama, or he lives in, uh, Alabama, ran in Tennessee, okay? Totally overt, malevolent moron? Yes. Traitors, unhinged bastard. Evangelical racist villain idiot liar loves evil. Maggots, more vile than the putrid slime that clings to the bowels of hell is my little devil. Trump threatens Nigeria with war because he says they're, uh, abusing Catholics?
Yeah, I heard it.
There is no hate worse than Christian love.
I thought he said they have beers and Christians.
Yeah. But, but, so he's attacking them. He wants to bomb Nigeria.
Yeah, I saw the true social post.
It's the Christians being evil bombing, bombing another, another, uh, uh, religion. So. Like they say, there is no hate like Christian love.
He said, "There is no hate like Christian love."
Do I have something on the back of this? I think I do.
It's somewhere on the back?
Yeah, well, okay. There's, this is, this is directly from, okay? This is directly from 2022.
Hand it upside down.
Yeah, yeah, the other thing is upside down. You can take it home. You said, "The true, the true threats to America." And I did this in 2022, uh, 2023. White supremacists, the swastika means yes. White supremacists are a threat. Russian Putin, no. House GOP runs, yes, they're a threat, as they're proving. North Korea, no. No, they're not a threat to us. Christian fascists, definitely a threat. Republic of China? They're no threat to us. Ultra-MAGA, threat. The enemy within. The enemy within. Here's the enemy within, right here.
So you said the enemy within before Trump?
Yup. Trump, Trump, Trump. Okay. This, this is a guy that I happen to come on a station that's, uh, apart, uh, the fascist Christians, the Christian fascists. I love, I don't know anything about this guy except he was spewing that all, it showed the country should be run entirely by whites. Okay? So his name is Andrew Isker, and he's a pastor. So. Another Nazi demanding rulers entirely white.
I can't see, hold on.
Okay? Okay, Andrew Isker is his name. Okay? Idiot, supports Klan, embraces racism. Please attempt suicide to obstruct racism. Okay, because he's such a racist. Okay, maybe if he commits suicide, there'll be one less person to worry about. I want him to kill himself. I don't want anybody else to kill him.
Oh, my God.
All right. Okay, that's, that's, yeah, okay, okay. This is, uh, somebody I never even heard of, but somebody mentioned it. Okay? Somebody mentioned it.
I asked him questions after.
Cam Higbee. Klan and Jason Moran.
Why you got Cam up there?
Because he's, he's a racist.
Cam ain't no racist.
His IQ is greatly below yours. Well, I watched a little bit of something on his, on his channel, so I came up with this.
Cam not a racist, bro. I could, I could vouch for Cam. He not a racist.
Is he, is he, is he against the immigrants? But that's racist. I'm not talking to blacks. Against, against.
In what way? I mean, he, he probably want illegals gone, but what's wrong with that? That don't make that racist.
The definition of illegals for you, for people like him is not.
Well, we talking about the definition out of being a dictionary, not what, you know, we not making up nothing. Why you had to put Cam on?
Racist if you're brown or black, and a white man is against you, that white man is a racist.
He not against them, he against illegals, immigrants.
That is, that is rhetorical. Okay? That is rhetorical. Okay?
Bro, you shouldn't have put my homie up here, bro.
Homie?
That's my dog, yeah.
Really? Oh, okay, well, I'm sorry. He's still a racist, but I'm sorry. Okay? All right. Here's, uh, so I can also do.
How you think I started this YouTube channel? Who you think helped me do this?
I don't know.
Cam.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
So how he racist? I'm black.
Yeah, but he's against the immigrants.
He ain't against them.
Yes, he is.
He against illegals in the country?
Please, man, don't, don't.
You ever had a conversation with him?
Jake, Jake, please, no, I haven't. But I, I said he was here one time. I'll come up to him.
You gotta, you gotta know I'm gonna say something. I'm telling you, that's my friend.
Okay, oh, okay, all right, so, that's okay. I don't have friends like that. I don't, I don't have racist friends.
Come on, man, come on, man.
All right. And I'm also to show that I'm good at acronyms in between. GOP sucks. Evangelists? Patriot Trump? Trump Incorporated? Fascists? Proud Boys? Three percenters? Alt-keepers, DeSantis? So these are militia groups. Right wing militia, you know, alt-keepers.
What video you watched of Cam?
So. I, 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 I pulled it up, and it was, I'm talking about, oh, it started off with, it smells like a farm out here, that video. That's the only, okay, then I got.
He said it smelled like a farm out here? Why was that?
Where, wherever he was standing, so.
And you just calling my boy a, uh, racist because he a Republican man?
But he's against immigrant, immigrants, yes, he's a racist.
I think you made that sign just because you knew I was gonna come up with the camera. Like, yeah, I'm finna do Cam. Why you looking like that? When you make that sign about Cam?
So you said you're, I didn't know you were personal in front of Cam? I didn't know that.
When you, uh, make the sign about?
I said this, I, I, when I go through different stuff, this, I happen to just.
I'm saying, you know, you made everything else. When was this made?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? Oh, man, bro. Oh, what's up?
Well, because I'm making new signs. Like I said, I'm making new signs.
Look at, bro.
I'm making.
Calling my boy a racist, bro. Look at the name. Come on, bro. God just be calling my boy a racist.
Well, I didn't know he's your point, but that doesn't mean he's not a racist.
I'm black. Where you finding him at? He make these. Where you finding Cam at? I know. He talking about he saw a video.
On YouTube.
Graduated from YouTube. He talking about he saw a video and Cam said it smelled like a farm. He a racist. Jesus.
No, 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 no. I just, I just, if he's, if he's against the immigrants, he's a racist.
He ain't against immigrants, bro. He, he just want illegals deported.
But what you're telling me is he supports this.
I mean, far as illegals getting deported, yeah, he supported. I ain't gonna lie.
That's rhetoric.
You gotta explain to me how that, people just say shit is rhetoric when they, and they don't, they don't agree with it.
People throw that illegal in there. What they're really saying is we don't want any immigrants.
You can't just be sad shit like, and you got American flag on your hat? You feeling good today?
That's a black, that's a black American flag.
You feeling good today?
Yeah, that's a black American flag.
Just tell me why my boy a racist?
Because he's against immigrants.
He not though.
I consider him.
All right, okay, okay, so let's move past that.
Okay.
Tell me how you know he against immigrants?
Somebody said he was here the other day.
He was like, two weeks ago.
Okay, and I said, that was the day I wasn't here. I, maybe I could have talked to him if he was here, but.
You gotta, you gotta do. It'd be better if you talked to him first before you call him a racist.
My research is, is, is done.
Oh, your research is done? When I first seen him, I called him a racist. What, what you would say if I found out I was wrong? And I admitted I was wrong?
What?
I called him a racist when I first saw him.
Oh, okay, so. Or if he comes back here one time, I'll talk to him.
Conversation with him and I really.
But, but if he mentions illegal immigrants, I'm gonna say just, just sweeping everybody up and putting them in, and then you don't know where they, where they go.
So if I, so if I told, so if I told you that I got no problem with illegal immigrants getting deported, I'm racist?
No, no, illegal, but they, but they just pulling everybody up.
You worry, you worry more about the condition than the importation.
He saying they sending everybody out.
Right, right.
So you worry more about the conditions than the deportation?
But that ain't what he's saying Cam support.
No, 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 wait, wait.
See, look, no, 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 you got, he, bro.
They're sweeping up like 20, 200 people. Oh, there's two of them illegal. And meanwhile, the people would be, so I guess that could be.
The process too.
Right, 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 right.
So, but it's the other.
Because I know Obama was, but they went through the process.
18 getting let go? Is the other 18 getting let go when they swoop up 20? And they realize only two illegal? Are they letting the other 18 go?
People are missing.
They can't find?
They, they got 3,000 people. They can't find them.
What's get that off? How do all this reflect on Cam though? How do all this?
Because he's backing the way it's being done. To my knowledge, that's what, that's, that's what I, that's what I.
Nah, I mean, he ain't never told me that.
Then, if that's.
He said he backing the whole.
Yeah, he ain't never said that. I ain't never heard him say that. I done had in dumb conversations.
Why you have more depth, like I've never met?
He'll probably be down for you interviewing.
You ain't never met him and you made this?
I didn't make it up. Okay? He's for this process. When he was here, he was with the good guys. They tell me that, oh, Cam, and I go, who is Cam Higbee? Oh, he was over there interviewing people and he's like, saying it right for what they're doing. So.
It's not necessarily wrong for America to deport somebody who came over here illegally. That's what I'm saying.
The problem is the definition of illegal. Asylum, asylum seeker is not illegal.
Dictionary, we definitely.
An asylum seeker is not an illegal. Okay? So, and they're just scooping everybody.
Yeah.
And the thing about the asylum seekers is the reason they're coming up is because it's getting so bad down there because we destabilize governments. And guess what? The drug trafficking? If people wanted to do drugs in this country, there would be no drug trafficking.
Yeah.
So literally, if I'm Mexico, I'm going.
I mean, if.
Why are my people dying and being buried in the desert because America can't control their drug problem? Why are my people dying?
So you said we got the killer problem over here?
We have to, we have to lessen the, the drug problem there.
Do Mexico got a drug problem?
That I don't know. They probably do too.
Yeah.
They would still have to stop it at the gate if a turn come in, then that mean.
Yeah, but most, well, like, let's say, no, okay.
Are you against the borders being closed?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
You against the borders being closed?
No, no, I'm not. I'm, I'm, in fact, I'm for, this, in fact, I think I explained it to you. Explain it to him. This is how you partially solve immigration.
This man the best thing on YouTube, bro. I'm not lying.
You've made more, more areas where people can come in. Okay, immigrant? Okay? Now, a lot of these Hispanic immigrants, they get into construction. Well, give them some construction stuff, help them build their own stuff. Okay? Now, the key to this though is, is that there needs to be a law passed where the work week is no longer 40 hours. It used to be 60, it used to be 80.
Yeah.
Now you pass a law, it's 32. But everybody brings home the same amount of money. This is where the corporations get pissed off. Okay? It says, if I'm working 40 hours and bringing home 1,000, now I'm working 32 hours, bring home 1,000. In essence, I'm getting a raise. Plus, I got three days off. I can spend more time with my family, maybe get a side job. Okay? And now, for every four workers.
Yes.
Obviously, not mom and pops. Okay? But you cut it off, maybe if you, if you're incorporated and have 100 employees.
Yeah.
Or, you know, 1,000, 10,000? For every four workers, you have to hire another person. So now, when you walk out of work with your three buddies instead of that homeless person begging, oh, look at that guy, he begging. He's working with you now.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, and he's earning money. He was paying taxes. And now he's an American, now he's American.
Yes. But if.
But that corporations don't want that. And here's another thing. Somebody, somebody's actually confronted me with this. They go, well, then all the corporations will move. You don't let them. Trump, look what Trump is doing to the, uh, uh, to the news outlets. Okay? You tell, okay, you're not moving your company. Okay? You, your company is being bought out. Okay? And we'll put, they're gonna elect a new guy who's gonna do that. That guy doesn't do it, he's out. Until you get down to people who are gonna hire the extra person and pay the people the same. Okay? And no more tax shelters. Every penny that you make in America is taxed. No more, oh, let's put it in Switzerland. Let's put it in Cameroon or, or Cayman Islands. No. Every penny that is made in the United States is taxed.
Yes.
Okay? Now you want to hear my tax parting thing? I think I already told them, okay? At the, at the end of fiscal year, the government decides how much wealth is created in the country.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna reuse round numbers because it makes it much easier. But, okay? Let's say it's 20 trillion. I'm sure it's more than 20 trillion, okay? Let's say it's $20 trillion, okay? There's two hundred, uh, million adults.
Yes.
From Jeff Bezos to homeless person.
Yeah.
Okay? Uh, two hundred million in the twenty trillion is a million dollars.
Yeah.
So, the average person, I mean, obviously, the investment majority don't, the average amount of income for, is a million. Anybody who makes less than a million, no taxes.
What do you think about dividends and capital gains?
Okay, I'm, I get to that. I get to with the corporations, okay? Now, anybody making more than a million, all the way up to Jeff Bezos.
Yes.
Pays a percentage depending how much money they make.
Yes.
Okay, but anybody making less than a million pays no taxes.
Yes.
Okay, now you decide how much money is generated by corporate, even though all wealth is generated by people.
Yes.
Okay, okay, but, let's say, okay, you figure out, whatever it is, let's say, they figure out corporations are, and businesses are responsible for sixteen trillion dollars.
Yes.
The people are responsible for four trillion. Eighty percent. Corporations pay eighty percent of the taxes.
Yes.
The people pay, uh, uh, twenty percent. The million earners and above would pay that twenty percent. Now, the government decides how much money they need to actually call taxes.
Yes.
Bring in his taxes. For instance, people petition. Let's say Broadbent says, hey, we need ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
They can pick it up, you, of course, you review it, you get the ten thousand dollars, okay? All right, so you just said, let's say out of the twenty trillion dollars, sixteen trillion has to be used as for taxes.
Yes.
Okay, so sixteen trillion, what, what would be, that would be like, like twelve? Yeah, like a little more than twelve, like thirteen trillion dollars.
Yes.
Is eighty percent. Thirteen trillion dollars is paid by corporations, including like the dividends.
Yes.
That's a great, dividends, that, that comes out of there. The three and a half trillion is paid for the people who make more than a million dollars or more.
So what do you think, you know, as a business instructor, you used to do in, in the instructor? Okay, now, so what we have is double taxation in a corporation, right? Okay, here's where it goes. The corporation pays taxes, right?
No, no.
Hold on, listen, 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 listen. The corporation pays taxes, right? Okay, now, now that I got the dividends from the corporation, why am I paying taxes again?
Because that's your personal income. The corporation is, you can have your, whatever you-
I'm a part of a corporation.
No, wait, here's the goal, okay?
I'm an owner.
What your salary is, okay, fine.
Yes.
And then the corporation, let's say, let's say you expected a dividend of like two trillion, uh, two, two million dollars.
Yes.
Well, corporation, so, now eighty percent of that is corporation tax. You get the rest of it and you don't pay taxes on that. Even though you lost eighty percent of your two, two million.
Yeah, they might be taxing a little too much. Right, taxing everything.
It could be, it could be, it could be, you know, because they'd be in this part too anyway, so. In fact, if you wanna include the dividends in that.
Yes.
As part of it, you could do that, so they're not done.
Capital gains, the dividends.
Right, right, okay, that, that could count as a personal income and go over here and, and you get that, but then you pay taxes over here as part of the
Yes.
People that make more than one, that, that, that'd be a tweak, okay?
Yes.
So, and then, see, this is, this is my belief of our team, a lot of people, mostly, they Republicans seem to think the only thing that the government should pay for is police and military. The police to oppress the people and the military to attack other countries. The government, everything that's necessary to live should be paid by the government through taxes, okay? So, now I'm not talking like a homeless person gets a steak dinner.
Yeah.
Homeless person gets a bologna sandwich with cheese or something like that.
Yes.
Okay, every day to keep him alive, okay? So the five things that they need, people need to live, discretionary income is, I don't, I don't get, to, I, I the government doesn't give me money so I can go to a ball game.
Yeah.
Okay, that's discretionary income.
Yeah.
Okay, but, uh, food, shelter, health, education, clothing should be mostly provided by the government, the things that people need to live.
Yes.
That's, that's for a government by the people, not this government, okay, obviously, okay? But, if the, a government by the people takes care of the people, okay? And whatever's, okay, after they decide that, whatever's left, okay? All right, you got a million dollars left, give it to the military and have them build another-
I got a question, do any government do that anywhere in the world?
They're, they're improving, they're improving, okay? Because you have to understand, I, I told you about how religion works, about how, I, uh, at the beginning, okay, the god of Abraham, I'm, I'm atheist, but Muslims, Jews, and Christians all worship the same god, okay? Right now, the Muslims are the most violent religion because they're the newest. They're only fifteen hundred years old about, okay? The first really big organization was the Jews, and they were vicious when they started. They were killing people, okay? Cause that was their god telling them they could kill people.
Yes.
Like Jericho, when walls came down, they were slaughtering all the people.
Yes.
At the very, you know, back in the, five, five thousand B.C.
Yes.
Okay? Then they got, then Jesus came, okay? And now, the Christians moved off and the Jews became, okay, they, they, they invaded Satan because they said Christians, well, we can't have God being evil, okay? Causing death, so we're gonna make Satan, okay? So then the Christians adopt Jesus, but then later on, the Christians, they had the Crusades. The pope was killing people. A pope, because, yeah, the pope of the Crusades hit a mace.
Which pope?
But, I, I think the first pope Leo was the first one. Okay, you can look back, Pope Benedict-
No, I ain't saying you lying, I'm just asking a question.
The popes used to literally kill people in battle, okay? The first, the first few popes, okay? Then Christians, Christians became less violent and now, and the same, okay, you're talking about the government that's doing it. Europe was always very violent, okay? But since World War Two, it's been much better and they've progressed, okay? Now, we're kinda at the point where Europe was just fighting each other. We'll get to that point because we're newer than that. Eventually, we'll get to this and we'll become, we'll, we'll move past it, okay? It's, history repeats itself, that's the way it goes, okay? Right now, when a crisis, like all the many battles that Europe had, okay? All the way back to the beginning of time, you know, the, the, uh, the Hundred Years' War, the Thirty Years' War, the Napoleonic War, World War One, World War Two, Romans coming up again, you know, all, and slowly but surely, it became more and more peaceful. And now Europe is basically peaceful, okay, to get along, okay? There's no European countries fighting each other, okay? There's still stuff like, you know, so, they have advanced, they have now surpassed us. They are more civilized than we are now. We're kinda like, took a step back, we're the lead, we've taken a step back, it's getting kinda hairy. But we will advance through this and then we'll move forward. Thank you.
What's your shirt say today?
GOP speak. Don't say gay and CRT in schools is parents' rights. The right to raise the next generation of intelligence. Like Ted Cruz says, and he asked, are babies born racist? No, they're taught to be racist by their parents and their family and the people around them. Racism is taught, okay? I think I told you this, when I was a child, I lived in Logan Square and Lincoln Square.
Yes.
I had a black friend, a Japanese friend, an Hispanic friend, a Greek friend, a Polish friend, a German friend, an Italian friend, two Jewish friends, a kid from the South. Not in both neighborhoods, but between the two neighborhoods. I, with all of them, we had a great time, no problem. My mother remarried, she'd been divorced, she was me and my brother, single mother. She remarried a great gentleman, when my step, my stepfather.
Yeah.
Okay, he adopted us. We moved to Berwyn, okay? Bought a house, at the time, I didn't know this, okay, by the G.I. Bill.
Yeah.
Okay, because he was white.
Yeah.
Black people, black soldiers didn't get the G.I. Bill. I didn't realize that, I didn't understand right, right then. The first thing I saw when I worked for Berwyn, where all the minorities? I didn't see another black face anywhere close to me until I started working for Jewel.
Yeah.
Ten years later.
Yeah.
And it's still, it's a, I'm glad to talk with other people of color, but basically, the contact I have with people of color is mostly on my work, my job. I was a, that night, overnight manager at Jewel for most of my career.
Yes.
That was my interaction with black people.
Yes.
Back as a child, occasionally, a Hispanic kid would wander over from Cicero.
Yes.
Okay? When I went to Martin West in Berwyn.
Yes.
All white, now it's all Hispanic, because that's just the way, I mean, it's all because of, the whites moving away. But I'm used to being with minorities. I embrace minorities.
Yes.
That's how I was raised, okay? These people in the South, you know, wherever they come from, and they're racist, I don't, you know? People are the same everywhere, deep down inside, people are the same everywhere. Everybody, and the thing about people say, oh, they don't want people to come in the country, that shows you what a great country is because people wanna come here. You think you'd be proud that people wanna come here and we-
I think people just saying, come legally though.
I'm gonna bring up, you know, see, I, I, you get this, okay, I see Kristi Noem's new, new commercial saying, leave the country and then you can come in legally. Do you know it takes some people thirty years to come in legally? These people be dead. If you're forty years and you leave the country, you think you're gonna get back in here? No, you're not. And the reason it's so bad now is because it's Pete closing, that, somebody said, oh, there's like three hundred eighty-two points entry. That counts the ones above the border. This doesn't count, it's a Mexico.
You know what the new process is right now?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not-
Are you not familiar with it?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not too many steps ago, but even people are almost there.
Yeah.
This used to be a center where you come to fill out your papers.
Yes.
Okay, which I didn't even know about, okay, before this.
I didn't know that. This was administrative.
Right, right, the administrative, they come in, now they got like two more steps to go, oh, you're illegal, get him out.
Yes.
Can I tell you what, what I love?
So there's usually to be a bill where you come to get your papers and get citizenship?
Yep, and then they, they haul them away there, then they're afraid to, they're afraid to show up.
I didn't know that, I gotta look into that.
It's, you know, it's, it's, they, people wanna, people throwing that illegal thing conveniently. They don't want anybody in except whites, okay? All right?
So you think they gonna come for black folk?
This thing I knew was coming too, okay? I saw this also on YouTube, okay? Some guy who worked, a black gentleman who works for Walmart, wherever, whatever city it was in. The Walmart got stormed by people stealing food.
I saw that.
Okay, because they're desperate, okay?
I saw that.
Okay, and that's Trump's plan. Don't give them any staff benefits, you're gonna cause riots and they need to crack down with the military and round these people.
I read something, I don't know how true it is, I ain't really clicked, but it said they gonna get parts of papers or something like that.
That's not Trump's plan, he's just signing off on it, that's Project Twenty Twenty Five, that's the whole plan. Project Twenty Five, everything that's happening is Project Twenty Twenty Five, okay? And some of these people, these MAGA scum, the maggots, eat it up. They eat it up. That's why I hate them, I hate maggots to the core of my body. You've heard this.
I heard it, yeah.
MAGA is worse than Nazis. This is why, at the end of World War One, Germany was destroyed, okay? They had to pay reparations for the war, okay? By the time the depression hit.
I'll be back, I'm finna go get the violins, I'll be back. Guy just going through his whole spiel again, cause City Hall, it ain't hurt, so. Let City Hall get that content. I'm finna go up here and watch them play these violins and stuff and see what's up, bet nobody start crying. Cause you know, once he say the word MAGA, it's up, like. Y'all know how God always say, okay, I'm done, and he come right back for another thirty minutes, another forty minutes. Dude, it's nuts, well, he say, I hate MAGA to my core. He said he hate MAGA so much, they told him, you gotta go to hell, but MAGA going with you, he'll lead the way. That's insane. Say he gonna tell the devil, I'll be your warrior. But, y'all better watch, blood. I'm trying to go pack, go. Police body, took him down. Oh my God. It don't sound terrible. Hmm, I'm not finna rap. They is doing a great job. I don't know, I just came up here. New winter, it's not bad at all. Relax. Stephanie. That's NBC News, I don't know what they on. Nice little break from the chaos. Oh my goodness. I don't think they looking for nothing, man. Yeah, it's kinda long, I don't know. Y'all be meaning anything, this is great to me. It's a nice little change up. I gotta hold the phone to my clap. There's other people watching, they've been clapping when they been. It's down to Jack, it's my J. I don't know where it's seen. My cash app and my links on my page is Cicero forty-eight hundred. I'm not finna do no shout out for it. Y'all say anything, man. Be good, type. It's Jake News.
Jake, Jake?
Yeah, Jake News forty-eight hundred.
Do you know whatever happened to the guy that shot the old man?
Yeah, I mean, they was following the other dude yesterday and they, they came and picked him up, I sent him, he was still drunk. I mean, he ain't get arrested or nothing like that, though.
Is that on YouTube?
What, oh yeah, that video on YouTube, I, I ain't got when he pushed them, but I got when they like following him and when the police came and all that.
Where do you post that, though, like?
You just go to the live videos.
And what, what, uh?
Oh, it's on YouTube.
YouTube, okay.
Yeah.
You hear a lot?
Yeah, pretty much every day. Nice meeting you too. Yeah, my name's Jay. Uh, nice to meet you, man. Look at that guy, y'all, he be ready to show any camera, all his stuff, look at him. I won't object to interview everybody. Where he see some curvy girls at, bro, cause the camera playing tricks on him. Damn, yeah, bro. What you mean why they ain't hear just another form of protest, at least it's peaceful? Y'all wanna see the radicals. I could go back over there with y'all, y'all, go back over there with guy. Get y'all what y'all want. All they want is City Hall and Channel Two? I don't know, when people ask for your channel up here, you don't know if it's for good or bad, but it is what it is. Like and subscribe, I don't care. I walk up past that dude, he was talking, and then the last part I heard was he said we Antifa. That's cause Stephanie ass putting that shit on my videos, I told her, I quit putting that shit up there. We ain't gonna be able to get nobody to talk, we ain't gonna be able to get no interview because they think I'm on YouTube calling them Antifa. Stop putting that up there. You putting your beliefs on the video instead of mine. Knowing you far right. Man, you know people don't wanna be called that, stop putting that on them videos. See when, um, Antifa camp gets taken down. We ain't gonna be able to get nobody to talk to us. Bro. And I ain't really like up for debate, stop putting it on the videos. It ain't about what they call theyself, it's about people wanting to talk to them. It's different when somebody call theyself something, then they see it on the internet, y'all know how people is, people care more about they internet life than they regular life. Y'all know how people are. Oh, the people playing the music, they ain't crazy. Thank you, Uncle Sam. Man, they doing good, I, I mean, what, y'all don't wanna watch it? Just some good people try to come up here and play some music, you know, give people something to do. Better than people just hollering and screaming and throwing insults, shit. Yeah, a lot of the chat liking it. I guess you gotta be a certain age to appreciate something like this, you know what I'm saying? I think it's super cool, like this, this what you call talent, everybody can't do this, this is talent. I wanna know where to start. If it's helping you sleep, take a little nap, just leave the stream on. We need some peace, these last two strings been craze, so I ain't gonna argue with no peace. At least I ain't gotta run around in my joints. I ain't gotta trick nobody, at least ain't nobody trying to hurt nobody. Me too, this really is what protest, what protest that is about. People done forgot that, that's why it's important to show it. You can send a message without doing all that other stuff. These people probably could be somewhere getting paid to do the same thing, but they done took time out their day to do it here, this is cool. See, every man, the whole chat of Titanic, obviously. It's crazy that my phone was picking it up from across the street, cause Stephanie, like, I hear violin, I'm like, wow. Music can bring both sides together, look how peaceful everybody are. Everybody is just being, how can you not be peaceful while that's playing? You want the Florida boys to come back and play Minnie Man by Fifty Cent again? Drinking liquor with their shirt off, jumping on the barricades, that's what we want. How's the Dragon season three started? I'm behind, I gotta watch the whole season two. I ain't gonna be able to get no interviews, them people gonna be like, I ain't let you interview me, you gonna post it and call me Antifa. Yeah, they was funny, I ain't gonna lie, but it ended dark. He shouldn't have pushed that elderly guy down, though. Yeah, they from Naperville, I gotta, um, well, I ain't gonna give up my sources, but I got a reliable source who any- Yeah, they from Naperville, I gotta, um, well, I ain't gonna give up my sources, but I got a reliable source who anybody I see out here, he messaged me and tell me who they is and what they doing. I found out exactly who they are. Who they work for, their agenda and everything. Always wanted to be able to play the drums, but I suck. Look at that guy, y'all. He over there telling City Hall and everything he told me. I mean, when next time I'm gonna get some content like this, like, I gotta get this, like, you know? We want different stuff going on in the videos, I mean, we wanna tell the whole story. They might not be out here no more. Poor City. City over there eating that content up, just like I was when I first met him. It's nothing else, it's good content, and gonna get comments 'cause people got something to say. How you doing, Mama G, it's going okay? Watching these people play these nice instruments and make this nice music. It's the definition of a peaceful protest. Yeah, it been great content, I can't lie. They do, if it was, if it was two hundred people out here, they'd be quiet unless... I'm pretty sure they knew that. Jake can bake, I can cook, y'all. Yeah, nice change of scenery, I ain't complaining about it. Thank y'all for coming. That was cool, thank y'all. Y'all was complaining, now what we finna do, they finna leave. Thank you, guys, that was beautiful, thank you. Y'all, they finna go. You want an autograph? Acting like Minnie Man would be fire, they probably don't even know. The black guy probably know respectfully, but you know? They don't look like they listen to no hip-hop, I mean, look at the field, I mean, they ain't look at the journey they planned. Did a crack up in the car, for real? We finna be stuck with guy, y'all. You welcome. I'm doing okay. You talking to Mama G or me? I don't even know who that is, y'all. That guy still ain't finished, he got his signs all packed up, ready to go, he still talking. I'm alright, Matthew, how you doing? Due process, not random deportation. Thank y'all. He got a sign with him on it, you missed his sign, it's on one of these strings, well, hate him too. Oh, he talking about Charlie Kirk. How you doing, Ian? I could play you like a fiddle, yeah, right? Deportation is due process, in my opinion, well, you know, that ain't, that ain't... That ain't what the law say, but... You want due process, leave but not come, and that's what Ms. Boss said. They came illegally, sent them out illegally. But I mean, we ain't following our own laws, though. It's important for us to follow our own laws, especially if we gonna enforce them. Thank you, Ray. Fiddle on the roof. Look at that guy, guy still talking. City Hall finna walk him home. Y'all just do everybody Antifa, relax. Thank you. They shouted me out on their channel, she says she want my phone on, so I'll probably be linking with them again. I left a message on their video that they shouted me out on. Well, I'm finna ask City Hall, what happened? Hey, guy tripped, ain't he?
He, he went all in.
'Cause I heard all that before, like, I told him. Like, I've been talking to guy for three days.
He knocked off and left, he back over there.
I hate him, I absolutely hate him. Good to see you too, thank y'all, thank y'all. It ain't not going on out here today. We was all the way down there that day, it was getting rowdy.
Yeah, he was going off, I'm like...
Yeah, he, he ain't got no filter, bro, he full of hate. He said, "I'm all in, Jake." Should've saw his face, and I told him, "Cam, my friend," he looked so disappointed, he...
You can't change his point, though.
No, you can't change, none, none. Yeah, get the content, go ahead, do your thing, cuz... He said he had a couple of kids from fifty years.
That man hate God.
That man put his middle finger to the sky and said, "Fuck your God." He said if it's the Civil War, he going out in the first wave.
In the first wave?
Yeah, he said as soon as it kick off, he going out.
What do you mean by that?
I asked him the same thing, it's almost like he be calling for, he gonna be out this motherfucker strapped.
He probably got a bunch of old ass dogs too.
Mm-hmm, somebody who ain't got no family, no girl.
'Cause I knew a lot of old vets back in South Beach, Indiana, and they had old bicycles, and I went over there, and the guy was, he was gonna, uh, help us fix some shit. And I went in his basement, where he had a bunch of damn guns in there. He, you know, they have, they keep a bunch of old weapons and shit.
Yeah, he seventy-two.
That's the age they be too.
He got hella energy.
Yeah, this one here, I don't know, it's, it's the battery, or something, it's low, I don't know.
What on the gamble? What, the black one?
Put that motherfucker in the mail the other day, you remember I told you?
I thought, I thought I'm telling that the black and orange.
No, that's what I kept telling you, I was trying to, yeah, that one. That other one, I don't like, that I can't put the phone in some. You know, that fucking iPhone seventeen cost too much money. Be hanging on there naked.
For real? I should've came out here early.
I'm, I'm glad they kinda changed the phone, you know, them damn phones were slippery as hell. You put that phone in your lap, that motherfucker'd slide out the car. It slide, it slides by the damn brake pedal, it slides everywhere. The phone like a hockey puck.
That look like a hockey puck.
I think they do that so the phone'll break real quick.
I'm pretty sure they want him to break, let him get it fixed. I walked past that man, said he be calling us Antifa. In the brown coat.
He said he call y'all Antifa?
I guess he saying, I be calling them Antifa. At least I felt like he was talking about me.
He seen you online, and you called them Antifa.
Nah, the person who, uh, clipped the videos, put it in the caption. I'm like, damn, I get up this morning like, what the fuck?
Careful what they put in the caption, you know, it's Chicago, a motherfucker's trying to sneak up on you.
Yeah, I mean, he'll get, he'll get what he looking for, but still, I don't want people to not talk to me.
Sneaky shit wins sometimes.
Yeah. I watch everybody anyway, and I'ma hit you with this phone, so... Nigga, the screen is gonna be over with, I'm telling you. I'ma treat it just like a bat.
You get that clip? Huh? I sent you a clip, y'all.
Uh, I don't know, my phone don't do not disturb, but I got it if you sent it. Hate when they do that.
Try to have a second phone, if you can use, you only can use it to record, you can't just use it to, uh, let's say, for to be online, because then you have to pay another bill, right?
Yeah.
Because I have that third cell phone.
Yeah, I got like four Amazon packages I gotta go pick up. I gotta go to my cousin's house and get on, go get them tomorrow. Oh, y'all, I'm fresh. Yeah, that is insane, people so nice, I mean, I just went and picked up fire yesterday. Check the Constitution, y'all debating up in here? Coyotes will eat you out, afford a panto. Now, y'all debate, I just miss what's going on. Oh my God, bro, stuff that be getting said. Just get dark early now with time going by. I mean, some people do act like they is, I'm not even saying they ain't, I'm just saying for the sake of content. We ain't gotta show our hand, I mean... You think they gonna keep talking to us if we say that? He tired of holding his phone. I appreciate y'all too. This man got and put Cam on one of these signs, bro. What he doing down there? You welcome. I mean, they was playing the instruments, you missed that, hey, this guy, but... Well, yeah, probably the soft guy, I know where that guy come out. What's going on? Yeah, it's Monday. I should've came early if I knew that, 'cause I had with the instrument, I would've came early. Appreciate you too, and, uh... His name is guy, his name is guy. The right pockets, to my guy.
Exactly, just like that quote.
Guy gonna get some views, I know that. What he be saying, he wild. What you mean by making any money off dudes in the chat?
Oh, really? You mean up there?
Yeah, they talking about bad Antifa, they, they don't care. He need his brain donated to scientists. I used to work at a crazy horse, was that a bar? About the sixty-eight yard field, bro. From who? Two thousand, two thousand and one.
No.
Yeah, city traffic be crazy, especially out here, man, I expressways ain't digging up. Oh, I saw your clip, yeah, I'm slipping ourselves, uh, I was tired. Was having stand-up, having stand-up, uh... These police, they ready to give up too.
I feel like they're gonna probably not do it, you know what I mean, like, set it up correctly, they're just gonna put...
But then the people start dwelling off.
That's when it always get bad.
Yeah, like five of leaves, three of leaves, another two leaves. Oh, you know, it was about, it was about seven people standing there.
About to get attacked. That's how it was, they all was walking up there, it's about two hundred people just looking around, just like, boy, somebody let me go to the back. There's more than that now. I mean, with the cash apps and the PayPals, it wasn't about off the wish list, I didn't, I'm blessed.
I think the only time it's violent is when the cops, the cops always instigated, it's never been. It's never been on our side, I mean, maybe when the people walk down the street, technically, they probably...
You know how people have...
I got that face recognition and stuff.
Yeah, that's what I be saying. You was not helping.
They're all, 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 all the fancy person.
I see the camera, I'm like, look at you with a bad face. You hollering that bullshit, I'm finna record you, so, I don't know what, don't, don't get mad at me, I'm not making you say that shit. Look, look at you, take it easy, don't walk off, do what they ask, so, yeah. I catch you again, I'm coming right back.
He won't respond, we've been trying to get him to meet with professors, they mentioned here, we've been trying to get them to meet with us.
Oh, everything's shy, I'm talking about.
She was quoting the laws, though, I think she might have had some...
She had on a black, I was interviewing you. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm talking about with Megaron, especially in paralegal, yeah. Yeah, my chat can't stand her. They be so mad at her. She be going in. Yeah, she be ready for it, I be telling her what they said, she be going right that way. I study all this shit.
And we were taking that food and giving it straight to the door, people who would believe, and they took it all.
Ever change?
It came out with like, have you ever she made it so you put it down?
Technology, you just could've like. Building a website, if you go back six months later, everything been changed up.
You don't know nothing no more, like, uh. This ain't for me.
If you went to school, before it becomes invalid.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Did she get her booster?
He was here Saturday.
His boss usually is, yeah.
Busier, like weekend days. Like this, like this, okay. I usually like this, and then Fridays. Yeah, Friday's gonna be harder today, and then Saturday, Saturday's usually the big day, Sunday's usually. Saturdays are kind of big.
Like, this shit feeling too much life work.
Yeah, it, it, at first it's fun.
Yesterday was spicy, but that was because.
It worked for what it worked for, though.
Yeah, I like how I cut that light on, don't y'all?
But if one of us had done that, like if one of us had, yeah, if one of us had like.
You gotta let you from the DGI, right? So, yeah, so, that's one, some, some. Yeah, I, I think I got one of those, like one of the news models or something.
I ain't even opened it yet.
You had to be careful, because as long as we stand, the battery start dying out. So you have to charge these things up.
That's why when I started using that gimbal, I would always have this stick with.
Yeah.
I don't get one, this twenty dollars.
I got all.
Yeah, it feels like now that they're just.
Other than the other thing, I had to put a new washer in it, you have to wash it, when it's screwed up, it's a washer, I put a washer in it. And hold the phone.
For the cage?
Yeah, that's why it wouldn't hold your phone.
It was holding the phone.
No, it won't hold your phone, because when, when it failed or something, and there was a washer on there, so I put a new washer on there.
Oh, it must've, it ain't fall, it must've fell off when I was unscrewing it the first night, I unscrewed the motherfucker all the way off and fell between the crack of my car seat, I damn near ain't find that.
Yeah, so I put a new washer on there, and now it's back to old.
I knew someone, right?
Yeah, that's, that's why it's, it's flipped up and down. Because I tried to put the phone, I running out when I, when I sent that uh, I sent that, sent that gimbal in. But I, I did bring out the uh, the chest strap for the light, because I was holding that light, holding that thing, holding that three sixty camera, man, I was like, hold on, man, I'm giving up. The three sixty camera in the way, I can't get my.
Hold that chest, there's, don't think I will.
E- every time I point that light somewhere, it gonna get on my back trying to take photos. Hey, hold on, he got a light.
Oh, mama, that motherfucker something, right?
And those are some of the best lights you can get, because y'all, you had that deal with the fact you can't get to beam out that white light you need, and this place gets dark.
Yeah, it gets dark, it's sad.
Yeah, I don't know, they need streetlights or something.
Yeah, nah, this industrial ass area, and they, they, no reason for no streetlight. I ain't even never noticed that.
Yeah, this place get too dark, man.
How you doing? Oh my god. Yeah, I got a wishlist, it's in the links on my page. I need to go get it, because I'm pretty sure one of them things that came is that coat, I need that coat. Got a wishlist right there. Thanks, Jess. Yeah, I see Mama G. Somebody asked about. It's none of your business, what's going on up in here? Vikers ain't making it nowhere. Nowhere, bikers ain't even making the playoffs, you talking about the Super Bowl, talking about the reach. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I, I seen William Perry on some video, man, he trying to walk. Boom, William Perry, you, you remember uh, with the.
Sorry, Jess.
You remember.
Oh, the refrigerator, the refrigerator, yeah, yeah, he can't walk?
Nah, he in a wheelchair.
Now you know that? Go Bears, you know that?
Yeah, we, we, we've seen this.
Everything is well, I ain't screwed. Oh, yeah? That's funny as hell.
They say Jimbo is our man, and Jimmy K's good, I swear, kid, this is Steve, it's no wonder, run like, like the fast lane.
Hell no. The Bears winning the Super Bowl, is what, what about, is there other things you need from off the list? I mean, if it's on the list, I need it, but one, one thing on that list is extremely high, I don't, I don't really expect nobody to bet. I might end up having to buy that. Yeah, I'm gonna put it on the list if I need it. I got a coat, somebody bought me a coat, a face mask. And somebody bought me a, a, a press vest, one of them vests that say press. You know, like the people I have now that say press.
Yeah, I, I thought they had a bulletproof vest, I seen a couple of real ones, did I see one without the word?
Yeah, some of them, I like when Dean was coming out here, but I told him like, Dean, he like poosie. He had rail that's on, but he be riding around with ice and shit.
No, I don't understand why it keep falling. I think the battery dying or what, I'm gonna put it in that cage.
Get one of these, it's the perfect substitute.
Yeah, leave the batteries alone, right?
Twenty dollars, yeah. You can pull that motherfucker all the way up, you can sit the motherfucker down, I mean, well, I know you know how it work, you shouldn't want me to shit, motherfucking thing is twenty bucks. The cash app and the PayPal is in the link of the page. I ain't got no content, I'm finna go get all up in they business. I say ain't no content, I'm finna go get all up in they business. Yeah, nah, I'll send right back. Thank you, Davy, thank you.
Somebody not sound, they don't seem too emotional.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, he's gonna say we Antifa. A new Jake News patch?
Now, when I use this cage, the thing about this cage is that that light slides right on top of it.
Oh, your light is right on top of it?
Yes.
It got a shoe on it?
Yes. Three of them, I put a couple of lights up there.
Line them up, but how you doing? I start with all the airplanes, helicopters.
See this thing kept blinking out, why is it on now? It blinking out, what, what do you turn on for? This shit like.
Don't blow me.
Now it's spinning around in all sectors.
I'm starting bringing these microphones out of here today. I got so many mics now.
You don't even use the mic, right?
I gotta start using it, though, I mean, you can still help, but it'll make.
You gotta have a, a guy uh, clip it when, when you use it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, but what if you got somebody in, in the.
Like this one, you can just honey tune. This one you can just honey tune.
Well, a lot of people take the mic and they, put the mic in a little thing and they use and they put it up to the person's mouth.
Oh, yeah, and the other one they got the clip to put on.
Because they know the person might get mad and take off.
Chase down, better drop that mic. You get, you get people a mic and they really feel like they own. Oh, yeah, 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 I got something to say here, there you go. Please say it.
Now, now, this is a, a chess piece.
What's a trust piece?
My gimbal. I mean, the, what the fuck I call the other camera, the GoPros. The GoPro would go here. But I put the light or whatever I wanna put here, whatever, put a GoPro here, and then have the light on top of the GoPro.
Oh, yeah, that's decent, though, that's why I got it to hold in the damn light.
Yeah, I, I had to go get ready, but you can't, it's hard to get ready, man, if you sitting there with all them sticks, you got people turning them and shit.
Hell, yeah.
And they gonna move.
I was nervous as hell that day. I was nervous as hell that day, all them looking at me like, yeah, get that motherfucker.
I think, like, somebody, somebody got the footage in between when they start doing the whole moving thing, somebody got the raw, clean footage.
They be getting tired of saying move back with their lazy ass, they move back, move back, they saying it with no aggression like, yeah, y'all ass tired, we did y'all ass, how y'all feet all day? I know they was tired, looking under some of them riot shields, that motherfucker eyes closed.
I mean, I mean, it, it is a lot of overtime for this.
Hell, yeah. A lot on your feet too, I know them motherfuckers like, go y'all ass home, I'm off, you know what I'm saying, I can't even leave.
But they create some work, right?
Yeah, they do, though. But that day, I, I can't lie, the police, they weren't really trying to hurt people like they.
Nah, they wasn't.
They was taking it easy, so, that was cool. They was backing up and shit, motherfuckers come back, they like, fuck.
But, 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 you, you know, you know how somebody was trying to talk nice and trying to, trying to help out and stuff? You know, like the officer was yesterday, right? You always got some.
How you doing? At the town hall today? Where this? Where she say? Evan, Brody? Oh, we'll go down there. I don't know, we talking about nothing good, it blows me. I went to the last one there. The mayor. Can't we see the building, oh shit, that motherfucker bright as hell, look at my little light. Look at that damn light he got, y'all, that motherfucker look like a sonic boom or something, what the fuck, that bitch. Oh, my life. All, all the cameraman.
You're the funny guy, I've seen you on TikTok, you're like TikTok famous.
Yeah, I'm more Instagram famous, but yeah.
Instagram, TikTok, you're all over.
Yeah, a lot of people be stealing my videos and sharing my videos.
It's, it's, it's okay to share them, but when you take them and you put them somewhere else?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I used the wrong words, I ain't sharing them, they recording them and posting.
What I'm saying is this, I, I'd show you how to put up. Uh-uh, ding dong.
A watermark?
Yeah, watermark.
Yeah, it's one on my YouTube channel, one of my mods made it.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that when you, when you take the video, you put the video somewhere else, then people look for you and they find that person.
Yeah, that's why be blowing me. One dude had broke my stream up to so many clips, I went on his face, what is you doing? What is you doing? That man still ain't messaged me back.
I went, I, I was looking for you one day.
Dive, dive.
I was looking for you one day.
Dive back or something, dive back or something.
And another guy came up.
Yeah.
And he didn't even look like a real person, he looked like he was from another country. So, I'm like, hold on, what the hell going on?
They be blowing me, we out here choking on pepper spray and you sending your crib streaming my shit.
He was screaming live, so what they do, is some people go to what's called StreamYard, right?
Yeah.
And they were running as a live, they do it with a lot of Trump videos, because a lot of people go there, and the people just talking to themselves inside of the chat.
Yeah.
But it's running all night on live.
Oh, yeah, I just saw shit like that, yeah, that, that's they using StreamYard with like that duck.
StreamYard, then they just run it live.
Oh, my god.
Then run it live and, 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 and get the, uh, watch time.
Man, this channel got monetized today, but like, I put the information in, they like, yeah, this might take two weeks. Then they talking about the next step, yeah, this might take a month.
I told you, sometime it take long, sometime it don't. It'll be about two days, you probably hear something.
That shit blew me, I'm like, yeah, baby, do the first step, yeah, we, we gonna get back at you, it might be two weeks.
You did the first step, uh, you didn't do both?
I did two steps, yeah.
I'm saying, the next time they get to you, would you be monetized?
Is it the third one, next time they get to me, I think so, but I gotta look.
One thing, now, they told you, they told you uh.
No, put your face in the little circle and shit.
The Ben did this shit.
I couldn't, it, it don't allow you to do it until you monetize.
It was something, it was steps, it was three steps.
That's after you monetize?
Nah, that was before.
I've, I've been going in there every day trying to check, then what I went at today, it said, apply now.
I've been doing this shit for years.
I'm telling you, John.
Inside of.
The urn, when you go to the YouTube studio and go to.
Now, those are different, you got some different, but if you did not do those, because remember I told you, remember I was mentioning something about, did you do your ID yet or your picture?
Yeah.
You say, nah, what ID, what picture? That was the part that's inside of the profile too. Now, they asking you to do it now because it wasn't done then.
Man, I don't think that shit was in there, John, I'm telling you.
I, I got to get my computer to show you, I might be able to pull it up on uh, let's see.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, we got monetized today, we just gotta go through the process and wait on YouTube, but yeah. Where you find that mod, Reddick? What is you talking about? Thanks, Mama G, don't, don't talk about my mods, bro, what is you talking about? Thanks, Race. I don't know, I might go down there, I don't know, that shit be boring, y'all.
Where, where is the uh, the place at?
Man, right down the street over there, inside the police station, yeah, yeah, it's walking distance, yeah.
They, they wanna search you and go in your bag and everything?
I ain't here no bag, but it ain't look like they was searching people, all the police gonna be in there too. Thank you, Anta. Bye, Mama G, have a good day at work.
See, the first thing you had to do was location, right? And that was their, their location thing right there.
Yeah.
Okay, now, because it shows up different here, so we had to.
Thank you, Davy. Tell me I don't get fired. Well, I'm old and I hate typing. Thank you, Virgo. We gonna stay warm. Yeah, it's big time now, thank you. Nah, this ain't, I always said, this ain't it yet, look at Sadie, y'all. You went to that Walmart stuff? What happened?
What do you mean what happened?
He was calling me. Ain't, why, why nothing happened?
Listen, while he was on the live. I don't care right now.
I don't care.
Listen, while he was on the live, I, I wanted to come, but I couldn't, because my, I had problems with my truck. They fixed it today, that's for my faith, thank you. Okay, so, I was gonna come, but I couldn't, and I was so upset, because I'm like, man, I, I lost out on that.
Yeah, that was good content yesterday.
Because I think I would've reacted badly.
Dude had a.
I would've pulled down my burner and everything like.
You be getting emotional.
Dude had an aerosol uh, weapon yesterday. Like they was following somebody trying to do whatever they gonna do, and he called his people to, old man pull up with a Trump hat. I'm tired of suffering.
You were here the first night when those two guys.
This was yesterday, you ain't come.
Remember, but the other night.
Remember they was over there, we said that two white boys? The two white boys, like, I would need the party, they stupid.
They were two white boys, two white boys.
The two tall white boys.
Real satire and stuff, making jokes out loud with everybody.
They came at the end.
They were drinking though.
Yeah. Remember them two white boys standing right over there in the corner?
They seemed harmless. Let him explain to you. I was here the first night they were here and I was talking to them. I had them on my screen.
One of them basically, uh, the elderly guy knocked his drink out his hand. He pushed the elderly guy to the ground. Muffed his head into the gate, pushed him to the ground. The police made him leave, but you know, the protesters all riled up about that shit, but his other homie staying. I go over there and interview him and shit. He, he wild as hell. He like them, we're getting fucked up, white boys. Like he.
Yeah, he get flopped.
He drunk, it's cold, he got no shirt on, he got on cap. I think they lying. I think they lying. His ass was drunk, but I don't know, I can't really say, but he was drunk as hell, yeah.
Attention seeking stories. That's what that was all about.
So then they followed that motherfucker all the way to Westchester some motherfucking way.
A whole group of protesters, Mexicans were following him down. He's filming and he's running and they're following because they're gonna jump his ass. You can hear them talking on the street.
They was in the car?
No, they were walking. There was like four guys and two girls.
He called the car and the car put up and dude flashed the weapon. But then when the police came, it was like an aerosol weapon or some shit like that.
No, no, but wait, you skipped a lot.
I'm trying to skip it. I'm tired of shit.
Well, let me tell, well, I was on, I had to call North Riverside.
Yeah.
And then they dispatched me to Broadview.
Yeah.
Because he was in the thick of it and he was following.
I was standing back.
Following this kid to jump kid, okay? The, the sick drunk, attention seeking lying kid who wanted attention, wanted to make a friend. And they mistook him for something else. Like he was being a, a MAGA guy who was, he was blaring.
He said he ain't no Republican.
He was blaring, that was a lot. He was blaring Born in the USA by Bruce Springsteen. So all the protesters got offended.
Yeah, I broke a sweat.
Okay, so then he, you could tell they're, they're MAGA guys, okay? But this guy is trying to be, he's trying to engage with Jake. He's, he's telling, lying to Jake so Jake could be cool with him. He just wanted to engage with somebody. They were drinking. This kid was like sitting like yoga style on the cement over there with a speaker, shirt off, cowboy boots, shorts.
Cowboy boots, shorts.
Not the naked guy you.
Yes.
That he was naked, sitting on the ground?
Yeah, that was yesterday.
He look like a damn boy.
They call him Adam Tifa now. His name is Adam Tifa.
Adam Tifa?
Adam Tifa's the thing now.
That motherfucker told me his name was a crazy name.
Adam, yeah, he does, yeah. Adam Tifa.
He was out here wilding playing mini man. Yeah, 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 yeah.
He has a Mustang.
Yeah, but he said horse. He said, you wanna see my horse? I'm like, chill out, bro.
That's the thing, when you have a Mustang or.
Yeah, the, the horse.
They call him horse. So I was trying to explain to Jake, trying to bring it, like, let him know while he was talking, like, why he saying that. Jake's like, why you trying to pull out your horse, dude? That sounds kinda on the Donald stuff. Stop talking to me like that. And we're on the chat trying to tell Jake, but Jake is all like, just.
I want rain and I'm doing the interview.
Exactly. So it's hard to engage with the chat.
I want that out of him, I want true.
When Jake starts saying, when Derrick starts saying, he, he just pulled out a gun, there was a red truck. So I'm, I'm 911 and I'm talking to the dispatcher. And they're transferring and I'm like, listen, I'm like, my friend Derrick is down there right now. His name is Jake. I'm like, he's streaming live. I'm watching it. I'm like, I'm not there today.
Shit, he called Twitter.
I'm like, I call, I'm explaining everything. I turn on two more computers just so that I can get the location where he was at.
Yeah.
And then, um, where the guy was at, I'm like, you gotta go, uh, east of, uh, 25th and, you gotta go down these, and I'm like, make your first left, make your first right. I'm like, keep going. I'm like, you guys turned around. Left them alone, you gotta go back now because it's ex-escalating.
Yeah.
So they're asking me questions and I'm trying to chat with him. I'm like, I'm not, I'm not, I know I'm with dispatch right now in the chat. Everybody's trying to get his attention. Like, help is on the way. I'm like, Jake, do not let those people jump that guy. If you just sit there.
I'm recording. I ain't gonna do nothing. I'm getting the content.
He was in the thick of it.
My chat is saying they wanna see. It's important time.
He's being, you know, an independent journalist.
When the cop put up, I told them, don't walk up on no cars, bro. We don't walk up on no cars, we don't walk up on no house.
They were gonna, look, they were gonna jump this kid.
Nothing happened to the cameraman, the cameraman.
I know.
I was like Jake, I'm like, if you, if you, oh my, and I, and I, I got emotional on the phone with them because I'm like, just get your ass.
I be there, there's a crowd of people and I'm the one catch the shell, shit.
Dude, but Jake is.
I stayed back on my kid. Till the police came, then I ran back up.
Fucking asshole, that's a BB gun.
But that first one, you know, he rolled past and you just saw the top and it was like a rifle style. So he just had like the top of it hanging up where you could see it. I instantly, people are like, oh, he got a strap.
They should be going all fifty states, but you gotta be careful how you say.
Old dude, he look like he bout fifty, Trump hat on, man. But I ain't finna play with, bro.
Now, he came to protect his nephew's son or friend's son. What was he gonna do? I'm being followed by protesters. They're gonna jump. I'm like, these protesters.
I thought he was on point, but you got a BB gun, you about to get it too.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Once people, once you start firing off and people realize it ain't live ammo, I mean, I'd have been hit with BB guns all the time, paybar gun.
He was the only one that had sense. He was like, do not mess with this guy. Let's go, guys. Leave him alone. They would not listen. Then that dumb bitch, I wish I was there. I would have grabbed her by her hair and knocked her ass out, said, you don't gonna be.
A girl, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jake is like, no, just turn around, leave him alone. She wanted to follow like a.
Girl, now follow.
She wanted, no, not following him, following the, the white guy.
They following the dude with their boot.
Adam, Adam Tifa, that's his name. Following him, I was saying, your, your chat, that's what they call them. Your chat's fault, not mine. So then, I, I'm like trying to get them, they finally get down there. I said, it's a red truck because they said it, you know. So they finally got there and then the cops come. They give him shit because he's talking to the other.
I ain't say shit to them.
Talking to the friend who was the driver side of the truck.
They talking about get back. I'm like, I'm the media.
Oh, what's up? How are you? He's like, man, I'm just talking to him. You know, I'm filming.
I'm like, why he pushed the elderly guy down? He say, because he knocked my drink out my hand. I'm like, could've gave him a pass. He talking about the best defense is offense.
Yeah, the best defense is offense. Funny as hell.
That man about eighty, he pushed down.
I was hoping you were not just gonna film them jumping him. Because I was like, if he does that, that's fucked up. I was gonna give a shit if you were gonna let that happen to him.
My chat want the con- I, 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 I try to stop it, but if it's seven of them and it's just me, you feel me? I gotta, I gotta get the content. I ain't want him, I ain't want him to jump him though.
I was very scared for that, for the kid because he was harmless. He was, he's just.
Yeah, that motherfucker started running. I say, that go the horse right there. That motherfucker was galloping. I say, if he really would have ran, they weren't gonna catch him. They, they was behind him going too slow.
Dude, they were, they were in hot pursuit of that dude. They were gonna wait till he stopped.
Then the other dude put up and like, yeah, he autistic.
The one in the front running was the lady. She wanted to whoop his ass more than the guys did. It was crazy, bro. I'm like, what kind of woman is that?
People come far for bullshit.
Yeah, yeah. She was little as hell too.
I'm, I'm like, man, that would have been, that would have been my night to explode, but.
But you know, on, 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 once the bullets start flying.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got a duck.
You on a different level then.
Yeah. That west side coming right out, I'm gonna be gone on my kids. Camera gonna be rattling like a motherfucker, boy. Motherfucker gonna be in chat, you okay, Jake? I'm fine, shit.
The dangers that come with independent journalism.
You don't need no evidence.
Yeah.
I ain't know he finna pull up with no bumper. Once I sent the car, I'm like, alright. Then they bust a U-turn, I sent the other dude, pushed the elderly dude, then I'm like, yeah, that's them.
That was unexpected.
They act like they finna run up on the car, like, yeah, we don't run up on no cars, bro. I ain't chasing nobody to their house and I ain't chasing nobody to their car, bro.
I thought they were just gonna jump the shit out of him, badly injure him and then take off and the cops were gonna come and I, and it just, it got worse actually.
If it was the other dude, then it would have been like, hey, but the dude they was chasing, he ain't do shit.
Exactly. He was completely misunderstood by.
Yeah, he ain't do shit. Besides that crazy ass interview, that bizarre ass interview his ass gave.
So I, I drove by Walmart and there's like, uh, Broadview Police. They got their cars there, nothing's happened.
Oh, yeah?
But I think they're, I think they're gonna do it like either tomorrow or Wednesday.
They said it's City Hall at six o'clock, Broadview. Didn't have to leave. They gonna hit that motherfucker.
You know what? Yeah, I might drive over there afterwards.
My man's coming, he's happy as shit.
He said it was walking distance, right?
Yeah, that shit walking distance.
Yeah, it's on display in the Walmart.
What's going on, man? How you doing?
Doing alright.
I'm alright.
I was, uh, I was actually thinking of dropping by and, uh, so Cam, Cam was getting yelled at by this one dude and I was like, man, I wanna like be nice to him because everybody was like being so nasty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then I saw him like turn you around. I was like, you know what? I'm gonna let those two.
Mickey, I'm savvy.
This shit getting like game banging. Yeah, this shit is game banging out here, man. They be tripping. They was in the mall that dude yesterday. I'm like, damn.
Were you out there last night when that happened?
Wait, wait, what happened last night?
Oh shit.
They was trying to whoop one of the Florida boys ass. That shit on my stream, the whole shit on my.
Is that the African dude?
No, they white. With the boots on, had the speaker.
Oh, no, I don't.
He was out here playing mini man, bro.
That you had on the interview, like sitting over there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's exactly who, yeah, yeah.
So who was trying to beat us?
I mean, other protesters. They was mad that his homie had pushed the old man down and shit, so they were trying to take it out on him and shit.
I mean, that dude.
We went all the way over there to Westchester some motherfucking way.
That dude didn't really seem all that aware of things.
No, he ain't, he ain't do nothing. I mean, by the time his people came, they like, he autistic. I hope you guys feel good. Saying chasing autistic guy. I'm like, oh shit.
Yeah, you gotta be careful because some people crazy.
I wasn't chasing nobody. I was just recording.
I come down there and drove down there one day.
Uh-huh.
And I was turning right here and some motherfucker put up his middle finger. Now I seen the guy before.
Old man gave me the middle finger over there yesterday.
Now I seen the guy before and, and you know, he didn't, he didn't look all, all right in the face. He looked like something wrong with him. And so I said, what the fuck did I do to this motherfucker putting his middle finger up? And I, I, when he put his middle finger up, I hit the brakes already. I stopped right there at the fucking tent. And, and, and they said, she said, the cars, you got to let the cars pass. I said, what the fuck for? I said, what that motherfucker put up his middle finger for? She said, who? I said, the guy down there. He stuck his middle finger. That's the motherfucker I stopped for. I said, tell him bring his ass down here.
That's how they say hi in this culture.
No, no, look, she say, she say, something wrong with him. She say, he mentally challenged.
They start coming in after they seen you come here with you.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. That's why I tried live streaming from the house yesterday. Nobody came on. I'm like, okay.
Oh, really?
Yep. They're not as loyal as you think.
City, I done heard this so long. Huh?
But I found that a few people were mentally challenged.
It's just D? What, what's his name?
Some people are mentally challenged, obviously.
I don't know.
Okay, she's probably just, uh, a subscriber. I don't wanna say that.
I mean, I ain't saying I don't know. I just had to see.
D E E, um, she was giving me crap on chat because I was engaging with them and we're talking about the burners and the like, the air powered, um. Lickies and, and she's like, you guys just stop talking about it. I'm like, dude, after everything that happened, I'm like, he's not gonna get flagged. We're not even talking, we're not even saying the thing.
I didn't even tell him about saying them some words.
So she's like, be quiet. And I'm like, I say, you kiss my ass! And then I got off because I got heated. I'm like.
I didn't even see you in my chat. It was so much going on. Then once I got off stream, I sent your texts.
Hey, when I'm not here, I'm watching you, okay?
I appreciate that. Then you texting me, you know my phone on, do not disturb.
We gotta get your second phone.
Yeah, I'm gonna get a second phone.
Please help him get a second phone, please.
She was so scared for me, y'all.
She needs a second phone. I was in tears.
I get, I get off stream, I get.
I didn't see y'all that. Sometimes I, sometimes I be on.
Ain't nobody gonna do nothing to me. Ain't nobody gonna do nothing to me.
Like I might be getting ready to.
I was just recording.
I might have it playing.
If I was able to stop them from whooping him, I would have did it, but at the same time, it's like seven of them.
Do they have their umbrellas out trying to block the cameras?
No.
No, no, no. Y'all think everybody Antifa.
Jumped the poor guy, man.
If you out here acting crazy, your ass getting labeled as Antifa. I don't get no fucking, you ninety.
I'm, I'm, I'm dispatching for the police, telling them everything that was going on.
Yeah, that's what else I say she texts me. They call the cops. I'm like, oh my god, bro.
I was just streaming, typing it all. I could have had to stop because they.
Oh my god.
You gotta have somebody like, like the nerd in front of the computer.
Ain't ready to have many protesters tonight. It's Monday.
I'm always gonna be streaming with him, always, always.
You can also do like research on people, see them.
So yeah, new phone for Jake, guys. Please work on it. I know you guys are so awesome to him, so please make it happen. Love you guys.
Who is Ginger?
Derek, Jake News.
Oh my god.
And, oh, it's MAGA mommy now. It's not a show with triple seven anymore. It's MAGA mommy.
Yeah, that's easier. Yeah, because when she first told me, I was trying, I was like, what?
Somebody adjusted it. My people are good, so I'm like, I'm gonna go, that, that's.
Now she got a MAGA scully on.
But I love conservatives just as much, you know? I really do. If, if they're.
Yeah, they talking about horsey boy, y'all funny as hell.
Pretty much the same day he did it. Like, no, you weren't streaming then. You were just doing your thing.
Yeah, I was just going viral, but I wasn't streaming.
When he first met Cam, like, I, have they even watched it? I had him with Cam and Cam has like the whole thing. And he completely transformed, uh, him and he became Jake. Because he gave them a fake.
I told him my name Jake.
I've never seen a red pilling happen in front of me.
It's super awesome, man. It was completely changed him, but he didn't change him.
That's my dog.
He didn't change him into a conservative. He basically opened his mind.
It's, it's just thinking. It's just thinking, bro.
Yeah, thinking. It's being teachable, right?
Because that's the thing. What they're trying to do is get people to be in this like retarded wavelength where you're not thinking about it. They want people to react right as they hear something. And when, if you stop and think about it, they don't want you to do that. Like, they'll label you as a.
No, I won't be. Y'all do too much.
Whatever, you know?
Y'all think I ain't looking, huh?
Mickey, guys, that's Mickey. I listen to.
It's the same channel. She just changed the name. So if you already subscribe, you still subscribe. She just changed the name. You're like, I changed the name to Jake News. Ain't nobody out here to talk to for real.
There's still some people who are like still somewhere in the spectrum. You know what I mean? And usually.
Y'all know airstream ain't gonna be lit like that. Y'all want me to talk to y'all? Turn the camera around.
I have friends on both sides.
I just saw that the left, the, the left is like completely fucking lying. Everything. Like, everything is intentionally alive.
Are bad.
They're intentionally keeping the problems alive.
Destructive, yes. Thank you.
Is it mommy, M O M M Y?
M A M I.
Yeah, y'all should have knew it was M O M I.
M A M I, M A G A, Mag. Oh, M A G A, M I.
Oh, look, you spelling it backwards. I keep forgetting to bring your charger. That motherfucker in my car.
You want, you want mine?
No, there's a charger and then it's city charger.
Yeah, you got a car charger.
There's a, uh, there's a charger, look.
Jake, Jake way high tech, y'all.
My subscribers about that.
I know. I saw the unboxing. Tell me.
Oh, you saw it?
Yeah, I'm, bro, I'm your number one fan. What are you talking about?
Oh, I appreciate that.
I was there when all this happened to you. Not, not like eighty percent of the time, but fifty percent of the time. I, I wasn't there behind the scenes, but I saw what I like to call the Jake effect.
So is the.
Or the Cam effect, whatever you wanna say.
Have the weekdays been like, have they died down since like before?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the weekdays ain't like the weekends. I mean, and it's getting cold, so that play a part.
That's true, yeah. And people have jobs. There, it's not like in Portland where they're homeless, you know what I mean? They have, they do all.
Oh my god, she don't play, y'all.
Too much time in your hands as idols, as a doubles, uh.
There's no nice apartment in Block Down where everybody could sit and poop at and come back.
Exactly, exactly.
My god. They going crazy out here. Jake effect or Cam effect, whatever you wanna call it, you heard.
They still shitting on everything.
My god.
Yeah, I can't pull it up right now.
What was it? I done forgot what it was.
I gotta go and stream over there. I wanna talk about what's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, their parents.
It's like when you got a, a new channel, you got three things to do. And ID and a face picture is one of them.
So you gotta do the ID and the face picture?
Either or.
Oh, either or, that's cool.
Or phone, they didn't got a phone call for one shit. And it's, it's like three levels that you, you had to make green.
Oh, okay. They just need to come on with it so we can get the show on the road.
They did have the wait time dealing with the other shit where, uh, once, once you get the count up, then the screen changes. Because they no longer count. But you was partially monetized before you was monetized.
I know, man. I been over that four thousand hours. YouTube know what they be doing, man.
That other monetization was about selling products.
They be holding you up on purpose. Oh, yeah, you got to the threshold too quick. Slow down, player.
That fucking, uh, this business thing, this shit, it went by itself and it like grew on its own. And I just haven't been lonely no more. I was doing so much stuff. Who bought this? Is that a solar power tube?
Yeah, solar power battery bank.
I had one of them damn things, but when, when I did, I couldn't, the solar wouldn't charge it. I thought it had to be a whole lot of sun.
Who bought this? This damn thing was a hundred and sixty dollars.
What a solar panel way. Okay, they, they upgraded the solar, the solar panel. I had that exact damn one, but it, but it looked like a new addition. Same fuck color.
This one even on my list. Somebody just bought this.
Well, you gotta take off some of the stuff that you already got because you'll keep getting the same thing.
I know, man.
If you don't change the item sheet, you have, you have a stock.
I be putting new items on there, but I need to start deleting stuff that I bought. I ain't think about that. I don't know why Amazon don't. I ain't think about that, I don't know why Amazon don't.
Cuz Amazon make money when somebody buy.
Buy it again, so stupid, bro.
Buy ten of them.
On the real, he need ten of them.
He got a twin.
This thing right here cool as hell though. See all the different chargers?
You going to, you going to the thing, what, what they got?
You wanna go?
You waiting to get pushed off by the police, you love getting pushed off by the police? You don't want these motherfuckers to the police, they leave, oh no, they, they going to the door?
I don't know, they gun.
Watch, watch how the police get on their car.
They about to tie that bitch up, what they doing? They put up in the car, what if they just wham, 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 that shit'd be crazy.
What the hell, oh, this sound, the sound is fucking crushing. How the mail lady be acting?
Who, that mail lady?
Yeah, I know somebody.
I ain't said shit up to her, when I used to be out here on my bullshit, I was like, uh, Ice Age Rap, I was like, fuck you. She was like, fuck you bitch! I'm like, lady, I ain't talking to you.
She said what?
Fuck you bitch!
No, she didn't.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm not talking to you.
I got a few associates that know her personally.
That ass was gonna know me personally, talking to me like. And then I went to the gas station, I saw him like, bro, I was not talking to you sister, she still wasn't saying nothing. I tried to hit her with the sister and everything, she still ain't say shit.
Nah, cuz she. A lot of shit like, 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 like she changed the, uh, street down there. You know, the street was.
Battery is cool, yeah, I, I wanna know who bought it.
The, the street was, uh, no parking at first, I mean, was parking at first.
You can either charge it or to charge yourself off solar energy.
How long do the meetings charge? I mean, how, how long is the meetings?
Man, that lasted probably, you know, it probably like an hour, but she, she adjourned it early and shit, you know, cuz first they gonna get their little speeches, they gonna take all the bills and the budget shit. And then they gonna, anybody who signed a piece of paper to say they wanna say something before it started, then they all get to go up there for five minutes to say what they gotta say.
They gotta have somebody like they had at, at, at the Chicago one with the mayor.
Yeah, that was, that was, uh, Flip Chicago Red, them be at, turn him a new ass.
Yeah, they cussin' out so many different types of ways.
They be turnin' his ass up.
Them motherfuckers crazy too.
They, they was on live talking about the budgets and shit the other day. That bitch was bright, oh, shorty.
Yeah, he say he found some money for something.
Who?
The mayor.
Found some money, I, I, all the money, he still, let me get some of this shit back. I'm trying to get reelected, let me get some of this shit back.
I just thought about something, I can take that, uh, that charger in the bag and actually charge something up. While it's in the bag.
Just charge them up.
Huh? Well, you know, I got that big thing in here, you know, since I.
Oh damn, you got that big one?
Yeah.
Hey, that motherfucker was perfect for that day when everything was going down.
Yeah, but you know what?
It got six o'clock, you start packing that bitch up.
You know what? The people are real creative, right? When, when I got down there, I thought about it, I had a video. And I said, wait a minute, I said, god damn it, I said, this motherfucker got some helmets. I said, that's what, that's, that's why they got on them, them bike helmets and shit for.
I put a helmet on my wish list.
Look, no, look, I said, that's for the sticks. They think this motherfucker hit them, I said, damn, I said, damn, I ain't got no helmet.
Yeah, I put a fucking gas mask on my wish list, that pepper spray shit was fucking me up, I ain't no turn.
Be down there and get my goddamn head busted.
That's how you be knowing them motherfuckers who out here on that bullshit, they got all the gear and everything, what about the rest of us, motherfuckers?
They do this shit on the regular.
On the regular, they going all around.
And then you see the, uh, you know those helmets that look like a football?
Yeah, yeah.
Look, it look like a, a, a soft ass shoe.
Yeah, exactly.
I said, what the fuck, he gonna wear that one for? So the damn stick bounce off of it.
Got umbrellas to block some shit and make a fucking sponsor shit.
Yeah, but you know, I was out here when ICE come through, right? And ICE came through and ICE just started snatching shit. So I'm, I'm wondering, I said, hold on, I hope this motherfucker ain't trying to snatch nothing, nothing of mine, so I asked the man, I said, what the fuck is y'all trying to snatch? He said, things that they can use as a shield.
You see they had that big ass thing with the little words on it?
Cuz you know the ICE guys, they don't really talk.
They don't say shit.
They just come and do shit.
Yeah.
And the motherfucker said something, so it catch.
Trying to get their ass to talk, they just looking at my ass like, boy, we just waiting on that order and your ass gonna find out real quick.
No, he spoke, I said, this motherfucker actually spoke.
I don't really go watch trials, I mean, I can. But you know, when you, when it's, when it's criminal trials and shit, a lot of times you gotta get approved by the judge to come in there with your camera.
What trial you were trying to watch?
I'm saying they talking about typically what trials I go watch.
At the, at the, at the Puffy thing, but I ain't wanna go in the inside of there.
Oh, you was outside that motherfucker?
Yeah, I told you, I lived in New York.
I sent the picture, his ass in jail, he looks so sad, he hoping Trump save his ass. He praying Trump save his ass, old Puff Daddy. Trump say, a lot of people ask me for a pardon, uh, Puff Daddy asked me for a pardon. Put his ass right on blast. Puffy done hit the phone, he said, I haven't talked to the guy in a long time, look at Trump like, oh, now you calling me now, motherfucker?
He, he was gonna give, uh, uh, Puffy a pardon, but fifty cent, gonna ping a man on a goddamn, uh, old video. He, he kinda trash Trump on the video.
Oh, he fucked, he on video saying he think y'all Trump is ass.
Trump say, Trump say, after that, it's kinda really hard for me to, you know, get him pardoned, you know?
Oh, you dick.
All, all, he said some really nasty things about me.
Baby, look at Trump, that's his word, just nasty, just nasty guy.
Yeah, 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 he said, we were friends at first.
Oh, I wanna real.
But I don't know what happened.
Yeah. That motherfucker gonna say that federal penitentiary serving that time. That motherfucker gonna call all those Trump. You should've went to trial while Biden was in there.
Shit. Now Biden got, he, he was in, ahead of those charges already. Yeah, but you know Biden was a, a part of that administration that, that, uh, hooked him up already.
Man, I know Diddy only got found guilty of the last charges, but you know, they just couldn't prove it, and I hate to say this, but man, Diddy has guilty of way more shit. You got that lady all in the hallway, your ass ain't got shit on but a towel, you throwing that lady all on the ground, kicking that lady. Dragging that lady by her.
Well, on the, on the emotional side, uh.
Good as sleeping, relax. Jesus. Diddy did it. Diddy did it.
You know, you know, in, 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 in a state that would've been, uh, domestic violence. The, the battery.
Should've been a domestic.
Yeah, but, but.
They charged with battery?
No, they, they, they've tried to put a Rico in there, you know, they put.
Oh yeah, the Rico was dumb, them, them, them prosecutors fucked up.
The Rico is, the Rico is so that you can go after the money.
Yeah.
Because they trying.
Ain't no organization, ain't no members, what you doing?
Well, they, you know how easy it is to go to the grand jury and get an indictment? You can indict, what they say, a ham sandwich. Yeah, because.
I knew that Rico wasn't gonna stick though.
You can't, you can't present no defense, evidence. So you know, if the prosecutor going in there, what the prosecutor, prosecutor, everybody go in front of the judge, the prosecutor telling, you know, he was a minister to society.
Yeah, yeah.
He's one of the most toryist, this.
Yeah, I watched the whole Young Thug trial, that's what they was on, I knew that shit wasn't finna fly. These prosecutors love Rico's, bro, that's all they wanna do. They don't wanna do no real work, then they can add all these over acts and shit. They ain't even gotta prove you did it. In that Young Thug trial, they had three hundred and ninety-two over acts, bro.
My guy Sean, he covers it, he was in the courtroom every day.
Didn't vote or die campaign.
Dapperly dressed.
I ain't gonna lie, that Young Thug trial was better than TV, them, them dumbass prosecutors. That shit was funny.
Annie Willis, is that Annie?
Who?
Fanny, Fanny Willis?
Who is that?
Fanny Willis is one of those prosecutors. And this lot.
Young Thug trial?
No, I think Fanny was a part, she was running the place down in Atlanta.
Oh yeah, uh, Willis.
Yeah, but.
Funny Willis, yeah, she the, uh, Attorney General of, uh, Fulton County.
But now, they were doing some screwing around there too.
Prosecute Trump.
Yeah, they, they were.
Once he became president, they threw her ass off the case.
But they, they were doing some screwing down there, she was screwing the guy.
Yeah, the deputy.
Yeah, the, 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 the Mary, that shit turned into a, it turned into a soap opera quick.
And when they, I, I was watching that shit when they had her ass on the stand.
Hey, look.
She in that motherfucker, this is a lie.
Look, the, the.
Stop lying.
The minute they start talking about sex and somebody screwing somebody, they turned into a soap opera from there.
He had to resign, you know what I'm saying? They excused all the questions, how many times he been to your house? That was Ashley Merchant.
You, you know, people, I knew he was doing her.
Yeah, yeah, you know, the whole office, I knew it. Motherfucker done got that good ass position. Motherfucker ain't even no good lawyer. He turn her ass up. That shit was funny as hell. Oh, y'all still made time for this broad, B. Y'all absolutely love it. Here they come, y'all. The executive order is now in place.
It's six o'clock yet?
I can't tell.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta get ready, ready.
Really ready.
Should have my longer cord. You gonna walk down to the courtroom?
I mean, I guess we can go down there. Yeah, Ashley Merchant, but she spin her Ashley different, she spin her Ashley the other way. You know, her husband got a law firm, I love her, she stunning on business.
The guy, he asked, he asked, I, I was recording yesterday going live.
Fulton County when they ain't getting them, them documents on that Freedom of Information Act, sued the shit out their ass and they won. That's how I found out about the Freedom of Information Act, I be on they ass, yeah, I want that body cam footage, boy. Yes, I do. Ashley Merchant, she, uh, her, her husband got a law firm in Fulton County. She was the one asking Funny Willis the question. Funny, I said, this is a lie, she the one fucked up about the whole relationship, she the one exposed it and everything.
Which one?
She a, she a lawyer in Fulton County, a white lady. I fuck with her though, baby, she, I don't even like Funny Willis ass. She gonna keep winning in Fulton County though. And she just won again, that lady was running up against her, had no damn experience.
I think they, uh, their dampener comes off. On here?
You think, uh, take that off and it'll be brighter?
I don't think it's gonna get any brighter. I think he got, uh, yellow lumens in there. Uh.
I ain't never tried it, this shit too.
Yeah, it, it, see, it turns colors. It should turn whiter. See, this, this number had to go up.
Oh, that motherfucker turning red, blue.
Yeah, it should turn white too.
It turn red, white and blue, that is what, who, was it white right there? Oh, none of them just flicking colors. I ain't never fucked with them.
Hey, I know what the motherfucker do. Now it should, it's, see, when this, when this number go up, it should turn white.
Yeah, that number was just twenty-five, hundred, nine, twenty-six.
See, she with these motherfucking glasses on. One of these buttons will make it go up. Okay, and I think it may be this one. First you change, there it is, first you change the mode, then you change that.
Damn, y'all, I'm out here tweaking on us. Let's see how this bitch will go. Bitch, that bitch going and going like the Energizer Bunny.
But then.
Man, I'm done too.
But then, you gotta take that fuse off, this called the fuse the light to make it go evenly. There you go, brother. Yeah, so you, you can take this off. Didn't you put it on there when it came out of the box?
It come out the box on there.
I gotta have it on, on a table or something to look at, but I'm, I'm sure it probably comes off of there. Put a light on this, you see.
Come off.
You see what I'm talking about?
But is it better?
Yellow ones in there? No, it ain't no better.
Put that bitch back on.
This one here just got like a lot more shit to it.
Yeah. It's hard to tell what this one doing cuz that bitch so bright. Good night. Yeah, that motherfucker, alright. I think that's more to be in somebody's face you talking to.
What is that?
That's a battery pack, that's it.
I actually got one of those things.
Oh yeah, Gembo? Yeah, I got one of them too, I just ain't opening it yet.
Yeah.
Yeah. My subscribers send me so much shit, there's a lot of shit I haven't opened yet.
It's like Christmas.
It do be like Christmas. Oh damn, you learning to creep up on me. Nah, it wasn't shit good, but a little violinist.
I came earlier and there was nobody here.
It was a violin, they was out here playing the instruments, that was it.
What's going on, guys, how you doing, doing?
What's going on?
Subscribe, like to subscribe?
Yeah.
Like to subscribe, what do you guys, what's your subscribers up to now?
I probably got twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, how about you, doing okay?
Uh, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-four fifty or so, yeah.
What's your, uh, YouTube channel?
City Hall.
Where is it?
City Hall.
And yours?
Jake News.
Alright, alright, guys. Hopefully you keep pumping up the subscribers.
For you, man, nah, don't go, don't go now, man. Don't go on that, man.
I hope you guys get like ten thousand.
I appreciate it, man.
He's got, he's got like, he's got like five already, he's at five percent.
I got thirteen thousand on Instagram, my cop videos, did the. You ain't saw me on no Face, what you on, bro, you searching me? Bro, I don't even say shit to y'all no more, bro. Why is you searching me?
No, 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 it's social media.
My Facebook is for family, stay off my Facebook, bro. Williams, you went on now?
I see you already.
There's a repost, there's a repost.
Y'all already got, Williams, you better not send me no damn friend request, I ain't adding you. I'm finna block the shit out you. Y'all just felt all my social media and everything, bro, I don't even fuck with y'all no more, bro. I got love for the cops. I ain't trying to come chat. He said, I saw you on Facebook.
Alright, that's where these children are.
I got all my shit. Better get a cop to hug Jake, ain't gonna happen. But you know, I, I don't mess with them no more, I don't, I don't, I don't try to roast them no more and shit. That, that shit over with. I had some dudes come out here yesterday, they was asking me to, excuse me, I'm sorry. They was asking me to do that, it's over with. Didn't I have a bottle of water?
There was your bottle of water back there on top of the wall?
Yeah, it's over with, man. I ain't finna go get that.
They had the riot one day. I think it was the Bulls won or something. And the guy, the police came and at that particular time, I dropped a cell phone. So I told the guy, if you go down there and he find a cell phone, give him five hundred dollars.
Uh huh.
He go down, he go down there and the police whooped him with some sticks.
Oh my God.
You know, you know when he came back, you know what he wanted?
What?
Five hundred dollars.
Yeah, you ain't get it from him?
You didn't come back with the phone?
Oh my God. You owed them at least two fifty.
Had that motherfucker arguing with me all night, following me around, man.
You just sent me down there. I got my ass whooped. You talking about you ain't paying, cause I didn't get the phone. I tried. Happened something to you or something?
He was supposed to brought the phone back. That's the deal. You don't come back empty handed, demanding no shit.
Oh my God. They say ruthless.
That motherfucker came back and he was talking crazy as hell.
Yeah, the cops like me. You can't help but like old Jake.
One of them damn kids.
They cool. I ain't got no problem with them.
I got a lot of people down there. And, you know, he said the wrong shit. One of them hit him inside his damn eye.
So why they just wanna let him come get the phone though? They had cleared it out or something?
You know how the police get in those neighborhoods? They whooping everything. Back then, they was whooping everything. And there, there's no distinction.
You said at the United Center, oh yeah, you got hood cops.
Right here on the west side, back, back down there, on, on Plask.
Uh, Plask, yeah, still hood cops.
So, so that's when the Bulls won. You know, I didn't know what the fuck was going on. All the people came out of their houses and they were, you know, they was going fucking crazy.
I used to be young as hell when the Bulls was winning. Outside going crazy. When the Bulls won the last championship, I was mad outside.
I wasn't watching sports like that. I didn't even know all that shit was gonna work.
I'm install getting all the chips. Women naked in the streets, boy. That's why people want the Bulls to win again right now. When the Cubs won, we went crazy, bro. Any odd team win, when the Blackhawks is winning like that, we was going crazy. That's when I got into hockey, boy. We won three in five years, man. The city was. I'm finna go to this little city hall thing.
How long?
I'm finna go to the city hall thing.
The hearing, the hearing?
Yeah, the hearing where people get to talk to the mayor.
Right now?
Yeah, it's at six. It's happening down there. You know, just go in the police station, they had them doors. It's a little, it's a little short walk down here.
Oh, we're walking?
Yeah. It's not far. It's not far.
You got asthma?
No, I just.
Was you running? You know how people be running till they see who they trying to catch you with, the N A style, whoa.
Need one of them damn hu- heart monitors to see if you got asthma, if you, if you wheezing or not.
I'm not wheezing. I'm not wheezing.
Not at all.
We finna go down here to the city hall meeting to see what old Katrina got to say. The mayor of Broadview, all she finna say is the executive order is staying in place. That's all she finna say.
Yeah, that's city halling, guys. Thanks for your subscribe.
Williams talking about you ain't see my friend request. He lying. He ain't send no friend request. I add any cop for real. I don't commit crimes no more. Yo ass better send a cash out or something. It's that way, y'all.
With this one, right?
That way, yeah. Oh shit, it's green. Watch out.
Situational awareness is important.
I be damn a car hit me on stream. That gonna be fucked up.
I almost got hit by accident today, cause this Ryan was driving front, on, on the side. Then he, he didn't put a signal on. He just cut right in front of me and I almost hit his truck, his car.
The most important thing is down here, is a lot of hit and runs.
Oh, yeah.
So I seen two cars hit each other and both of them ran.
That's crazy.
That was the funniest shit I ever seen. And so a lot of people, they don't have their license or they don't have a fucking, uh.
That's the problem.
Yeah, we finna go down here to the city hall meeting with the mayor.
Yep.
What, you know, the, 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 people get to talk and all that, you know, they gonna be talking about the budget. A lot of people finna be in here talking about the ICE facility and, uh, executive order, what people gotta leave at six and all that. Should be getting talking. We gonna go check it out. Last time I was down here, I was finna have to beat one of them dudes ass. I'm saying fire Katrina. I guess he's akin to her. He talking about, you want a dread knocked out your head, boy? You ain't gonna knock shit out my head. He talking about, yeah, west side. I said, me too. Fuck is you talking about? Some old ass dude think he tough. He ain't gonna go hop on his phone. I got something for you. It's always scary ass niggas like that, bro, yeah. He talking about, yeah, Broadview goofy. Oh, Broadview goofy, bro.
Who the fuck is that?
I guess he's akin to the mayor. He from out west. He thought he was tough as hell, bro. How you doing? I'm from out west too, boy. Then soon as he tried to check my temperature and the shit don't work, he wanna get on the phone. I got something for you. Oh, yo, scary ass.
Holding the camera.
I'm glad I got my little camera today. I'mma crack his ass. I'mma crack his shit open.
You, you hear him? That's a takeaway for holding this shit, right?
That was cool having that though, but all the, you get tired of holding all this shit. No matter how cool it is, shit. The best part about this shit is the stick. Man, I sit this motherfucker down, pour this one. That's why I got shit that's better than this, but this the most convenient ones for twenty bucks.
Bring your good stuff out here either.
No batteries, shit. Like when them big ass crowds was out there when that riot was going on, I was extending this bitch. I'm getting all type of air angles and everything with this motherfucker, shit. And I like how heavy this bitch, but I'm telling you, if somebody fuck with me.
Yeah, cause I didn't charge it, you know, with all the stuff I had to do today. I had to rush over here.
Everything, bro.
I got my, I got my power bank right here.
I'm clucking you, I'm clucking you with this motherfucker.
The power bank, what does it do? Is it kind of, is it a mild charger?
It's just a smaller charger. Not a, as much wattage or much, uh.
That's a portable charger.
No, it's not a portable one.
That's not?
It's not even a wireless one.
Put it in my back.
It's a portable one, but it's a wireless.
Put it in my back and hook it up to that, uh, that battery back there.
Y'all better be walking at the same pace.
Before you get there.
I know, okay.
Open up the top of the back.
He got a whole big ass thing in there. Nah, it's in the big part. That motherfucker big as hell.
You do it, Derek.
Make, make sure that you turn it on.
Do I need my cord?
Yes, you need the cord. Cause I left mine.
Let me go, no, I, I have everything I need. I just was wondering.
It's right there. Look at that motherfucker.
That's a damn battery. I have one of those in the truck, but I don't wanna bring it home. Yeah, no. Shit.
Talking about smile so we see you. Calm down, bro.
I'm a woman. They will take my stuff.
Since you wanna crack jokes.
Man.
You cut my light on, bro.
I'm not gonna chance somebody taking my stuff. So I would rather just.
That ain't right though.
Carry something small.
Nah, I'm cutting that bitch back off, y'all.
Which, which end?
Y'all gonna have to wait. Once we get down here in the building, that bitch gonna be lit up. Jake used the gimbal. I'ma start using it, but that'll just be something else to charge. That's why I ain't use, yeah, but I'ma use. I'm, I'ma, I'ma use that again. Think about this little stick.
Get, put whatever the charger in the bag.
Gimbal's be dying out trying to charge the phone, the gimbal.
Make sure it's on first, so I know that the battery is charging. But I got my phone charging too. I'm just playing from the cord. Unless you got a really long cord.
Y'all finna be having to walk side by side, Jack. He got a, city hall, they got a light right there. What y'all talking about?
This here too dark?
They trying to crack jokes, talking about smile so we can see you. Your ass black as hell. They funny as hell, bro.
Yeah, put, put, put the cord on.
They said they found my Facebook and they follow me. Cops don't wanna be in tour with old Jake no more. We cool now, y'all.
That's why I got the running system and the cord coming down.
Yeah, that's a light. Together, we got everything. Okay, we a fucking news crew.
Uh, you should put it to the right.
To the right.
Yeah, put both, 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 both zipper to the right.
We leave, we left the protest area. We finna go down here to the committee meeting with the mayor, man. We finna get some new content tonight. We need that anyway. We ain't really getting no good content today. So we got, we gotta go down here. It's finna be righty as hell in here. Everybody, everybody finna be mad at the mayor. And you know, they get to go up there and talk for five minutes and say they peace. They finna be like, we just wanna know why you violating our, cause my pants be falling down. My pants be falling, man.
We gotta walk into a Derrick, y'all. He walks at least seven years.
No, I don't.
My worker had on some of them pants with it hanging down.
My shit keep falling. Look, I got a belt on. My shit still be falling.
I say.
Y'all wanna run, y'all wanna race? Y'all talking about your voice? I ain't running in my shoes today. Let me put on. Huh? I am walking.
Look, this is why.
They got they damn phones parked in the same battery pack of his book bag. They got, that's y'all. I'm finna be in, I'm finna be in that bitch.
Yeah, that's why.
He pulling my pants up, bro.
I said, why you like that in front of the customer?
And these skinny leg jeans don't know the fuck they phone. I think the mean start at six. We about to hit this bitch out. It'd be like an hour, hour and a half, so we gonna get some content. Tighten your belt, hang it if he. The belt is in the last hole, bro. That's cause I lost weight. I need another belt. Stop hating on D Nice. Hey, Ali. Walking in fastly, be late. You know that. We like the goddamn wedding crashes. Huh? Oh, my mama, Sadie, relax. I'm finna pull my shit up. I'm finna pull my shit up. I'm finna pull my shit up. I ain't never been butt hurt in my life. Relax. That what I'm talking about.
Did, did you ever see the pants that they got that look like?
City Hall.
They got some pants like that.
Oh, they bogus as hell, bro. I don't like sagging, bro.
Now, listen, listen, listen. I had my, my, my worker, he had his pants fucking down. And I was telling him to have his shit up in front of the customer.
Yeah.
And I'm constantly holling at the man and the messenger, I pulled up, John. And I looked, I said, hold on, this motherfucker.
You wearing some pants that's made to have the ass out? No. Oh, my kids.
That shit throw me off, man. I have to apologize too.
Throw you off. Nah, you shouldn't apologize. You told his ass, don't wear that shit to work no more. Don't wear that shit to work no more. Nasty ass. That's some nasty shit.
Cause I said, damn, it, it looked like them motherfuckers was down. Then I had another guy. He didn't wanna pull his pants up and they go around the customer like that. So I tell him, I said, man, pull your fucking pants up. I said, what you need a belt or something?
Yeah, Ed, I'm pretty sure Ed ain't finna be about to curse for, that's how it was last time.
He say, I do got.
Nah, I ain't gonna speak. In order to speak, you gotta get that four star and sign the paper. That's how they do it. The limit, the amount of people who can speak. You know, they really don't wanna hear the shit.
You running some crazy shit. He couldn't put a belt on because his belt slipped down.
You listen to the song? Thank you, thank you, thank you. I love the song. Hope you like it.
We got too much ass.
Bro, it ain't my drawers, bro. Nah, nah, these motherfuckers.
Give it to them, y'all. Give it to them.
Now, if, if you see somebody with they bare ass out, now I don't know what to say about that. Now, the pants sagging. I got on some jogger pants under my pants, bro. Damn. You can't even see my box. Yeah, some burning, none cooking. This a gas station. We finna.
Yeah, come on, I, I ain't worried about.
Well, I was gonna say.
Once we get past this long building right here with all them lights on, that's the light is at. You see that sign of the mayor right there lighting up? That's where it's at. See the police going down there? Air police of Broadview finna be in that bitch.
Because they're gonna do a smash and grab.
I gotta get a belt. Yeah, I'm not feeling that in there feeling one of them motherfuckers.
Well, I'm gonna be in my truck like outside, fucking, I'm gonna be in the dick.
If you set the. Man, I'll be right there. Ooh, what you get? What you? Man, I'll be right in they motherfucking face. Oh, yo, you got some steaks? Man, I'll be right in they shit.
They, they, they all young kids down there, right? They the real young motherfuckers. Yeah, the, the old ones gotta crack with you. Look, look. So, I, I know.
Lou, what's the word?
It's, it's born probably in the new age. And I don't wanna be fucking with nobody kids down there. You slap the shit out of one of them.
Man, you gonna hear grandmas down there Thanksgiving coming up, motherfucker ain't got no food.
Nah, they know what it's all, they know what it's all. They don't have to go steal no shit. They know, they, they know what it's.
Man, you ain't see that first video? When they was in that Walmart, I saw all kinds of motherfuckers. The stream been good. It been alright.
Hold on. Some people putting up fake old videos. Do you remember the one guy?
Propaganda type shit with Lou. Watch out.
One, one, one motherfucker, the lady had the lady, she said, I'm taking photos of you and this and that. And she was running shit to her car.
Yeah.
You know what that was?
What that was?
She was coming from the store and she was videoing and shit for shopping.
So she actually bought the shit?
That was a long time ago.
Come on, y'all.
That's not for recent.
I ain't gonna lie. Back in my day, I loved it a good loop. But we was somewhere in Foot Locker. We don't want no motherfucking food. Where them joints at? We in that. Let me shut up. That was real, 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 real old. That was real old. Loon Bee. You see where that light at? Where that little display lighting up at? That's where we going. They gonna talk about the budget first. They gonna do all that first, but y'all know what? We waiting on. We waiting on when the goddamn citizens get to talk.
I wanna, I wanna, well, it's probably too late to get on that list. I definitely wanna get on that.
You gotta get on the, you gotta get on the list of speed before it start.
Tell that motherfucker off.
I hope we get in here and it ain't started yet.
Brandon Johnson?
No, this ain't Brandon Johnson. This the mayor of Broadview. She a woman. Her name Katrina.
I'm sorry.
Her name Katrina.
You know what it is? My mind is racing.
Tell her ass off too.
I talked, I, I got an email from Soli.
Everybody cooking, fucking up. Don't shit smell good, damn.
Yes, I know. Yeah, I know, I know.
Man, Brandon asshole, Mark too.
I got an email when they were here.
Yeah, watch that brain.
I'm gonna go over there with them, cause I wanna talk to Brandon Johnson. This is the broad.
I wanna go to one with Brandon Johnson too. Her name Katrina Thompson.
I know Katrina Thompson. Oh, the female. See, I'm not. But this is all stuff that I'm learning as I go.
They finna be looking at us like, who the fuck y'all think y'all is? We free to film this shit. Fuck you talking about? It's finna be so many cameras in here. Every news crew finna be in this bitch, right?
I'm telling motherfucker, yeah, you can stand by me.
She act just like Tiffany Hager. That's what I was calling her last, calling her last time. I'm like, alright Tiffany. She like the executive order is staying in place. I'm like, alright Tiffany. Check that damn Amazon. Check that damn Amazon. God damn, it's a nice ass house. Look at them lights in that house. Look at that chandelier. That shit nice as fuck. Look at city hall. It's about, yeah, I got one of them. Must be nice, goddammit.
You got one of what?
You ain't just see that nice ass chandelier? We can cross y'all while we can. We going right there. Where all them cars at. Ooh, that side ain't gonna let us cross though. Ain't that a bitch? Yeah, see, I stopped quick. Damn. He gonna, the motor gonna jump out that little bitch.
Yeah, I, I don't understand guys.
Yeah, dumb as hell. Yo car not even fast. You just going sixty in the thirty. Yo shit is not fast. Oh, yeah, y'all gotta go at the same time. City talking about, hold on. Oh my God.
I don't wanna walk too fast.
Everything stink.
I'm not breathing hard.
That wet grass ass smell. Y'all see her right there on the thing? Look at her. That, that is an old ass picture of her, bro. She don't even look like that no more.
No, I'm doing.
She, she need some high heels on for the next step.
No, I'm walking slow because I have to.
Something about my pants. Get them damn stilettos on. She talking about, you were just coming up behind us low as hell. Jake, you leaving? I turned around. Who the hell is that?
I thought you got in the car from there.
Nope. My car was, it's first time.
We should've got in her car. She got that big ass truck. Bro, I don't see no people up here. Gotta be going on or somebody sent us out. Oh, yeah, news crews out here, all these damn cars out here. You don't see that truck right there? Oh, yeah, it's going down in this bitch. Let me turn my camera around. We crashing this bitch.
It locked the door?
Nah, it ain't locked the door. This, this open to the public. Bro, you not scared me, bro. That's up to you. What's going on? So how Tony Robb? You don't know how to do that either? Oh my God, you gonna turn that around?
Yeah.
Let me cut this light off. We don't need this light no more. Why y'all come over here?
Y'all trying, so it would've been way more warm over there on the other wall. Yep. Wait, I gotta put your, put yours back in. Sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm using my耳机. Oh, my lord. Okay, when you sit down, you're gonna have to let open your seat down.
What's going on? How you doing? Okay, I got you. Yeah. There's a city hall meeting. That's the mayor in the blue. Here, I got a pin here. Oh, I ain't got it. Hold on. No, I don't. I ain't got it. I thought I had it. I'm sorry. I ain't got it. Course, there's a lot of cops. She the mayor. That's 'cause I was turning around and stuff. Relax, man. Y'all wasn't seeing that when I was running all over Westchester for y'all. Y'all happy now?
President, Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Tomalabi?
Here.
Trustee Senior?
Here.
Katrina Thompson?
Here.
Trustee Shelby?
Here.
Trustee Whitaker?
Here.
Trustee Miller is absent. Madam President, we do have a forum today. Can everyone please stand in front of the President's Legion?
President's Legion, to the right. The United States of America and the sovereign republic of Oklahoma stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now leave the President's Legion. In the interest of facility and special vulnerability by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Now, I will ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next item is two, the presentation in the morning meeting at the three communications. Madam President, do you need any... No communications. Item four, consideration to approve the following minutes. Minutes from the October sixth, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's a property motion by Trustee Senior, seconded by Trustee Tomalabi, Madam President.
Thank you. Trustee Tomalabi, have any questions about the board minutes from October sixth? No question. Trustee Senior?
No questions.
Trustee Whitaker?
No questions.
Trustee Shelby, no questions.
Roll call. Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Tomalabi?
Yes.
Trustee Senior?
Yes.
Trustee Shelby?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Miller is absent. Madam President, this carries four to zero. Thank you all. Next item. Consideration to approve the following minutes. Minutes from the October twentieth, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's a property motion by Trustee Senior, seconded by Trustee Shelby, Madam President.
Thank you. Trustee Tomalabi, have any questions or comments?
None.
Trustee Senior?
No questions.
Trustee Whitaker?
No question.
Trustee Shelby?
No question.
Roll call. Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Tomalabi?
Yes.
Trustee Senior?
Yes.
Trustee Shelby?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Miller is absent. Madam President, this carries four to zero. Thank you all. Next item five, consideration to approve expenditures. Grand total of all funds, one billion thirteen dollars... I'm sorry, one billion thirteen thousand one hundred and four dollars and nine cent for the period ending October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's a property motion by Trustee Senior, seconded by Trustee Shelby, Madam President. I will take this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm concerned the finance chairwoman, Trustee Abraham, Trustee Shelby, will read you the want list?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I have a want list of October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. The vendors are AT&T in the amount of eight thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and forty-three cents. B and F Construction Co. Services Incorporated in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-one cent. Broadview Westchester Joint Water Agency in the amount of three hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and four cent. Com Ed in the amount of three thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars and five cent. David Onsby Incorporated in the amount of six thousand dollars. Delgarre Law Group LLC in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cent. Edwin Hancock Engineering Company in the amount of twenty-eight thousand four hundred twenty dollars and thirty cent. Enterprise FM Trust in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and one dollars and ninety-eight cent. Everlast Black Cop Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-six cent. Image, Image Tech LP in the amount of three thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-six cent. Lincoln National Life Insurance Company in the amount of seven thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-three cent. Montana and Welch LLC in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty cent. Train US Incorporated in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Urban Efficiency Group LLC in the amount of six thousand dollars. The total of expenditures over two thousand five hundred dollars came to nine hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and eleven cent, which is ninety-six percent of our total expenditure in the amount of one million thirteen thousand one hundred and four dollars and nine cent. And the total accounts that these funds were taken from, be home here. Okay, we have the general fund account in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars and seventy-eight cent. We have the motor fuel tax fund in the amount of three thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and three cent. We have the Roosevelt and Seventeenth Avenue TIP fund in the amount of one thousand four hundred dollars. And we have the capital projects fund in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-four cent. And we have the water and sewage fund in the amount of three hundred forty-eight thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and four cent, again for a grand total of one million thirteen thousand one hundred and four dollars and nine cent. And Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Shelby. Trustee Tomalabi, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Trustee Senior?
No question.
Trustee Whitaker?
No question.
Trustee Shelby?
No questions.
Mr. President, will you roll call please?
Yes, you can, Madam President. Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Tomalabi?
Yes.
Trustee Senior?
Yes.
Trustee Shelby?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Miller is absent. Madam President, this carries four to zero. Thank you all. Next is item six, application for the, application for the ability to expend funds totaling eleven thousand two hundred dollars for purchase orders for Perth, C O S N I P, for the police department.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's a property motion by Trustee Senior, seconded by Trustee Shelby, Madam President.
Thank you. So, this P O is for the police executive research form for Deputy Chief Johnson to continue in twenty twenty six. It's already been allocated for eleven thousand two hundred dollars. Trustee Tomalabi, do you have any questions or comments?
No question.
Trustee Senior?
No question.
Trustee Whitaker?
No question.
Trustee Shelby?
No question.
Mr. President, will you roll call please?
Yes, you can, Madam President. Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Tomalabi?
Yes.
Trustee Senior?
Yes.
Trustee Shelby?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Miller is absent. Madam President, this carries four to zero. Thank you all. Next item, seven, committee reports, which are given at each person meeting of the month. Starting with our business license committee. Trustee Senior?
No report at this time.
Thanks to Trustee. Next, police and fire. Trustee Shelby?
A no report.
Thank you, Trustee. Next, finance committee. Trustee Abraham, who is absent today. Does anyone have a statement to make? No? Thank you. Next, building and public property. Trustee Miller is also absent. Does anyone... I'm sorry, she just walked in. Please let the record reflect that at six forty P M, Trustee Miller arrived to the meeting. Um, Trustee Miller, do you have some report this evening?
No.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is item, I'm sorry, water and gas. I hope, Trustee Tomalabi?
Uh, no report. Just wanted to thank the director, Ainsley, um, who gave me the stormwater management plan. That's a follow-up from our boss, um, committee. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Trustee. Next, street sidewalks and Alice, Trustee Whitaker?
Yes, um, just wanted to thank the public. We received, um, email from Roberto McGilroy about the stretch of the time drive from seventeen to thirteen. Had been littered with broken glass bottles and papers and cans for weeks. Um, Public Works got it cleaned up, and they will need to make sure that area stays clean.
You got conclusion report, Trustee?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes item seven. Next is item eight. Old business, we have learned. Item nine, new business. Starting with eight, a motion to establish consent agenda to include the following items. I will brief these items into the record, and then we can ask for a motion to establish the consent agenda. A one, a resolution authorizing and approving expenses related to attendance. The village president Katrina Thompson at the Power of Place Conference for the village of Broadview County, Cook State of Illinois. Two, a resolution of the village of Broadview County, Cook State of Illinois, appointing, and I'm gonna butcher his name, is Stephen Crease, for John Young to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Number three, a resolution authorizing and approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Cook County Department of Public Health for the provision of environmental health inspection services for the village of Broadview County, Cook State of Illinois. Number four, a resolution authorizing and approving an indemnification agreement between the villages of Broadview and Loyola University Medical Center regarding the provisional fire inspection services by the village of Broadview County, Cook State of Illinois. Number five, an ordinance of the village of Broadview to the county of Illinois authorizing and approving the first amendment to the agreement of purchase and sale, buying between the village of Broadview and Intelligent Digital Holdings, L O M T, for the property located at four two twenty-six, Route of Road, Broadview, Illinois. Number six, an ordinance admitting title seventeen, real property transactions for the village of Broadview County, Cook State of Illinois. Finally, item seven, consideration of an application for a business license requested by Zeko LLC, which is listed as L A Chemicals, located at twenty four fifteen, Garden Road, to operate in the village of Broadview, County, Cook State of Illinois. And a motion to establish the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. A second.
Thank you. It's a property motion by Trustee Senior, seconded by Trustee Shelby to establish the consent agenda, Madam President.
Thank you. Trustee Tomalabi, do you have any questions or comments for the consent agenda?
No.
Trustee Senior?
No question.
Trustee Whitaker?
No question.
Trustee Shelby?
No question.
Trustee Miller? Okay, so on, um, item number four, I'm gonna ask for, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda, and then I need a motion to remove item four.
Or you could just, uh, uh, another way to do it there would be to approve, or to, to approve the consent agenda to include all items except item four. And then you can vote down that, and then you can vote separately to table item four.
So, can I ask for a super team motion to approve the consent agenda, um, as established with the exception of item four?
Motion? Yeah, a motion to approve.
Any second?
Second.
It's a property motion by Trustee Shelby, seconded by Trustee Senior. This is a super team motion to establish the consent agenda to include all items with the exception of item four. I took a roll call, Madam President?
Yes.
Thanks. Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Tomalabi?
Yes.
Trustee Senior?
Yes.
Trustee Shelby?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Thank you all. This approves five to zero to establish the consent agenda. Now, item V, motion to approve the consent agenda as established, and again, with the exception of item four, need a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. It's a property motion by Trustee Tomalabi, seconded by Trustee Senior, Madam President.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Tomalabi?
Yes.
Trustee Senior?
Yes.
Trustee Shelby?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
And, Madam President, this carries five to zero to approve the consent agenda as established, with the exception of item four. Now, item C, a motion to approve any items removed from the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Well, um, if I may, I think that this is a attempt at a motion to table item four because those, that items actually...
Okay, instead of the motion to approve, we're gonna change that to motion to table, and this would be item four that we remove from the consent agenda. Need a motion?
A motion to table item number four. Second.
Thank you. It's a property motion by Trustee Tomalabi, seconded by Trustee Senior to table item four. Madam President, do you have a roll call?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Tomalabi?
Yes.
Trustee Senior?
Yes.
Trustee Shelby?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
And this is contained with the total five to zero. Thank you all. Next item, uh, ten, don't expect before I have nothing this evening. I don't even have any public comments. Before we get into public comment, I just wanna go over the house rules real quick, please. Before we get into public comment, I just want to roll the house rules real quick, please. The village of Broadview encourages citizen input. Those wishing to address the village board or the public comments must fill out the attached speaker request form and submit it to the village clerk prior to the start of the board meeting. The president will then lock the name at the appropriate time. When addressing the village board, your remarks are limited to three minutes. The total allotted minutes for this evening will be thirty minutes for all public comments. When the president recognizes you, please state your name and address for the record and speak loudly. Your cooperation is greatly appreciated, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, I heard you read the civility pledge at the beginning of the board meeting, so I would like for you to repeat that again because this pledge is essential reason to ensure that our conversation remains respectful, constructive, grounded in our shared commitment to our community, so we appreciate this.
I still want to repeat that again, Madam President. So this is the pledge of civility. In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Thank you.
Thank you. First up is Mr. Ian Farm.
Hello, my name is Ian Terry. Two weeks ago, I spoke here about unity. I said that in the fight against ICE, we protesters should be working with Broadview, not against them. After the meeting ended in shouting, I emailed the mayor and said I still believe in what I said and asked if she wanted to have a conversation about how we can reach a more peaceful coexistence. And to her credit, she agreed. So I met with the mayor, Chief Mills, and a few other deputies on Thursday, October twenty-third. In that meeting, we discussed the aid tent on Lexington. I told them that in addition to providing first aid to those hit by chemicals, we were also providing aid to the families affected by ICE. We were collecting and delivering donations to families too afraid to leave their house. We were helping people whose loved ones had been taken get legal resources. We were providing violent witnesses who could accompany people looking for their family members as they approached the ICE facility, ensuring that they would not be grabbed themselves. The mayor and Chief Mills agreed that these services that we provided were important and necessary. Chief Mills wanted to talk with Karen, his main point of contact in these matters, about the tent's future. We ended the meeting by agreeing to keep an open line of communication going forward. It seemed like a very productive meeting, and I told my fellow protesters as such. We discussed next steps in this process while having the most peaceful weekend we had had since the protest started. No arrests for the first times since September. Then, on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, before Karen had a chance to talk to Chief Mills, a couple of officers posted a notice on our tent saying we had to take it down by Thursday at ten a.m. You have my contact info. You could have called me, you could have emailed me, but you chose to post the note like cowards. We decided to call the media and have them show up on Thursday at ten a.m. to see Broadview take down our tent. But you waited until six-thirty that night when most of us had dispersed and the media had left to tear down our tent and grab supplies out of our hands like cowards. On Saturday, we were angry. Broadview had taken down the lone beacon of hope in that dark corner. And then you started firing chemicals at us. You left us defenseless and then you opened fire like cowards. That will forever be your legacy, Broadview. You cleared out our last line of defense to roll out the welcome mat for the fascist regime. Shame on you, Mayor Thompson, and this entire board for allowing this to happen. Shame on you, Chief Mills and Broadview P.D. for grabbing first aid supplies out of our hands and then turning around and firing at us. May God have mercy on your souls because the history books certainly won't.
That's your time, thank you. Next is Rabbi Michael Ben-Dooson.
Greetings to the mayor and the constituents, my fellow protesters who stand on the front lines. Today, I'm invoking the supremacy clause in Article Six of the Constitution that states the Constitution, federal laws and treaties are the supreme law of the land. This means federal law takes precedence over your ordinance. This article that takes immediate precedence over your ordinance of the law is the Freedom Religious Restoration Act of nineteen ninety-three, passed by not the Senate and signed into law nineteen ninety-three, prohibits any agency, department, or officials of the United States or any state, the government, from burdening a person exercising his religious freedoms to do out, carry out his duties. So today, I'm invoking my, my, my constitutional rights to go into the areas of Broadview on nineteen thirty B Street and it should be twenty-four seven because there's no specifications in this, this constitution that gives it ninety-six. So I'm invoking this Saturday, I'll be able to go protest and then go in before beyond the state's police, Broadview police, and ICE agents to go up to that building. If you prohibit me from carrying out my duties of the constitutional rights, I will be filing lawsuits against you there and against the city of Broadview and against the state police for providing or preventing me to carry out my duties as a religious clergy. Thank you so much.
Next is Valdezaki.
Good evening, everyone. Um, excuse me, I sound a little bit nervous, bear with me. Um, I want to speak about what happened this weekend, I think it's important to point out. Um, so, this weekend, um, it was pretty concerning. Um, there was a large number of police presence from multiple towns. And streets were shut down. There was tear gas deployed at the protesters. Um, many of us were surrounded in the evening by police officers. Um, and they repeatedly told us we were in violation of status seven twenty I.L.C.S. five underscore twenty-five dash one, which refers to mob action. The people using force, violence, or disturbing the peace. But that's not what we were doing. We were peacefully protesting. Um, there was no threat, no violence from the protesters. Um, actually, the violence came from the officers. And I think part of it was that the law was not prepared for the amount of people that showed up on Saturday. It was a large crowd. Um, instead of adjusting for the safety, um, the officers escalated the situation. Our protest area is very restricted. It's a small space and it was definitely not able to handle the crowd that showed up that day, and that was a big part of the problem. Ah, sorry. Another concern was obviously the aid tent that was there. Um, we didn't have that aid tent there, so we were not able to, you know, provide rescue efforts to those that were tear gassed. It was a tough situation. I want to stress the importance of why we are protesting. There are families that are showing up daily to that facility center trying to get information about their family members. Um, we are concerned about the inhumane situation that, uh, these people that are being detained are living in that facility.
That's your time, thank you. Next is Linda Barker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Linda Barker and I'm a resident of Broadview, South of South. Um, my heart goes out for all the things that are going on in Broadview, but something that's been affecting me since twenty-one. I filed a request asking that my garbage, this might sound crazy, my garbage needs to be picked up in a different location from where they designated me to roll my cans. At one time, I was able to do this, but after I had surgery, I was unable to. I reside in my house, my sister resides in my house. I'm seventy-five, my sister's seventy-three. All we're asking for is our garbage cans be picked up on the other side of our fence. I was told by Mr. Ames that if things were changed to meet my needs, they would have to do it for everyone. I rest my case. Thank you.
Next is Francine Smith.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight because this has been a long time coming. And I'm proud, I stand proud tonight to come and face you mayor and you chief mills, given the honor that you guys have not been transparent with me and I've been mad past the guard in my son's murder, which was branded Smith that took place in twenty-seventeen. You guys had told me from day one that it was a cold case. No investigation was fully, uh, investigated upon his case. Regardless of what anyone thought of my son, he was a son, he was a grandson, and he was a father, a brother, and a nephew. And today, I stand here and I'm requesting that you guys do your jobs and do what we as constituents are paying you guys to do because the transparency and accountability has not been there. And I have asked to make appointments with you mayor that I've been denied. My mother is eighty-nine years old, and the way my mother was treated that night was unacceptable. You guys kept my mother in a house that's sickly, bedridden, and could not get her medication, she was stripped from all of her rights. And didn't even know the conclusion of what was going on with my son. When she tried to attempt to save his life, your officer pushed her away and told her to get away, my mother's a registered nurse. It happened for thirty-plus years. We have been residents of Broadview for forty-plus years. And this is where it stops because this is a circus and you can ring a limb. And it stops here. It stops. Because I don't care what anybody say, I'm a mother just like you is, and you would think you would have some compassion and reach out and respect the fact I lost a son and my life ain't been the same. And I deserve that, he deserved that, regardless of what anybody thought about him. He, like I said, he was a human being. This is not right. And if this is what you're going to do, you need to remove yourself.
Next is Eric Smith.
Good evening. Um, I'm not here about protests or, that's my sister Francine, and the thing she said is true. And with the protests and everything, everything is true. I've seen it myself, I've been on my phone. The way they just mistreat them for no reason. But the only other thing I'm concerned about, and my mom is concerned about, is a piece of paper. She needs the, the piece of paper of the ordinance that y'all said, that y'all hear about abandoned vehicles that's causing wreck problems or whatever. When y'all have the garbage cans and the garbage that's not being picked up that's causing wreck problems in Broadview. But at the same time, y'all removed all of the cars from one side of Broadview saying that they were abandoned. And the other side of Broadview, the cars are still sitting there. No license plates, no registration or nothing. And I want to know y'all picking and choosing or what? That's all I need to say.
Thank you. Hello, Chris Smith? Hello, Chris Smith? No, you can't.
I'm just taking a seat, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Uh, Angela Brown?
My bad.
Good evening, Broadview. Um, who, yes. Um, my issue is similar to other residents here in Broadview. I'm not here for personal vendettas. I'm not here for tragedies. I'm here to ask why we have over twenty-five abandoned, abandoned buildings, thirty empty or more, uh, business spaces. We have no CPA on staff. We've been wearing during political and personal retaliation on our residents. Our government is ignoring cease and desist orders. And we've heard about alleged theft from our car districts and elementary schools by our one and only mayor. We're trying to figure out when is enough enough. Our mayor has more than just you all to worry about. She has more than just what we're worried about. But what her concern should be is what you people are enduring here in this room. What our residents are enduring, the pain, the suffering, and the anguish that we're enduring on a daily basis.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not sure if you all are aware, but our mayor has a beautiful business that's called Amore Strategies. It is a sex toy, body cream, oil, and game business. That business took videos, pictures of our kids at our schools. It also received money of about twenty-seven thousand dollars from our educational fund. I have questions and concerns about that. I also have where we've been outside, we've been relocating things for summer programs. Our mayor's family member received sixteen thousand dollars for six weeks of work. You all should be concerned where your educational fund and tax dollars are going. I know I am. The property on fourteen twenty-six Roosevelt Road was just sold. The village of Broadview got that building at no cost. What will we receive back into our government's financial support for this property is very concerning to me. Also, the fourteen twenty-six Roosevelt Road building is owned by Intelligent Digital Holdings LLC. Look it up, you might be surprised on who the owner is. Thank you, everyone, have a good day.
Mayor Board of Trustees, people that attend. My name is Matt Ames, I'm a resident here. Funny. Since two thousand and nine, I've been here and I've watched the council where I've not seen an attendance like this since then. It was misguided then, and I think it's misguided now. And I'll tell you why. I know for a fact that the allegations against our police department is not true at all. I've served this village as an elected official and as an appointed official since 2009. I've had the pleasure of working alongside four police chiefs. And this is the only one that has the entire department accountable. Fact. You wanna talk about it? You can. As it relates to what I've seen out here at Beach Street. Who was the guy that called me? Me, Coward? Incorrect.
I started.
Okay. And I'll tell you why it's incorrect. Because for me, what I'm trying to do is avoid the confrontation that I've witnessed over the last few months. Mushroom and blow up into what it is now. None of you people live in the village of Broadview, but yet you gonna demand rights for your First Amendment rights contrary to my rights. To live safe and free and without harassment. Without harassment, I promise you, you don't get it. Without harassment. And that being said, I've witnessed educators, some of which are still in this room right now. And the commission of functions like putting down jury walls. I watched the IDOT crew do that and was berated. I watched our police officers stand with folks in their faces, nose to nose, threatening, telling them that they're on the wrong side. And all they did to do was protect you all. So as it relates to me, the guy you think pulled a cow move and removed your tent, it wasn't that. It was the fact that we've received numerous phone calls about what appeared to be a homeless encampment. You're right. The graciousness of the police chief of the mayor was to allow for a medical tent to be erected. And the fact that, to your point, you guys, at least some of you, I won't say all of you, I don't wanna make us sweep an indictment. Decided to push the limits, decided to create an unwanted and unsightly situation here in Broadview. Of what, by the way, you don't pay any taxes. And I understand most what your life might be.
Provided it's on which it does.
Okay.
Yeah, three minutes?
And I am gonna conclude with this.
Three minutes?
Okay. As may I support you, I support you, Chief Ms., I support the decision that this board has made to protect the residents of Broadview, for which I don't want. And what I will say, mayor.
Four minutes now.
Is keep up your good work.
Four minutes, 10 seconds now.
Came from the political advocates that are in your audience.
15 seconds now.
Are the same people.
We're getting this media.
Four minutes, 15 seconds now.
Next, Mark Price. Mark Price.
One of y'all guessed.
Is he gonna get four minutes too?
Somebody guessed.
This is the Apple's Village of Broadview. Two weeks ago I was here, this meeting. And what the people didn't realize was, as a fellow activist, protester, was that we were here to observe. And clearly, this group is against America. And so, being that you're against America, then America's gonna meet you in protest. Let's go head to head on the protest. I'm gonna give you something to smile about. Okay? All right. Matter of fact, we don't ever talk no more.
Thank you, that concludes our public comments.
Mr. Price, how much time do we have left for some of the comments? Is that all?
Five.
We got five minutes. Next is Noah Lessen.
Hi, I'm Noah. Um, I've been protesting at the Broadview Detention Center for around a month now. Um, when I came here, I had seen the videos on the news that show very intense moments and I was alone, so I was a little scared. Um, as soon as I got here, I met a community of great people at a nearby 810. This tent held resources for not only protesters, but defendants who had had loved ones taken. When they were lost in a maze of concrete barriers, they could get help and direction and help to get medication to their family members. On October 30th at 7:00 PM, the city of Broadview waited until there was a few people left and rolled in with police, a dump truck, a tractor, and took it down. That tent symbolized community and hope and a constant presence standing against the kidnapping and oppression happening at this facility. And food, water, community donations were picked up by a tractor while Broadview police blocked the street, treating us as if we're evil people. I think this has a dangerous precedent. It doesn't make it okay that you left our supplies sitting in a container rather than in the landfill. It was more than items being taken away. It was like watching our community being oppressed and our voices being silenced. Mayor Thompson, I don't understand your actions. You already push us out every day at 6:00 PM and you keep us public within concrete barriers. You don't need to get rid of our tent. We didn't walk out last week to spite you. We walked out because to chalk up our presence here to one person who had a beer is disrespectful to everyone who volunteers their time here, fighting for people stuck in that one of that building. And this was one final kick in the gut. It's done now. You can kick us off the Lexington, but we will be back. Even with the snow next week, we'll be here every day as a voice for those detainees. We will not be driven away. Thank you.
Say it louder. Say it louder. I couldn't hear you. Say it louder.
Who's next? Who's next?
Next is Daniel Saul.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Schaus. I wanna talk about how, one thing that seems to be brought up here from people that are against us as the protesters is that this only affects the village of Broadview. When the greater state of Illinois is affected just as hard, if not harder, because they are actively targeting certain towns and neighborhoods for their attacks. And to try to come and tell us that safety is more important than our rights and our ability to hold our government accountable is just absurd. We shouldn't be able to be on the sidewalk, put in front of that building, expressing our freedom of speech, while also being able to document anything that we can and hold the federal government accountable. Without being able to do that, all you are doing is allowing them to use a processing center as a detention center where we don't know how many people are held. We don't know how long they're being held any longer because we can no longer videotape them. We don't know any of the situations of what's happening to these people other than when we see ambulance every other day coming out of there. It's absurd. It's unnecessary. And you are just aggravating as much as, uh, I don't know. I'm just really pissed off that Congress is being handled. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
So that concludes the public comments.
Thank you, Governor President. Next is I'm from Village President and the Court Mayor, Mr. Tony Thompson.
So thank you, Mr. Price. And I wanna address, and I'm sure in video too, but I wanna address the residents first. I wanna address this agenda first. Because you kind of have a sex toy business. I have the right to own a business, which is a consulting business that I do have, so that's a connection. As it relates to a family member being paid $16,000 for whatever services she's selling it is for. My daughter is a school teacher, but she actually works at Lindup Door, the summer program, the summer school. She teaches at Freedom School. And she qualifies to do the job. She's highly qualified. So I just wanna clear the record, but let's not negate the fact that our CPA, Mr. Tom Hood, is a CPA. I find this record is CPA, so let me just put that in its place. As it relates to the 25. As it relates to the 25 abandoned buildings, I'm not sure if she got 25 of them or her maybe, but I want to let it walk down clear. She ran out of cash business for those, because she ran out of cash to get some company election she wants. And what she don't tell you is, is that her husband attacked a parent over at Lindup School with a physical attack. Which is against on administrative basis, his current job, for harassment of that parent. So if we don't talk about truth and transparency, put all your hands on the tape, unless you believe it, unless you transparent. Now, as it relates to Miss Francine Smith, as I've said before, when that incident happened, my condolences is to you and your family. Matter of fact, we met with, this is at the time when Commissioner Boynton was the first issue commissioner for Cook County. We had you and your family in the office and we had a conversation. Nothing has changed with whatever the program. I don't know what the process is as it relates to murders, but I've always showed you love, kindness, and compassion during that time, even your mom. So, but this is not time for us to go back. I just wanna clear the record on the accusations that you put out in public comment and I have to lay with the truth of this. As it relates to, um, yeah, we did meet. We did meet, yeah. And we had a very good conversation as it relates to what took place as it relates to the tent. But what you fell into tell anybody is, the medical tent that Karen asked us for, we provided that and we thought it was a great idea on October 6th. But as time went on, people started using furniture, we had propane tanks in there, all kind of stuff. We didn't know what was going on. So can you play the video for me, please? Next is Karen, Mike.
Okay. Um, so, first of all, I would just like to thank you and Mayor Thompson for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm a resident of Broadview. Hello, I'm your neighbor, the left chapter. Um, and, um, so basically, I'm here in my, um, for 92 hours, this thing, the hours of, uh, that people would be able to protest over the, um, I facility. So, my question is this, I'm here on behalf of the Doug's Ventures that had been donating first aid kits that is now open on West Hampton. Um, it was moved to West Hampton after the first time that we had this land tax, um, by federal agents, um, and then the contest that were donated with oil. So we had to get new supplies. The reason that we veterans have to have in the first place was because, um, one of the first times where chemical units were deployed, um, many of your first responders had to respond and then people were taken to the hospital. And we thought that it would be a good, um, service for us to try and take off, take some of that burden away from your first responders. Because basically, you know, preventing chemical burns to the eye, respiratory system, your skin. Um, somehow with the restrictions, we are here to respectfully reflect perhaps the assumption that we may allow, you know, to pretend where it is with the contest and to inside. And here have been a couple of volunteers being grateful to say volunteers to stay overnight, to keep them alive. Make sure that, um, we have them available, um, in the event that there are more, you know, to that deployment, any kind of requirement. So, that is my opinion. So I would please respect what your class put in your vehicle, okay?
Thank you for the conversation. I do, well, thank you. I, well, we have to act, we have a whole bunch of you with the mayor. He goes one picture for one hundred, he's in there one year and that's three hundred years on the clock. And he can get everything I'm asking for. With those whole supplies, the [bleep] and I think that's a big time of one hundred that he certainly goes and time I'm talking.
Oh my God, it's medical supplies, guys. It's medical supplies.
This is my report. I have the court. If there are other hours, I will clear out the chamber.
That's what she wants us to do. That's what she wanted.
Who are you feeling like? What time do we have to get here to talk?
Yeah, like, why can't we have a human to human conversation?
You're a sellout. Pathetic.
You're breaking section 15-11-1 from Broadview, from Broadview. Just so you know, you're breaking your own ordinance.
You say you can't leave here, huh? That you love that.
You need to have a conversation, chief. You need to have dialogue with the people.
The Bible, any verse.
You need to shut us out.
You need to start doing your job, mayor. You need to start doing your job.
Why don't you come out and have a conversation?
Why don't we go on out of conversation? Why don't we sit down and use work? Instead of trying to create some narrative that doesn't exist. It's a narrative that doesn't exist. You guys are aiding and abetting the federal law.
You swore it onto the Constitution that you're breaking your oath. That's all I'm asking you. You have to do your job. He's smiling at the shame. That's crazy. It's actually nuts. Corrupt as hell.
Who in the town?
Who is the top?
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 Which one of you fucking broad, you fools, ignored us the other night, and we were getting them like they're so poor?
Let's go.
How, what if you fools?
Expletive.
You bullshit, what if you fools?
Back to the hall, it's fifteen minutes, six thirty, let's come back.
I'm tired of all these fucking police.
Why is it closed, guys?
My fault, my fault. My fault, my fault. I'm so fucking tired of this.
She's locked down. Can you think for yourself?
I didn't hear what you said.
Can you think for yourself? Are you even asking for anything? Are you even asking for anything? I'm asking you, as a fucking human being, are you able to think for yourself? Are you... Oh, I'm sorry.
Just ask me, just come up, man, man, just about yourself.
Are you able to think for yourself? Are you able to think for yourself?
Come on, man. Clear out, guys. Bunch of bullshit, dude.
Any of you, think for your fucking selves, genuinely.
Keep moving, keep moving, let's go.
Open that window, Riz. What a fucking idiot.
No justice!
No peace!
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 Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
No, but you saying the wrong shit.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Yeah, he's still part of the protest, but one of them does.
You won't.
I'm sorry, she didn't even...
I live here too, and I'm not at all surprised. They're perfectly happy to steal your tax dollars.
He's arguing with the...
Let, let him protest.
He argues with them.
Let him protest the way he want to, we got a right to say what he want to say. I know, but he...
Wait, right now.
Yo, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's not because we started picking the tune, and she's like, "Oh, we're in there." She's like, "I got video of your couches," and then showed lawn chairs.
No. About the stuff and everything about the town, we're organizing, that's what we're doing.
And they took pictures right before we did.
Yeah.
Who is the top? Who do you serve?
Who is the top?
Who do you serve?
Who is the top?
Who do you serve?
Who is the top?
Who do you serve?
Hey, Derek, how are you? What's going on?
Who do you serve?
Who is the top?
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 Who do you serve?
You think we're out here for fun? This is funny to you? Why don't you laugh for the camera? Do it again while the cameras are present. ABC seven, CBS, this officer is laughing, that democracy is dead. Get that shit on camera.
My church. My church.
Who do you protect? Who do you serve? Who do you protect? Who do you serve? Who do you protect? Who do you serve?
My church.
Who do you protect?
My church.
Who do you serve? Can't watch this, bro?
Lock the fucking door.
How many officers does it take?
These are the guys protecting us, you can't lock a fucking door. Lock the fucking door.
Little fuckin' shit. Nigga, what?
Sounds like you're seeing it like...
Huh, I know.
Come on, how many cops you take to lock the fucking door? Goddamn, should be asked over.
At some point, I'm...
Yeah, agitator. Agitator. Fucking professional agitator.
What two guys that got it right, when? Are the Florida boys?
Yeah, the Florida boys.
Oh, yeah, what about it?
I can look at your... Did you get a...
I ain't get when he pushed him down, but I got the...
Listen up. Listen up. Listen up. Listen up.
Just go on my channel.
Listen up. Listen up. Listen up. Hello, hello. Listen up.
Everybody, listen up to the rabbi.
Listen up.
Everybody, listen to the rabbi.
As we have witnessed. As we have witnessed. We are not given an opportunity to speak.
Don't nobody even be on that, but I'm from out west too, I'm not scared of y'all ass on my key.
And here's the thing. What we have to do...
Ah, bring the projects, bro.
They're joking with us.
I'm from the west side too, that shit don't scare me, bro.
All of these violations is in our faces.
I was a gangster. Now I'm a journalist.
They doing this to our faces. Hey, guys.
He needs a technician over here.
Yeah, we...
Not gonna walk in. We're not gonna go inside.
We're not gonna go inside.
No, we're staying...
We're keeping a queue. We're keeping a queue.
We're protesters, not stupid people.
But you guys sure do like to demonize us as worse.
Look, we can help you lock in if you want.
You guys need help.
You guys know us, why are you guys afraid of? You guys know us.
You know us? You know what we know? Come on. Come on.
We keep the queue.
You guys have been around us for months now, you know our patterns, you know we're not violent, you know we're not, we're not gonna do...
The only thing is, I just played drums, I didn't even reach the...
A little low on YouTube, but this...
I mean, this shit, what are you guys afraid of?
You gotta figure out how to lock this door.
That's because it's... It's basically, if you press that button, it opens.
If you press this button...
Hi again. Let the lady pass, let the lady pass.
The mayor's threatening you?
I ain't say the mayor, I say man.
Oh, I thought you said mayor.
One of your people. One of your people.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I thought I misheard you. I'm sorry.
That's when it get out of hand, excuse me, my fault, officer. Hold on, y'all, we gonna see what's going on. I'm just recording, you ain't gotta worry about me, officer, do your job, bro.
You know, bye.
I'm just recording, ma'am, I don't want, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just a recorder, bro.
Bye, uh, bye. One of y'all already following us.
Ma'am, I'm not with them. You put me with people I'm not with, I'm not with them, I'm just recording.
It'll be good, man.
Hey, man, appreciate y'all.
Appreciate y'all. You guys gotta go figure out how to lock that door.
I just got the camera, I ain't on with y'all.
What's your name, so I can re, look at your replay?
It's Jake News, forty-eight hundred.
Jake News, twenty-one hundred.
Yeah. He following, he keep following.
Yeah, but y'all be talking about agitators, but y'all the ones agitating people.
What is your study, uh, recording people for? I record, 'cause I'm, I'm a journalist, bro. I ain't got nothing against you, bro. Y'all not starting to go every day, bro. What, bro, I came over here to record, bro. I'm not trying to do shit to you with all these Ku Klux Klan's. You're following... Bro, I'm by myself, I'm a black man, I'm from the west side. What did you even talk about, I'm by myself, bro.
This is what y'all call peaceful protesting? Are you serious, man?
Ain't no protest, I'm a journalist.
You think you can just come and do whatever you want with the government, that you don't have to obey my order?
I just ain't scared.
People are asking, no, 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 because you're agitators, because you're agitators.
We gotta be scared?
That, that, that Constitution, y'all still Constitution. Y'all just follow us. Y'all, let me make y'all... You guys are all insert. That's what y'all trying to do, y'all trying to overthrow the government abroad with your racist, abusive, hateful... ...racist, other nations that you worship and the baby. Why don't you walk away? How are you doing this? We're standing, listen to this crap, because we actually own business here in Broadview. We're not coming from our suburban houses. We're not coming from the next...
I could literally let them five minutes away, we have Broadview, let them here with us.
We're coming from the actual neighborhood of...
Uh-huh, yeah, right there. Right, right, right. Whatever. Whatever.
Are you guys forgetting where your ancestors came from?
Everything that happened to your ancestors. No, that, that was, fuck eyes. 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 That's because y'all following us, so...
We always have cameras in our...
We always have cameras. And you're going to start following us with cameras and all this other stuff, and now all this...
I always follow those lines.
What did we do to you all?
What did us?
You are marching to our cause, you're walking to our cause, you're walking to our cause. Now, you see, there's a crowd of you all tanning at us. Are you serious right now? And now you want to say that we're your rivals? Because we're saying, yes, you did, this is not violent, you were just like, "Well, then, aggression." And, and guess what? Guess what? Maybe you should turn that and please that to your crowd, because there's a question. You all are the question, and you started it because you came up first, and then it's like, "Sorry." You didn't come after me, you said, "Uh, uh." Like, what's the question about? What? Guess what? Guess what? This is a new day. This is a new day. What you talking about when you begin? Because what you did yesterday, you know. So maybe you might try something new to the next day. But, but, and, and don't yell, see, there you go. You're, you're too... Because it's not your turn.
Everybody's agitated, they're fucking... So I'm trying to tell Ian to pull back. Exactly. And it looks not...
No, no, don't ask him the back question.
And we fuckers all, why are you... And we fuckers all, surely, who is the enemy?
Yeah, you dropped them on us, and the police were saying...
And we trolling back on who's the enemy. Sir, 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 sir. And who says it? Or who is the...
How are you defining?
I am trying.
You go back on with me, girl. Can you go back on with me?
Alright, no, that's, 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 that's a great suggestion.
Y'all was just holding out. Y'all following us, that's it, and that's it. That's not being an agitator, y'all done a practice with y'all preach. Y'all over here, y'all was just over there. Y'all was just, I don't know, to all the y'all here right now.
That's because so many come over there and say, "One of your people is gonna come jump us," or whatever, or you're following us.
We went to our cars, and now y'all over here being agitators that y'all just preaching up there that y'all wanna go against.
Point, point out who followed you.
You, because you right here, right now.
I was over there, I came over here because one of your people came over there. Tell me who followed you.
We walked over.
Tell me who followed you.
You.
I did not follow you. Tell me who followed you. I didn't follow them.
You're being an agitator. No, no, I'm telling you, that's why you're practicing what you're saying. You're right here, and I...
Our focus is ice. Our focus is ice. Our focus is ice. Our focus is ice. Our focus is ice.
Go away.
Our focus is ice. Our focus is that building. Our focus is that building. Our focus is kids in cages. Our focus, our focus is kids in cages.
You are not above the law. If you have a season, the city's under this, when the police ask you to leave, you need to leave. Crowds are dangerous, and all you guys do is keep inflating, keep inflating. The crowd grows, you throw more salt in the pot, you pour more coke in the pot. You guys are so full of... Good night. You two, they... We were trying to have one. And I asked you not to come, and I asked you to go back, you guys kept coming. Kept coming, kept coming. The rest of them would say, "We're antagonizing you," but you guys are following us by our cars with your cameras out. Saying that this is peace, that this is justice. This is a peace, just right. This is selfish agenda. That's what this is. No, I don't want to get...
Our focus is ice. Our focus is ice. Our focus is ice. I'm asking, please let me go. Please let me do this myself. Please let me do this myself. My focus is ice. My focus is ice. My focus is ice. My focus is ice. My focus is ice.
But I can't say nothing back, right?
Their focus is us. Their focus is us. Their focus is us. None of us are ICE. None of us have any police credentials. We don't work for the government. If your focus is ICE, why are you surrounding us in a parking? If your focus is ICE? Because we're not ICE. We're not associated with ICE. We do more for this community and communities all over this country. We send food to Ukraine. We send food all over 39 states. We feed people. That's what we do. We help our community. We enhance people. We strengthen families. What do you guys do? You come out here with high people antagonizing, with their cameras in their faces, following us by our cars, claiming that somebody threatened him, but he's so scared that he's following us with his camera? And then here all you come with all this extra stuff? You guys are, uh, Travis, calling yourself helping somebody. You need to help yourselves and pray more. That's what you need to do. Pray more. You're not helping anybody just how down here tonight. You focusing on yourself as your agenda.
I'm just recording. All this shit be too much.
Y'all need attention. Y'all need attention. Go get attention somewhere.
Forty-eight hundred. I'm from Van Buren and Cicero. That was the forty-eight hundred for. No, Jake News, forty-eight hundred. Jake, J-A-K-E. And then News and then forty-eight. Yeah, Jake News, forty-eight hundred. Yeah.
No one, no one, leave him alone. Leave him alone.
She's good to back it all out. I help her.
Oh, now, huh.
The one that exposed your corrupt ass mirror, yeah. Funny like that.
A bunch of high idiots. No conversation. Y'all don't wanna talk on this. You don't wanna confront each other.
Watch out, lady. Hey, hey. Hey, lady, watch out so she can bag this car.
She's trying to get out.
You're not helping anybody.
She moving. Y'all need to watch them cars. People trying to leave.
And we'll pray for the rest of them.
This man tried to come right at me talking about I'm running around with the Ku Klux Klan. What the fuck be going on, bro? I don't know. But I ain't no bitch. I'm from a ghetto too, bro.
Like, this doesn't fucking, like, this is not important. No, this ain't not threatening. Are you kidding me? This dude's literally been, oh, I mean, just following me.
Antagonizing. He's still over here. Okay.
This shit gonna keep happening and it gonna go up, up here, right in the police parking lot, watch. It ain't gonna be long before somebody try to bring a strap to something to one of these things, bro.
I want my voice to be heard. I'm gonna let it be heard. Bro, bro, you don't know what they can do.
Everybody yelling. Who was yelling? Everybody.
You don't want that. You don't want no one pulling guns out, doing that stuff like that.
We don't want these people, why?
Like, you don't know, I've had friends with the fucking heads blown out at Walmart for fucking bad cookie. You act like I'm not part of some shit.
What the fuck is that gonna prove, though?
Somebody said you need a fist bump. What, what happened?
Nah, he came up on me like, why you always recording? I'm like, I'm a journalist, what the fuck? I just ain't scared, bro. I done been in shit like this my whole life. I just ain't scared. Both sides was trying to intimidate, bro. Man, I'm about to get my content. I don't care about all this shit.
Well, I'm just saying, they have no knowledge of it at all.
Nah, last time I was up here. Last time I was up here. Bro heard me saying like, uh, I'm telling you what the fuck happened.
What are those? I know the mayor relatives.
Yeah, that's exactly who it is.
Yeah, she brought her family.
She ain't bringing them, they just coming because they understand she finna get a slashing. You feel me? With the tongue.
Somebody went over there because somebody supposed to been threatening her.
Somebody followed them to the car. Where he at? With the glasses. Where he at? What dude there with the glasses? He did follow them to the car, right there with that green jacket on, bro.
Yeah, he wasn't supposed to been doing all that.
They put the camera all up in the air to report that. I called the news out to watch us perform on our issues. Not to have this. Now they gonna put that on the news. It was a confrontation instead of what we really, our message was.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? So.
She usually uses the bad stuff.
So, I saw the guy put a camera up, you know, it just, that just doesn't give us those families who look relying on us. They really are relying on us to stand with them and keep their names alive.
Something gonna happen up here.
It gotta be on that focus.
Trying to tell y'all, something gonna happen.
I know, that's, they don't know, bro.
Everybody ain't from Broadview. Something is gonna happen.
Bro.
He shouldn't have followed them to the car.
No, you shouldn't.
Motherfucker got to stand, they chant whatever they saying. They say we finna get out of here because we don't wanna hear this shit. And bro, follow them all the way to their motherfucking car. Like, that shit lame. And the motherfucker got women with him and all that shit. That shit lame, so. Motherfuckers just gotta call that shit out for what it is. Motherfuckers should be doing that shit.
Start shooting up everybody. And then guess what?
We gotta be smart.
Guess what, gang?
Especially when you ain't finna do shit, you just following them because you at a police station. Let's be real. You wanna follow them if we weren't at this motherfucking police station?
That's true. We gotta be smart, guys. We gotta fucking.
The whole shit y'all be trying to push every time it just look like a joke because shit like this happen. Like, this shit look corny as hell.
Or two.
When emotions go high, we lose focus. We lose our direction. We lose our, our aim. And it's very important that we don't lose our poise and stay disciplined. Going up to that group was a no-no.
We need to be tough.
Bro, a motherfucker coming up to me where I got my sisters, aunties and all that shit with me, that shit gonna get bad, bro.
Twenty, thirty D, bro. And guess what? Guess what gonna happen? You don't know, you don't know the west side of Chicago. I live the west side of Chicago.
I still live on the west side of Chicago.
You can't come in on someone's hood and act out like they do did meal today. You can't do that. You don't know this community, man. You don't know this community.
It be shit like that. Y'all don't even know. Y'all doing all that talking. That man been on the phone for ten minutes, bro. Shit do not be sweet, bro.
Y'all show up and protest on Saturday. Then we gotta worry about ICE. We gotta worry about someone retaliation, bro. You see what I'm saying? We, we can't add more on to our issues. We got enough on our plate right now. We gotta, we gotta focus our energy on what we gotta focus on. And you think it's a game? I'm telling you, it don't play.
It's like protests are starting to enjoy all this shit. It just take from the whole message on my kids, bro.
These are game bangers out here, man. You don't know this lifestyle like I know. You, me, we know this lifestyle. They, he's a game banger. Look, look, ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Don't judge. You don't know my background. You don't know people's background. Don't judge.
I'm sorry. In, 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 in.
But at the same time. Right is wrong, 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 bro.
We know what we talking about.
Don't judge because we all come from different backgrounds.
I don't want no one get hurt. I don't want no one coming and retaliating with, with.
At the same time, we're all tone though, but.
You can't, grown don't stop bullets. Grown don't stop bullets. Grown don't stop bullets.
If this shit was out west, this don't happen. I don't get no fuck with nobody from. Or what you been through. If this shit was on the west side of Chicago, this shit wouldn't happen. People wouldn't be acting this motherfucking rowdy and tough. Because a motherfucker know what it gonna turn into.
This used to be a coordinated effort against ICE and we are so fucking fragmented right now. Like, this is so disappointing.
We gotta direct our emotions to what the motion should be directed. The direction of our emotions has to be focused on the core goal. And that goal cannot be deviated. I don't care what people say. I don't care how much they get in our face. We gotta be poised and disciplined in this fight. You can't lose focus.
Protest to turn into a gang, I ain't gonna lie.
Exactly. And then we lose credibility instantly. No one wanna support fuck stuff, dub like, they don't support that.
You're putting enough bro blocks in our plate.
We already looked as, we already looked as, as, as agitators and, and narratives they can put out there. You know what I'm saying?
Just don't help it.
We don't wanna add to the narrative. We don't wanna add, add to the, to the, to the stereotype. We wanna diffuse the stereotype.
If you gonna come to some shit like this, be sober. That man clearly ain't sober who was following him. Clearly ain't sober. You coming to a damn town hall, mean drunk. What you think gonna happen?
Yeah, dude, I was like, what the fuck?
They better than me because if that was me and my people, y'all would have been picking them up like a carpet on my kids.
Yeah, we gotta direct, we gotta do better. We gotta do better.
I separated myself from the protesters because this shit be looking clowned out. I'm a fucking journalist.
They gonna put all confrontation on Broadview outside, man. That's what you don't write, that's what you don't write. You know, and I have, I have reported, I provided all these media out here to record us doing our work. Doing our focus. Our focus on this stuff.
Y'all seeing the narrative. Y'all look exactly like what they say y'all is. And that's fucked up.
The branch to call us what they wanna call us. I didn't wanna get out of that. I didn't wanna do that. I wanted to give them the positive movement that you're doing and challenging the powers that be that has a system that's amplified and focused to destroy our movement. You see what I'm saying? That's what our focus is. It gotta be on that. We all guys try to keep it focused. We all gotta try. We gotta try. You gotta direct that energy, that, that, that energy to refill and to put it towards who is the enemy.
Stick to being a peaceful protester like y'all ass claiming. Stick to being a peaceful protester like y'all ass claiming. And the shit be looking anything but peaceful every goddamn day. That's just the truth. What was just peaceful about this shit? You be peaceful. I could get you that, not this motherfucking crowd.
I mean, you know, anger and aggression, you know.
It's not peaceful. Look at the words you just said. Anger and aggression? The fucking opposite of peaceful.
She said, you get one more chance and then they clear the courtroom. It happen immediately or you hold it?
I, I totally wanna hear.
How you think going in there acting like that gonna make the mayor do anything you want her to do?
And guess what, y'all? She's my, she's my activist. She works with me.
Yeah, I'm totally.
I heard to observe our work.
That's why y'all tent gone. Shit like this. That's why she'll do some spiteful shit like take y'all tent. Why wasn't she? Motherfucker hollering and cussing and calling me nice. Hell, yeah, I'm finna take your tent.
We fight legal way. We fight that way. We can't, we can't give up.
Man, y'all fighting the gang bang way, gang. I ain't even lying.
The anger and all those things are valid. But you're out organized and you're getting run the fuck over, right?
It ain't valid. Motherfuckers just wanna show they ass. This shit ain't valid. Motherfuckers just wanna show they ass. This shit ain't valid, bro. This shit ain't helping nobody in that detention center or shit. This ain't helping the cause y'all claim y'all going for or shit. You can't lie to motherfuckers and sit here, all the anger is valid. No, the fuck it ain't. Motherfuckers having a good time, bro. Motherfuckers having a good time, bro. That's what motherfuckers doing. Having fun, being disrespectful. That's what motherfuckers doing, bro. Good, well, don't cry when the fucking tent get took. And you definitely was crying because I was right there recording the shit.
Me?
Yeah.
I wasn't crying.
Whining.
Whining?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm out here protesting.
And then they giving y'all ten minutes to get the shit. You still right there, bitch. Bitch. Coward. Then they said, that's why you got fired. Because he sitting in the man's face calling them bitches.
Maybe.
You gonna keep getting the motherfucking time who calling you bitches?
Me? I don't know, man. I mean.
It's a better way to do this shit on my kids. That's why I separated myself from y'all. Because motherfuckers is doing this shit wrong as hell. That's just the truth.
So then what's the next steps? Like realistically, like everybody, it was.
The same bullshit?
No, but like, we're here. It gets to be different, right?
Somebody gotta say it. Give a fuck?
But it needs to be everybody. No, it needs to organize. It's what it needs to be. Exactly. It's an emotionally charged situation. People need to learn how to control their emotions. And maybe that means you meet an hour early and you scream about it. You meet an hour after you scream about it and that's all fine, but like.
Or you just simply don't scream every day. You screaming every goddamn day is what you used to doing. Stop screaming completely.
You don't have a hierarchy, then you just gonna have people just screaming and.
Bro, I was the worst screamer out of the crowd on my kids. I was the worst one, bro. I don't do that shit no more.
No, you can't, you can't win like.
When you first come up here.
If they walk into the car and the girl come and say somebody.
For a long time, you start to understand that that's not gonna help anything. But there's, there's people that come in that haven't been here a lot and they don't see that yet. They don't know and.
Why should she show a motherfucker any type of pity if they're in there treating her like that? That's just human nature. Even if it is valid, but you trying to accomplish something. You trying to get something done, so you gotta bite your fucking tongue. You gotta play the fucking role.
What did I do today?
I ain't talking about you. But I mean, um, no justice, no peace shit, get them fired up too.
That's it. That's how we fight. That's why I need to shut it down. We gotta use the laws they have in place. Using all this emotional stuff ain't getting us nowhere. It ain't getting us nowhere.
Man, they finna come do something else. They fuck around, protest area probably get even smaller. Finna do something else. This shit ain't gonna get no results. And a motherfucker been acting like this for a minute and it ain't got no results. So I don't see why a motherfucker like, oh, we gotta change it up. This shit ain't getting the motherfucker nowhere. Motherfucker ain't gained no ground, nothing.
But one of the blacks that the black police, was he more so trying to agitate it, it looked like to me? He wasn't trying to break it up.
Yeah, for sure. The whole thing was, the whole thing was scripted. TV show. All they had to do was say the right thing to piss this super like already emotionally volatile crowd. And they took the bait, right?
Yeah, but, but, but. Your family ain't supposed to be up here. You running this.
But if they said it's in a broad view, shit, they could come, if they said it's in a broad view.
Listen, understand what I'm saying. It's pre-agitated.
They up here because how the last meeting went. You weren't here, John. That's why they up here. Because how the last one went.
Yeah, but you gotta understand, it's not supposed to roll like this. Not a family event. So y'all come here and now you got these emotions going on. Now your family is here too. Your guns, what the hell is going on here?
The family was going to their car, honestly, bro.
That was her family?
Yeah, I think so.
Even the police look like the damn part of the family because he wasn't trying to break the shit up.
You think they don't know the mayor family? Of course they do.
I got him on video. He just standing to the side. And he wasn't trying to get in between them. It was the white guy that was getting in between. If you look at it, it was the white guy that was trying to.
If he don't follow them people to that car, them people getting they con lead. Those are the facts. So all that others run around, shake around shit. If that man over there with them glasses don't follow them to that car, they getting their cars and they leave. None of this happened.
But you follow somebody to their damn car, you fuck around getting shot.
Where I'm from, you don't do no shit like that. What the fuck?
Okay, so they're over there.
It's like two men, it's like four men in a crowd and like ten women. What you following them for?
But so they're over there and they're gonna leave at some point. So what do you wanna do next? Because they're gonna come every single time, no matter what.
I'm finna keep recording, getting my content. That's what I'm finna do.
You also have knowledge and wisdom, though. And it sucks that like.
They don't listen to that.[1377.20] They don't listen to that. They wanna be rowdy, gang.
A lot of wildness going on.
They wanna do that. So I might wear recorder to make money off it and try to tell they had something right.
I don't disagree with you, but they're gonna be here every time. So you can't, you know what I'm saying? Like you have to keep trying. What's the other option? What's the other option?
If they came to do something, then you come to do what you came to do, you know?
Say it again?
If you come to do something, then you come to do what you came to do. If you come to do something else.
They did, they came what, they did what they came to do. What they came to do wasn't helpful, right?
Yeah, but exactly. That's the problem. They did exactly what they came to do.
Why, why does us being in two circles help though? Like it, it, it's gotta be united, right? We're never gonna get.
I know he ain't calling.
Bro, they just got a lot of cars, bro. That's it, bro.
Cause he been waving down and calling.
Bro, we from the same place as them. You know how that shit go? A lot of these protesters don't even understand what the fuck happened. Bad shit will happen on my kids.
You just, you gotta, you gotta just, you gotta just allow it to roll on, you know, it, it just.
Or at least really set it off. All that halfway stepping shit. At least if you gonna do it, do it.
If you're gonna do it, you gotta do what you want to do.
These motherfuckers half stepping in some shit will go down.
You can't have do it. You gonna do something, that go all the way.
But like there's things to be learned from y'all, right? Like.
Everybody don't wanna be taught.
That's fine, but we're here talking now. Gotta be more organization of how we handle it.
Yeah, but just, but see, when you talk like this, then you don't have a structure. You got one guy over there, he ain't heard nothing. So now, you know, you gotta have some type of, of, something.
Yes, that's, yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly that.
Guy over there, he ain't heard nothing. He don't know about no rules.
He over there thinking he did a good thing.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's a accountability thing, right? Cause it's one of those things, like when the person next to you is getting escalated, you tap them on the shoulder and say, we need to go. Because it's one of those things where it's like everybody's feeding off each other. There needs to be a plan in front.
Everybody was gonna say, calm down, she gonna end it. Calm down, she gonna end it. Motherfuckers still couldn't control themselves, bro.
They came over there and they said, somebody just threatened you, right?
Right, yeah, nobody, until she came over, no one even knew it was.
Nobody knew what was going on over there.
I knew what was going on cause I saw them following them.
We're not saying that you did it.
You had a stray over there fucking around.
But that's because everybody went in with no plan, right?
Oh, they had a plan and they executed it.
I think the person knew better.
Just in a police parking lot, that'll give you some big ass cojones.
They not, they not holding it in the meeting, right? What the hell you following them to the car for?
Cause we in a police parking lot.
You mean them following them on purpose?
Yeah.
Of course, that's the whole point.
You had a stray. Why in the fuck is he over there? If you let him deal with that shit by himself, then it's been a problem over there.
But they'll listen to you.
Shit.
They will start, they will, they will at least get quiet and you get a chance, right? Cause this isn't gonna, this isn't gonna work. It's gonna get uglier and uglier.
Well, they can keep doing what they want to. I'm prepared. I've been in worse shit.
Let's gather everybody together real quick, please. Hey, guys.
Go over to the not go, go. Every, everybody, can you come over here? You guys come over and you come over here.
I can hop on the goddamn phone too, so I don't give a fuck. I could clear this bitch out too.
Annika.
I'm Derek.
Is that a police truck over there?
Well, I don't know. I know he just parked up in his parking lot, then he parked over there. That's what's happening. Oh, he probably live over there. Ain't nobody watching shit like that but me and you. Yeah, I just be trying to take a different approach. That shit ain't gonna get a motherfucker nowhere.
Oh, but man, it was glorious.
It was glorious.
The whole time, just look over here.
Alright, just, 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 just listen up, right? This is, this is very, this is really important, y'all. It's really important. It's really important. Um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna focus blame on the one, that's not the problem, that's not the issue right now. What happened, what happened. Now we gotta move forward. We gotta, we gotta learn from this and try to regroup and re, refocus.
Man, stop following people to their goddamn car. The truth is the truth. You talking about you don't wanna point no blame? He followed them to the fucking car where he at. He still over there.
Hey, bro, let me finish up.
Well, you need to start right. You starting wrong. Accountability is key. He shouldn't have did that shit.
Let the rabbi speak, please.
Don't nobody wanna hear that. I'm grown, we outside and I got a First Amendment right. I keep speaking on my kids.
Can you guys come here? Hey, autonomous man, cause they don't wanna come over.
Okay, I got you. Okay, but listen, um, yeah, we, we gotta think about, uh, fellow person, a fellow activist, because any, any, any extracurricular we do when we're doing this work here can be detrimental. And I just don't wanna see, like I protect you guys or try to direct this to be peaceful in, in the protest. It goes for us as well. You know what I'm saying? I just don't want us to lose our core. And this is our core. And the fact is that any motion that we put forth out like that, it can be, it can turn to be an ugly situation. Okay?
I hear you, Rabbi.
You know what I'm saying? So let me, let me just finish, please, please, please. Um, and so we just gotta redirect and refocus our attention to what our game aim is. And that focus is ICE. There, that lawsuit, did you all, did you all print, download the lawsuit?
Be more specific. That's so funny.
The lawsuit was filed. The lawsuit, the civil lawsuit was filed to the two defendant, uh, the two plaintiffs, of what's happening in that, that facility. I downloaded that lawsuit and I began to read it. And it gave me more motivation to get here, to say what I can say here. Because of the fact of what's happening in that facility is inhumane, that should be our focus right now. And that, those families are right now depending on each and every one of us to deliver what they can't deliver. They're scared. If they lose you, if they lose you, 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 what they got? Who's picking, who's picking for them?
I, I would like to take, so I hear what you're saying, but I wanna give two points of dissent here. And that's that it is incredibly important that we remain autonomous, that we remain united as a community with the understanding that we are all individuals who are activists in our own way. And that we don't shame people for making different decisions, right? We all have a role to play. And you are a great defense. You, when it is time, you remind people to assess their risk. And that is massive. That's huge because we get caught up and we forget, right? But at the same time, if we hadn't have pushed on Saturday, we wouldn't have gotten up to the ICE facility. We wouldn't have gotten face to face with ICE. And we did, man. We were face to face with them. And that is what we want. And that is what we showed to the community. This is what we want. We want to be facing off with ICE, not you. You're a waste of our time. We'll get back to you later. You are always a problem. You will always be a problem. But ICE is our focus and you're standing in our way. And by remaining autonomous and people knowing the risks, knowing that, hey, we're about to get kettled. And it's ten o'clock at night, maybe those of you that don't wanna get arrested at ten PM should go home. They stepped back and they kept watch. And they warned us when we had PD coming up. And PD turned around. They turned around and we made it up there. So it's just, I understand what you're saying. But if we're willing to get arrested, if we're willing to get pulled for the movement, that is not a bad choice. It is the way that we get through to these guys that they're not our problem. ICE is, and it's the way that we show the community that we stand with them. Risks were not.
I respect that and that, and that being, um, civil disobedience is important. I'm not saying it's not. Uh, but the fact is, uh, I did an interview today on Sant, Santana Jackson's podcast. And this is the daughter of Jesse Jackson, who are trying to get all of us to go visit Rainbow Push. But that video, any of those, so they know my work. They know my work. And to get a level of support outside of Broadview is necessity. I'm working with NAACP right now as well. They also wanna support us. But when, but when they see us not engaged in what we're doing, it pushes people away. I can't make an argument without having people who wants to support us because I know how they, they run. It, 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 it ties my hand to get what I need to get, to get us in that next level. You see what I'm saying?
I do.
I, I just, I just need us to really, really channel on what it is. And, and listen, I can't, I can't control everyone here. And I'm not trying to. I'm only advising, if anyone feels the need to do what you do, that's your, that's your prerogative. Please, that's the first right now. Um, but it's, it's, it's the narrative that's being put on us that I'm concerned about. This guy is gonna go into, uh, file his petition to the Supreme Court to bring a National Guard in Broadview.
He's gonna do that whether we are standing there or not.
I understand, I understand. But let's, but, but, let me finish. But the fact is, that, that unknown happening, of that unknown happening, um, we have a, a federal judge is standing on our side right now. And I just don't wanna give a, a federal judge that's standing on our side any inkling of saying, hey, I changed my mind. I don't, I don't wanna give her, I don't wanna give her that, 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 that luxury to even have in that. So it's like, in, in, in trenches of going through this fight, it's important for us, even myself. You know, I had the issue the other day. I, I thought about when I left there, about what happened to me. Hey, Rabbi, you got, you got, you know, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta challenge energy where it need to be challenged. Because we're not the enemies. The enemy is in that building. You see what I'm saying? So first accountability starts with me, okay? Accountability starts with me. And I wanna get to what my man saying. Accountability starts with me. And we all are leaders here in our own capacity, whatever you do, whether it's, whether it's getting some ride or whether, whether it's doing, medical attention and whether you, whatever you do, you're a leader in this fight. And so we just gotta always remember who we're, who we're standing for. And I'm all for that. If you, if you know my record or see my record, I'm the one that wanted to shut down Dan Ryan in twenty twenty. That was me. After Father Flager, then I was second. I didn't shut down the Dan Ryan. And do you know how many, how many state police came out to Chicago? You saw what we saw on the weekend? Add that two times on both sides, how many police was in Chicago?
But can we?
Thousands.
Can we say that real change happened before they let loose riot police and dogs on people in Missouri? Like, that is, that is the history of change. It is, there are those of us that stand in peace, but we accept that we are autonomous. And we accept the risk that we will be, that our rhetoric will be twisted and manipulated to make us look like evil or cruel individuals in order to protect a badge that only protects itself. And then we do it right, right? We do it with our voices, we do it with the law. And we keep pushing and it fails us and we do it again and a little angrier each time. And that is how history happens. That is how change happens. And I just, I, I hear what you're saying. I just think it's very important that we don't say that the NAACP is not gonna stand with us if we don't change our rhetoric or we don't start disversing.
They say that, that ain't what they didn't, weren't gonna say. I'm saying they wanna help us. There are so many, so many people out there in, in a, uh, uh, um, gosh, uh, I'm looking at it right now. Reverend, Reverend Sharpe, his organization, they're looking at us. These are all my connections. You see what I'm saying? So.
You say us, but everyone's on top. You say us, but everyone's on top. It's like everyone is their own individual.
Are we, are we, are we together though when we're here, right? Like the reality is still too, right?
One thing I gotta, I have to add.
So like there's a difference, right, between how you choose to show up when you're organizing, right? And I think that everybody will agree that's autonomous. But can we agree that this is chess, not checkers? And so the way that you show up here impacts every single person within this, right? So like if there's one thing that we can leave tonight with, let it be to get on the same page of how we approach this space. Cause they will take it and twist it and push this there and if that narrative, this and the third, it's all premeditated, right? That's playing into their hands. And so it's just, no one's telling you what to do. But to walk in there and all be on different pages doesn't help us any, right? Is, is that something?
One thing I wanted to add to what you said, which is really important, that there's not many of us in our faces. We all know our faces, right? We're individuals, but when, when each one of us makes some mistakes, if, if you make a mistake, it's gonna follow you, 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 you. So we have to be very smart about what we do. Cause this is what happened right now. It just pushes like two steps behind.
We're gonna get spanked correctly.
Maybe it's gonna get, we know what happened. Everybody tonight know what happened. But there was many cameras that nets a false, like there could be false narrative spread on what happened tonight. And then that, like he said, like who knows how they're gonna look at it now, like, even though we were just using our First Amendment rights and doing everything we usually do, but like, without, how many cameras were here? How many like cameras are on right now? Like, like he's, like, like he said, like, you do something that comes on me and you do something that goes on you. Like, we are all one. Like, we are a community that stands together.
Right, and that's, that's, we are all together. We can't come here.
Can I respond to that?
No, yeah.
So two things. That is, that is saying that, in that same vein, it's saying that the mayor condemning us all because one person had a case of beer on her car is okay. It's not okay.
I don't think anybody thinks that.
I mean, by saying that we are reflective of one another, hold on, you got to finish too, right? By saying that we are fully reflective of one another, we are again removing our autonomy and our ability to make decisions. What we need to do is make sure that we, we are making decisions, we are doing it as a collective. But those are for righteous acts, right? You don't walk into the street on your own, right? That is for safety. It's not because I don't agree you should be walking into the streets. It, you know, we do this together, we fight together. And then there was something else you said that I had to save it for and I don't remember what it was, but that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I agree. I agree with everybody in the crowd.
I wanna say, I personally, um, am disappointed with what happened today. Um, I don't know. I don't, I don't think that the like, I don't think that this level of like individualism is really helping us. Um, and like I might be taking a step back because of that. Um, sorry, I had something to actually say and I.
Lost your train of thought.
No, that's fair, that's fair.
I think we had a good opportunity tonight to bring some community members in with us and, you know, that, that seem like, you know, they, they understand what we're saying and why we're here. And I feel like that, that took a couple steps back from.
I spoke with every single one of those people.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I got their contact info.
I hope that we can continue to bring in more people from the community and Francis remember what they were gonna say.
What I was gonna say is that in my time here, I've heard a lot of people, um, reiterate the, um, the like principle of don't talk to agitators, don't engage with agitators, you know, don't start things with them. Because it distracts from the main goal, the main, the primary cause. Um, and I think this was an example of a failure of that. Um, even if, and I'm not trying to say that the people in that crowd were agitators. But it's just, I think the same principle can be applied in a multitude of ways. Like obviously, conversation is good. And that's, I don't think that's a distraction from the cause. But arguing and fighting in confrontation that gets nowhere, um, is exactly that. It's, you know, getting nowhere. Um, and I think that's all I wanted to say.
Especially right after seeing that everything, like the little thing we do bad, it reflects like, it, it gets amplified and they're using the little things that we do bad. And that, that was, that was, that was just not good.
My last remark that was gonna connect the two, um, was that like this intense individualism where like if somebody, if somebody wants to be a detriment to the cause, um, just let them. It's like this is why, I, like, we were extremely fragmented today. I watched the police ceremoniously close the doors in front of Mayor Katrina, Katrina Thompson. Um, and then hurt us out into the streets and then we just started fighting amongst ourselves.
I wanna go on record saying that I was over here talking with the residents and actually have no concept of what happened with that gentleman. So.
I, I was looking at you, but like it's not.
So that may let me just, yeah, like, that makes sense. I feel like a lot of the conversation, we're all on the same page and maybe that's where the disconnect was with all of this, right? But I think most of us are kinda like, alright, yeah, let's, let's reset, let's, cause it's proud organized. You know what I'm saying? Um, yeah, I, I definitely have no, no idea what happened with the, the agitator inside. I'm assuming it's the one who threatened us, you know, openly.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that sounds right. Um.
But they're gonna do that all the time. There, there's gonna be a few people doing that all the time.
Right, it happens every day.
We can't engage.
Yesterday, some Florida Proud Boy guy is pushing old man to the ground, right? Like, how do you not react to that? That's tough.
No, and that time we reacted.
That's different. That's totally different.
Yes, that, that was totally different.
I mean.
It's one thing if they're physically feeling something on the inside.
And the way, the way, the way we react.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna reiterate with stuff, but if we get one thing from this meeting, can we, it's not, obviously I can't control any of you, um.
You can control me, I think.
No, but could we all agree not to, no, you're good, um, just not to interact with an agitator, a counter protester? And can we all agree, and if anybody's uncomfortable with this, like, I, I don't know, step back, but can we all agree that we will hold each other accountable to that?
What about me? I'm so friendly.
On that, on that note, if you see an agitator with, who's like live streaming or anything like that, play Disney music.
Always copyrighted.
If you play Disney music, it's copyrighted. Whatever they film can't get, can't get posted. So just play some.
You press one button YouTube, but take that music off and put that video back up.
I know, but it's one more roadblock, you know?
One button, literally, one button.
No, but they, but they, they can't isolate the, because if they're recording live, they can't isolate the, uh, the audio from the video. All it just hears is sound.
Yeah, I think, I think.
You think that, that ain't true.
I think that our objective should not be to like be silencing counter protesters.
That's what y'all gang planning for, to play Disney music when you saying?
Like obvi- obviously, um.
That's really the plan?
That was one idea thrown out. We're still talking about.
We're just throwing out ideas.
That's, well, that's the thing is that like, um, if they're going to clip things and misrepresent things, they're going to do that regardless. Um, I don't think our objective should be to like make it impossible for them to like, I don't know, we should just.
Just walk away from them.
Yeah, that seems super hard though. Jesus Christ.
It is, you're right.
Bro, I've been in the gang damn near my whole life. Y'all be acting like a gang.
It may be hard for us to walk away.
You acting like a gang, bro.
It's like if they're, if they're cameras in your face, just, I don't know, it's ea, it's easy for me to say this because I tend to be like, a silent observer at a lot of these things. But like if they, I've had conversations with them when they have their camera in my face and I like give my opinion. But like, if they had their camera in your face, just don't like get loud and aggressive with them. Even if they're getting loud and aggressive with you, don't do that. Just like be respectful because that, like, I hate to say, we're not a monolith. Like you, one person does not represent the broader cause.
One person can get everybody hurt though.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's exactly the one, yeah. So can we give each other a tap on the shoulder? If one of us sees another one who's going to just be, hey.
Can I get an exception? I'm just so friendly. If I see, if I see Cam again, if I see Cam again, I have to say what's up. Cause I get, you know. We, we argued, you know, but we were cool about it, I think, right Derek? We saw this arguing and everything.
Man, Cam, my homie.
Yeah, I, I don't think I ever said anything too, too, uh, out of pocket to Cam, I don't think. Uh, the, when I first saw him, I told him I was the CEO of Antifa, but other, I was just, I was just, I felt like good humor to, 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 you know, disarm, but.
Trying to be funny, but you gonna end up on the internet saying that shit.
Yeah, but that's kinda funny though, right?
Not really.
What, being the CEO of Antifa? That'd be kinda wild, right? He probably gets hella like, I don't know, privileges and shit.
Okay, so like a collective accountability, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay? And is there a mindfulness around, again, no one's telling nobody how to move, but a mindfulness around how we operate in these spaces?
I gotta say one thing, I gotta say one thing. Cause I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and just like, so, I'm not gonna hi, I'm not gonna highlight it, but, um, if somebody does like have like some type of like disagreement with somebody, I wouldn't really call it an argument. It's more of like it just a, um, and I'm not speaking to like nobody directly, but, um, there should be like no fucking clicks, okay? I've been seeing like, like, and I'm gonna, no, actually, you know what? You've been clicking up and all this, that, that shit should stop, okay? Cause the bigger fucking picture here is what's going on on fucking Beach Street, okay? Both of y'all need to fucking stop. And I'm gonna, no, 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 no. I'm, no. Because I've been around here. You ain't from around here. I ain't never seen you around here. So I got a lot to say, okay? Y'all, I'm fifteen older, fifteen years older than both of y'all, okay? So check it out. I've been seeing a whole bunch of clicks. We are one big ass squad, okay? They are the fucking opposer, opposers, okay? They are the opponents, okay? I'm talking, and I'm speaking, I'm spe, I have to say this. But I, I, I have never argued with none, nobody. I've had maybe a little bit of a difference in my opinion is my opinion. But you know what? I'm trying to agree with everybody, right? Everybody's gotta, we're all gonna come together, right? As one big group, right? We started, it started with one person, right? Making that DV ten, correct? Then it grew to twenty five people, right? Maybe thirty, okay? So my whole thing is this, if we can't, if we're all like, you made a prime example, Francis. As soon as we left out of there, what, what did everybody start doing? The police pulled up. They wanted us, they were starting to argue. We had an agitator in there, okay? We can't let him knock us off of our rock. We've been standing strong for a while. You guys have been, look, I just came out here. So the people that have been out here for three months or two months plus, I commend y'all. Because this is my grand, this is where my granddad, he, he can't speak. He ninety one years old. And I've been saying that for a long time. But I appreciate y'all. And I wish I would have got to say a lot more in there. I wasn't able to speak. But I appreciate the people that did speak, okay? But all that click shit, it needs to stop. Everybody is cool. If you see somebody, ask them how they doing. Ask them if they fucking ate. Ask them if they fucking showered today, okay? Because the, people need to hold each other accountable, right? We one big group. There's a lot of people from out of town here, right? A lot of people that, that drove miles, miles away just to, just to make a message for themselves and make a message to this motherfucker over here, okay? That doesn't want. That doesn't want, she gonna get out, she gonna get out, she gonna have to get out. Because she is not listening to none of us, okay? It honestly makes me sick, makes me sick to my stomach that what we're doing and what we're saying and, and everything that we've worked hard for, it's just been, she's just called Public Works and they just got dumped into a fucking truck, okay? Like, we need to make our voice a little bit more stronger and a little bit more, um, I would say, a little bit more kinder in a way, right? Be passive aggressive, right? A little, just a little bit more, cuz I don't, I don't know if this friendly shit is gonna fucking keep working, to be honest with you. It, where did it get us?
That's not a call to violence.
Right, call to violence.
That's not a call to violence.
Exactly.
That's passive aggressive.
Passive aggressive.
Not a call to violence.
Not a call to violence.
Making sure the cameras hear that, not a call to violence.
Not a call to violence, I said passive aggressive. So in my opinion, what I mean by passive aggressive is just like, kinda figure out where she's at, where our limits are, and go bu- go from there, cuz we've only just been trying to help the community reassess, help get people access to the things that they need to help their families, because they don't even know where their families are at, half the time. So, like I said, going back to my first point, all that click shit, all that aggressive stiff, like, they tried to throw us off our rock, we need to fucking reform and we need to get this shit right now, period. And, and that's all I gotta say.
On that note, folks, I do have to leave, I gotta.
Oh, for sure.
Alright, and if you know you're a high emotion person, have a person next to you know how to get you back centered. Are they allowed to touch you when you're dysregulated? Do you need to just have a tap on the shoulder? Can they not touch you, will that freak you out more, right? But like, build the systems beforehand, if you know who you are, so that we can go in with intention. And we need to keep relaying this message because not everybody is here tonight. A lot of us are, but not everyone's here, so I think just keep relaying this message to everybody that goes up there on a regular basis.
And nobody's at a higher point than anybody else, we're all equal. Nobody, nobody should take like a step to make everybody in danger.
We are all the same, we're all one, we're all one family, it doesn't matter how long I've been here, it doesn't matter how long anybody's been.
We are, we are fighting equality, so let's stay equal here, nobody's above.
I treat everybody the fucking same, we should all treat each other the same and make sure everybody is on their Ps and Qs so that we look good in there. So that we're all looking at each other and we can look at each other and say, yeah, that's family.
We, we don't need to add more enemies.
Period.
We don't need to add more enemies to this.
On what you said, um, like adding on to that, um, it's good to have a buddy system, especially in the event of arrests. Um, something, was it Sue that was telling us like, calm storm? It's, it's sort of that dynamic, um.
My mind is storming.
I can be eager on any given day. It's not like anybody can be eager on any given day, right? You never know what's gonna press your buttons and like, look, and we're all standing here, like, we were divided the rest of the night, we are all here. We get to try again, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, tomorrow's a new day. Right.
You have to keep in mind how you might react to a certain situation, how other people might react to a certain situation. Like, if two people get into it, um, start arguing, maybe one person who's calm can come up and try to break the situation up. If five or six of us start to go try to investigate, we might just be curious, but to the person who's talking, who's arguing with the person, it's gonna come off across as a threat. They don't know us, they don't know why we're going over there, but they're gonna jump to conclusions if they're already in that agitated state. So if someone, you do see somebody walking up, trying to resolve the situation, maybe just take a step back so that it's only that one person.
During tonight's debrief, I had only seen a few people among myself actually be like, hang on, let's step back, take a step back, among tonight's little dispute. Uh, like, and just being like, hey, let's, let's take a step back, but it's not. And then Rabbi was like, came up with the microphone, like, this is not what we're freaking doing, like, what's all, what's wrong with everybody? We are fighting amongst ourselves and there is.
Emotions are hot, for sure, for sure.
Here, and everybody has emotions, like.
I said, I went, I actually went up to try to calm the situation when I realized that nothing I was gonna say was gonna calm it.
Walk away, walk away. Exactly, we just walked away, cuz we're like, okay, I'm not gonna be, you're not gonna paint me as the problem, I was just, a lot of people did come over cuz they saw scut up hole or scut up hole going on and they were like, we gotta disuse it and we're looking at the police like, can y'all disuse this, or are you just gonna sit there and like?
We all have to have a level of de- de- escalation, you all, you all, and would you see me do all the time? All the time, we gotta have that level of de-escalation.
Oh, you lost your core.
And be willing to work with people because I.
Oh, no, 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 the core, I got a battery.
I approach some people and I don't know what their, like, opinions are, I don't really know what their, like.
You need to see.
Nah, yeah, I dropped the core somewhere.
But I approached one of them and they were telling me like, hey, we just don't want people crowding around us and following us. Okay, I'll, I'll walk, I'll walk you to your car and make sure nobody follows you. You have to be conscious, realize if you're doing that.
We cannot, we cannot, we cannot let that be our, our, like, vision. That, that's not who we are. That, that, that there, we are activists fighting for human rights. That is what we are, and we just cannot let no- nothing be to deter or distort of what that guy's in the office is saying, to paint us. We gotta remember, we, um, as my teacher always said, when you out there in these streets, you on front street. You are all on front street. Meaning that whatever you do, you're being watched, you're being scripted, you're being, what, what, what is your, what is your, your purpose today? How you talking, how you going about doing your business? We gotta always remember that we're on front street, okay? On that note, no justice.
No peace.
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 This is what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
And we gotta always remember, we gotta always remember, we are the true democracy. And what we do, every one, at last, one of us has a spirit to stand for someone that does not, cannot have a voice. And by having that voice for them, that's what democracy looks like. God bless you all, continue to stay strong, we gonna do this better, and this Saturday, where, where she at? Where she at? She's, Damaris, Damaris. Guess what I wanna do? Guess what I wanna do this Saturday? I wanna inform a chain in front of those police this Saturday. Peacefully, but not with aggression. A silent protest. Can we do that? No music, no bullhorn, no nothing. I wanna do a silent protest for those who cannot speak. You see what I'm saying? So that's what we need to do. We need to channel that to who we are challenging this, this aggression towards, not to each other, but to the ones that sit there and put those kids in cages. Inhumane conditions, not giving them food to eat. No medical supplies to, if someone was expecting or even having an attorney to even talk to them. Rights are being violated, that's where I want our energy to be put towards. Okay, can we do that? This is what democracy looks like.
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 No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
God bless and keep you, may everyone go home safely, this is my hope and prayer, God bless you all. My voice is so gone, it's lost, I'm pleased.
You gotta get that voice right. It went back off?
And obviously, thank you so much.
Oh, man, yeah, man, look, until we win, until we win, until we win, until we win. Then, then, then we accomplish, so, then, then we get to pop champagne. Hey, man, work, there's work, there's dough, bro.
I'm sorry. I had, I, I was stressed, I didn't like being in here.
I need you, I need you. I need you, bro, I need you, bro. I need, I need you, cuz if I don't have you, bro, I'm, I'm lost, right? If I don't have you, I'm lost, I just need you to, to, to back me up, you know what I'm saying? I, man, I'm, I'm in danger.
I can't agree with all of your statements, bro, like, like, tell me, I'm at six, I don't agree with.
I'm in danger.
I, I agree that you, you have a good message, I disagree with some of your things.
It's okay, that's what democracy looks like. If we can agree, disagree. At the same time, I'm always trying to find a way to have your voice to be heard and my voice to be heard. And to be voiced to be heard is doing it peacefully.
You gotta be disobedient.
But then also, and also, we, guess what? We can do this, we, we, look, look, guess what I just said?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you said be peaceful.
We gonna, we gonna do some disobedience this Saturday, okay?
Yeah, every Saturday, that's what we need, every Saturday.
We can do that, but here's the thing, here's the thing. One thing we wanna make sure of, something, is remember who is.
Everybody make sure you're getting sleep.
I'm like, yeah, like, I, I keep saying, every time I talk, I wanna be able to record, I'm here to record those fucking.
If I get in a way.
I don't even wanna protest, I just wanna fucking record.
If, if I get in a way that, that will take me off, off the frontline, then.
Oh, shit, I have to get off my rights, my rights.
Yeah, man, you get out of here.
I'm sorry, you have a good one, though, you know, I get.
I need you, bro.
Yeah, sir.
Let's go, alright, man, let's go. Okay?
Take it easy, brother.
Alright, take it easy, man, be safe, be safe.
The rule is, no one can leave, if I don't, no, the rule is, I can't leave until you all leave.
We won't leave until you leave.
I'm always the last one to leave, anything I do, cuz I care about everyone here. You gotta get home in your cars and.
I think it's something like.
Y'all have a good one.
Let's do it, let's do it. We gotta, we gotta take, bring them to the.
Nice quiet, calm, whole candle, safety cars.
We're gonna engage, engage.
Yeah, right.
Just to see, like, I don't know what the rules are on that, but like, can they, like, that's both a religious ceremony and like, I don't know, it's love, um. I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it would be like.
Cause I, I said to him, I didn't know the context, I said. He's, he's completely valid. I know, but it's like, even like, he's allowed to disagree with me and say, hey. He could say, James, you don't know what you're talking about, it's fine, you really do, I was just saying like, let's not, I'm also proud of you, that was my main, I was gonna say no arguing, but I was just like, let's not say that.
And I don't, I don't know, I, I'm asking.
And then he, he followed me all around the time, like, get away from me, get away from me. Get away from me.
That's, that's, that's agitating.
Yeah. Okay, I can. Be safe.
Alright, I can't wait, I can't leave, y'all leave.
Thank you for all you do, Rabbi.
I see you out of here, I gotta make sure you guys are, are safe, I gotta make sure you.
I gotta make sure you get in your car.
No, my car is way over there, way over there, so I, I'm not important right now, you guys are more important. You guys, it's, it's fine. Alright, bro.
Alright, man.
See you, man.
Alright, Rabbi.
Y'all, we know, y'all, we know, y'all, we know, take care, man.
Hey, it was nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you too. See, y'all, y'all be safe, God bless.
I know y'all have a lot of wisdom, you can take care of it, right?
Yeah, of course.
Where my, my body going, where you at?
I mean.
There's real shit going on here.
I know, but it got, it's.
I know.
I don't really wanna be a part of nothing like that.
You don't have to, that's fine.
Take discipline, you can't have a meeting over here, you got one guy that don't wanna come to the meeting.
And the whole guy who started it, he ain't, he ain't standing over here the whole time and he caused it all.
If he's over there, he's gonna do that shit again.
Exactly, so.
He, he under the, under the pretext.
I refuse to look like a fool, I'm not a fool, I'm not.
He got a rebel attitude.
Exactly, like, I don't even wanna haul him accountable, I don't even wanna get on him, like.
No, I appreciate the way you started it, because I think this white fragility bullshit, oh, no, we can't call, no, I'm calling you right there.
Yeah, yeah, it was you.
You just put everyone in danger, and we're gonna keep it a stay.
Because the only reason we went over there, cuz that lady says, he just threatened me.
Exactly.
Who the fuck just threatened you?
I watched him follow him.
And we walked over there and this, no, 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 she pushed him back, I'm wondering, what the fuck is going on? Cuz I don't know what the fuck, he got some shit going on with somebody over there, was, is that the police car in that corner?
Yeah, that's a police car over there.
Yeah, cuz they didn't wanna go home for a minute, and the police is with them people. Whatever the fuck going on, that black officer is a part of this shit.
Oh, with the white shirt?
The phony little star, and he didn't have a badge like everybody else, he had like a stamped badge, he with the shit because he didn't get between none of that shit, the white cop got in between.
You could tell what it's turning to when the process to speak and when they people speak.
And he looked like one of them motherfuckers when you somewhere and we on yellow.
Yeah.
So, I'm like, hold on, this nigga is a part of the shit.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why he's not grabbing nobody and say, come on, let's go. He's some killer there.
A man got up there on that mic and said, we ain't even gotta talk no more, coming from places like we come from, you know what that mean? You know what I'm saying, you know what that mean?
But some of those people exist in a lot of entitlement and privilege and you see that in the way that they don't think that their emotions need to be thought about and how you care about other people.
Yeah.
It's just one of those things, not saying it's your responsibility. I do this because it's my, it's my fucking race, I gotta, gotta come get my people, right? But like, all I'm saying is that y'all have wisdom, what do you want?
I know people that know this lady, they got business down here, and they know that male lady.
Yeah.
And probably her family too.
Yeah.
But appreciate y'all for being on here.
Yeah, we appreciate you too, thank you.
But that's fine.
You go to, it wasn't better than you thought, right? Come on, come on, come on.
They kinda, they, they kinda, um, spread it what I was saying, yeah.
But so do that, if someone's on some bullshit, they're like, hey.
The little black guy with the hood on, he with them, right?
Yeah.
So why he, he kinda like instigate the shit and go back over there, he like standing over here then he'll go.
I mean, they want some smoke, if we went in this police lot, I think it would've popped off.
Exactly, and that's exactly why.
That's the only thing stopping it from popping off.
This is a concealed carry statement.
And then, you know, people from out west, man, they would've called the cavalry.
They going in the police station with pistols, cuz that's their family. What is the, the shit they wearing, the BMD?
You know, they activists too, they do shit too, I don't know, that's what the lady said, we do shit for, we do shit for Brad Feen, we do shit for Chicago, all this shit all around the world. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
Gang immobilization.
They some type of activist too, it ain't no gang shit, it ain't no gang shit, I just think they her family and they, you know, she ain't not getting the tongue slashed and they don't like that shit.
I got to look that up and see whatever the fuck they're part of, cuz, you know, they got some shit over here on Plasby over here, and it's not the same thing.
They definitely from out west somewhere, you know what I'm saying?
Anyway, thanks y'all.
Alright, thank you too, be safe.
Y'all doing okay?
Oh, yeah, I'm cool.
What's your name, brother? I don't think I, I always see you with Derek, but I wonder if I asked your name before, John?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, I mixed it up, I'm Brian, nice to meet you.
You know, and that dumpster was.
Oh, it was in dumpster?
Wait, wait, that, okay, there was someone in the flag, in the dumpster before me, and I became dumpster person, but I think the flag was in the dumpster, right? Unless someone, unless, did someone? Unless someone grabbed it and...
No, I think so.
We'll get confirmation on that before starting a big rumor. But it might as well have been in the dumpster.
All I know is that it got put from the storage, like, from the storage stuff, the truck...
Yeah.
To my car.
Okay.
It wasn't in my car before the truck, so you probably got it out of the dumpster.
That's probably right.
I don't remember taking it. I feel like I would've remembered taking it to the police house.
Turn around, yo. We got the wall. You ready? Alright, come on with that.
Right back. Don't forget your stuff to do that.
Y'all be safe. RIP.
Do you see any cars pulling off at that?
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? Like, see, we from the same world, so we get it. They don't get it, bro.
My people be watching these lines, so they know.
Alright, put my people on point. I had got into it with them last time, but quite honestly, I ain't really on that shit, but I ain't finna be intimidated or be scared or no shit like that either, though, but...
My people on their type of time, dude. That's why they watching the line.
You know, following them to that cop, man, if that was my motherfucking mommy and auntie and sisters and cousins, man, he would've got flatlined.
But the problem is, is that you don't know what the lady asking for help. Or was she just, when you get over there, she'd have to see some whole other shit.
I watched him follow them on my kids.
No, you listen to what I'm saying. When the lady come over there, he was concerned about helping the lady.
With who, who?
The black lady.
I'm saying, who was concerned about helping?
When you, when you walked over there behind her, she was threatening you.
She saying, "Get back, get back," but when I said, "I'm listening," she said, "Okay, not you."
That's why I don't talk. But when you got over there, the whole thing turned to you turn. "I don't want you over here."
Didn't say that to me?
Yes, she did. She was doing this to you.
Right. At first, she said, "Y'all get back, y'all get back."
Why, that's why she want you to get back. Hold on. But now, she pushing you back.
She then pushed me.
Look, she like this. "I don't want you over here." Okay, she not the police. Okay, now when you get in there, it's some whole other different shit going on. Now, this is why I asked you. They must be the male family.
I got into it with them same two dudes last time. There was a mayor meeting up here. Them the dudes who told me he'll knock my dread off. I told you that when we were first coming up here. So soon as I walked up in there, he start whispering all they air in the dolphin jacket, in the dolphin jacket. But, you know, I ain't really worried about that shit and I ain't really on shit, but I am gonna protect myself if a motherfucker try to do something to me, though. And then, that's why you see, he kinda walked up on me and he was like, "What you doing all waste for corn, motherfucker? You running around with the Ku Klux Klan and all that shit. That's where all that shit comes from." I tell the man, like, "I'm a journalist. I'm about my motherfucking self. I just ain't scared." Then other dude walked in my face, "You ain't gotta be scared. You ain't gotta be scared." I'm not scared. All my kids like us...
Who says it's the black guy?
Yeah, with the black hoodie on, yeah, who got up there and spoke and really just threatened motherfuckers for real.
So, so who was he talking about?
I got real enemies, bro. I ain't got time to be beefing with no motherfucker about what happened at no mayor meeting. You say what?
Who was the guy talking about when he talking that threatening part?
He just talking to all the protesters.
No, he meant, he was kinda pointing it to somebody.
Oh, yeah, he was looking at somebody, but I felt like he was looking at me. You know how that shit go? See, I thought he was looking at me, but I actually think he was talking to somebody behind me. But shit, you know, man? It is what it is, bro. Like, all that shit, I got more shit going on, but I just ain't gonna let nobody do shit to me. It's just simple as that, bro. I ain't trying to be beefing with no motherfucker about no protest or about what a motherfucker saying to a mayor or some shit like that. Motherfucker got real shit going on in the streets. Ain't nobody got time for that shit, man. If y'all know the people ain't happy with the mayor, I know, I mean... I know y'all wanna come up there and support her and then get on the mic and say good shit too. That's cool. But it's like, ain't nothing gonna happen to Katrina up in that motherfucker, man. This lady got the, the police had to snap her mother off the fingers.
That's what I'm saying. That's why I didn't understand.
Ain't nobody finna do nothing to that lady, bro. You know what I'm saying? But what I would get him is they was leaving. They were going to their car. He followed them. We from the same place. I ain't finna let no motherfucker follow me to my car either. Especially when you got all them women with you, come on, bro. And that white boy out there, stone drunk, gonna get his ass beat.
I don't even get in the thing going, "Oh, I'm gonna put women..." Because, why don't you just get your sniffer nelson? And it's most of it is nothing but a misunderstanding.
What that lady, what that black lady in that red shirt was saying to their ass was true.
Which lady?
That light-skinned lady with them braids.
Light-skinned braids?
Yeah, she was the man going talking, telling their ass, "Y'all ain't about no peace. This shit a joke." Y'all ass like, "Come on, bro, that shit was true." Then y'all half-stepping, bro. You ain't finna shake shit. You following motherfuckers. Your ass ain't finna, bro. You ain't finna shake nothing. The white dude. Drunk as hell. Didn't see the other white dude come back and say, "Now that I'm stoned, out my mind. I was wrong." The fuck, huh? That's why I quit smoking weed, bro, 'cause that shit is like, come on, man. You need weed to calm you down. You need weed to realize you was wrong. You need weed to eat. You need weed to sleep. You need weed to fuck. Man, you don't quit smoking that shit. That man told me, "Yo ass up here running with the Ku Klux Klan." Bro, what is you, bro, what is you talking about, bro? Could be crazy, bro. She trying to recruit us and shit, man. We not finna be in that shit. When you see her, you guys got a lot of knowledge. So what? Their ass better get some knowledge. We from a different place, that's why. She with the rabbi. Alright, what the fuck? You wanna just keep that thing? Cause my car down here. You wanna just keep that battery tight? Finally get you on. Your phone ain't gonna die before you get to your car.
No, 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 no. Oh, trust, I'ma be straight.
Just let me know if you coming out here tomorrow or something. Hit me on the phone.
Alright.
I'll see you tomorrow, John.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Alright. What's the word, y'all? This shit just done, damn. This shit just done to get crazy and crazy. Motherfucker be talking about this YouTube shit easy, or this YouTube shit this, or this YouTube shit that, man, please. Nah, y'all be talking about some... Talk to him, Jake. Man, look at that shit. Play Disney Mary's. If you trying to fuck up my shit too, if your ass don't come up with a better plan. I know, right? That after all that and a motherfucker trying to talk positive and all that shit, that what he come up with. Yeah, just play Disney's copyright. Sit your ass down. Y'all can't kick people out, y'all little group. Some people need to be kicked the fuck out. Where I used to be out there, I used to be on that type of time and shit. I don't know, I'm not finna be doing that. I'm not finna be doing that. I'ma continue to be Jake. Continue to do my thing. And that's it. They all know how shit can get. I don't know what suburb they from or where they from, but, bro, I'm from a hood. I know how shit can get. It don't take a lot of drama. It don't take a major issue for shit to get major, like they ass playing, bro. Motherfucker know where y'all at every day, bro. Every day, motherfucker know where y'all at, bro. It get dark at five o'clock now, bro. Like, what the fuck? Y'all ass low-key playing with fire, bro. Don't nobody play like that? Not where I come from. And then, it's like, right is right and wrong is wrong. You following them, it's like four guys with them and like ten ladies. What you doing? They like, they got elderly women with them. Not that it matter, but like, come on, man, like, what the fuck? Man, what the fuck? Imagine a motherfucker following you and you with your mama. What the fuck you doing? You don't get the fuck back? Like, what the fuck? You with your auntie. You with your lady. Come on, you with your daughter. Come on, bro, ain't nobody playing like that, bro. Yo ass better go protest some motherfucking way. Yo ass better go holler ice some motherfucking way. I'ma keep it a buck and I ain't scared of no motherfucker, bro. Shit gonna be where it gonna be. We all gotta leave this motherfucker one day anyway. But I ain't finna sit up and laugh at no grown-ass motherfuckers either. You shouldn't have followed them people to their motherfucking car. Fuck outta here. In the reality of it, you ain't even on shit. You just trying to look tough, trying to look hard. You're gonna get your ass hurt. The fuck? Cause you drunk. Off that motherfucking liquor curvis, gonna get hit sober. Oh, bro, great. Motherfuckers don't be playing, bro. You know what I'm saying? If y'all wanna go in there and say whatever y'all gonna say to the mayor, that's y'all right, whatever the fuck. You know what I'm saying? But once you get out that building and you dealing with motherfuckers who ain't in no public office and you dealing with motherfuckers who you don't really know, man, you better chill. Motherfuckers really be out here doing shit. I appreciate y'all too. I knew it was finna be like that. I already knew when y'all was asking me to go up there. I already knew I had to be on point. Cause last time I was up there, I like had words with them same dudes. As soon as I walk up in the building, he like, you know what I'm saying, shaking his head. Like, people like me, I know what that mean. You know what I'm saying? Like, it's a clear signal, but it's good. You know what I'm saying? A motherfucker ain't scared. It is what it is. So it's still that. It is what it is, bro. I ain't gotta show my hand and start acting all crazy and start acting all tough, just long as don't nobody touch me, because... In reality, I ain't here to touch no motherfucker. I'm just not gonna be touched on my mama. Like, what the fuck? You, you, out of all the crowd, you talking all this Ku Klux Klan shit, but you coming right in my motherfucking face. We both black. So what's all that about? Like, come on, bro. I'm the only motherfucker you did target. I'm the only motherfucker you did say something to. The other black man. Like, what the fuck? Start telling a motherfucker, "Ain't on shit. I'm just recording. Ain't on shit. I'm just recording. I'm just recording." Come on, bro. Who the fuck trying to get it on in the police parking lot? I came here to record. Yeah, last time I was up here, yeah, I was like them motherfucking protesters. I'm stupid as hell, hollering and screaming, saying a whole bunch of dumb shit or whatever the fuck. So it ain't like I don't know where his anger come from, okay, so you could say he justified in that, but that shit been like two weeks ago, bro. I done made a whole turn in what I'm on and what I'm trying to do, but, bro... I ain't scared of you, gang. You know what I'm saying? Like, I'm not scared of you, broski. That is what it is, but at the same time, I don't hate you either. I don't wanna do shit to you either. Like, what the fuck? I'm just gonna protect myself, bro. I ain't coming up here with no motherfucking camera to do nothing to nobody, bro. How much sense that make? I wouldn't have brought the camera. Come on, bro, I ain't got no hate in my heart for you, bro. Watch out. You got some hate for me, bro. You know what I'm saying? And if it's really some hate like that, like, ain't nobody gotta lose their life or no shit like that, or whatever the fuck you wanna call it, like... I ain't these protesters. We could just go around the corner and get it on. I still respect you as a man after. We still can be cool after. Come on, bro, I ain't no bitch. It ain't gotta be no whole big rumble and all that shit if you just got a problem with me. Like, come on, bro. You ain't gotta put me with the whole crowd. I'm with John. That's the only motherfucker I'm with. Come on, bro. Sabby left. That's the only motherfucker I was with, bro. This motherfucker, mm. This shit be getting out of hand for my kids. If that shit keep happening like that at these committee meetings, bro, it ain't gonna be long before some shit do happen, bro. It ain't gonna be long before some shit do happen. Somebody gonna bring some or somebody just gonna like wait down the street or some shit like that. Some motherfuckers get to walking off in dispersing and all that shit. There's some shit gonna happen. Come on, Brian, I say that a million times, bro. And motherfuckers saying, they think like airtime, some real shit happen, like some Pew Pew shit or something like that, that it's some magic shit going on. Sometimes it's the smallest fucking shit you can imagine and that shit make it all the way to there. Come on, bro. It don't have to be no big deal, bro. It don't have to be what you do to my mama type shit, bro. It don't.
Then they say, "Oh, they gonna take the clips and make us look like this and that."
No, it look like exactly what it is, 'cause I'ma just put the whole damn stream up. Nobody gotta make y'all look like nothing, bro. Y'all making y'all self look like it and blaming everybody else for what you look like. Like, what the fuck? Ain't taking no accountability, no responsibility. Ain't even holding the motherfucker on the side of you accountable or nothing. Treat the motherfucker like a kid. I don't wanna point the finger at nobody. Why not? That shit justified. Why not point at his ass? You fucked up. Fuck is you talking about? You can get us all hurt. Yo ass ain't gonna do shit. The fuck is you talking about, bro? Nobody with that shit. No motherfucker damn near trying to recruit me. Damn near trying to. Man, leave me the fuck alone. Yeah, that's the birds, bro. But that's the birds, but them people ain't. That's the problem, bro. Them people ain't from no motherfucking birds, bro. Them people from where I'm from. The birds are getting shipped the fuck up. Come on, bro. You ain't hear that lady in there talking about her son got red rummed in Broadview? You ain't hear that? Motherfucker bring the west side right here. Look how quiet it be out here. Look at this shit. Come on, bro, look. Look at this shit. This is easier place to do it. Come on, bro. These people got ten, fifteen officers. These people got six, seven officers on duty at a motherfucking time. Look at this. Everybody asleep. Ain't nobody out here. It's dark as hell, bro. This shit would happen to you out here quicker than it'd happen in the city, bro. This shit too easy. The expressway right down Twenty-Fifth. That motherfucking expressway right there. Out west, ten minutes from this motherfucker. Shoot, man, motherfucker be out this motherfucker laid out. Laid the fuck out. Broadview ain't no good homicide officers. You feel me? Like, come on, bro. They ain't got the resources and the shit to, come on, man. Yo ass gonna be out this bitch gone. They probably be scared to even respond to the scene type shit on my mama. They don't get no calls like that. None of that, don't no shit come over their radio like that. I ain't stupid to nobody, love. I ain't got no problems with nobody. I just ain't gonna let nobody do nothing to me. I ain't got no problem with them people, bro. Once that shit happened last time, that shit was over. That shit was over for me. But I can't control everybody else. I can't control if you still mad at me. I can't control if you still wanna do something to me. All I can do is protect myself, and that's my right as an American. What the fuck? I can't make you stop being mad at me. I can't make you stop wanna harm me. I ain't got that power. You put me in the mix with a whole bunch of other motherfuckers I ain't even with, bro. If my people was up here, my people would be looking just like your people. I'm from the same place you from. The fuck you think these my people for? Trying to change my motherfucking life. Leave me the fuck alone. See, that's what causes violence, bro. And then you got motherfuckers half-stepping, bro. When you from places like, motherfuckers, what, like we from, urban communities and shit, bro, you can smell that shit on a motherfucker, somebody who ain't really on that shit. Just as well as you can smell that shit on a motherfucker who really will do that shit, bro. Them the instincts you get, being from places like we come from, bro. You can tell when a motherfucker ain't playing, bro. You can tell when a motherfucker really hurt you, bro. The fuck? If you can't do that and your ass in the ghetto, you cooked. Gotta know who to play with and who not to play with, bro. You definitely can see it in somebody's demeanor, bro. Everybody ain't playing, bro. Everybody ain't nice. Everybody ain't good, bro. It's people out here who really put shit down, bro. Permanently. Come on, man, this shit happen every day. I just was telling y'all yesterday, when we were following them, when they were following, when, when we was following them with the camera, when they were following the white boy, I tell you, "You don't go up to no car? You don't go up to no house?" I just was telling y'all that. What? You don't follow nobody today, personal, nothing. Come on, bro. You don't stand there with somebody say, "I'll be back." You don't stay right there till they come back. What you think that mean? What you think that mean? They doing all that wuffin'. These people on them phones, bro. That shit is real, bro. Your ass tweaking. You sitting here wuffin', talking all this protesting shit, them people is on the phone, bro. The fuck you think they calling they girl? Who the fuck you think they talking to? Their kids? They wanna do that shit, man. I ain't really got shit against them protesters either, but they wanna do that shit. They coming out to do that shit. Y'all ain't coming out trying to help them people in that motherfucking ICE facility, man. Y'all ain't coming out trying to make Broadview better, man. Y'all coming out to agitate, bro. Y'all coming out to stir up shit, bro. And that's why them people in there deep as hell. And that's why they getting they people to come. And that's why they trying to get they crowd too. Cause on my kids, that's what y'all on, bro. The fuck is you talking about, bro? But then it's like, "Oh, they came to agitate." No, they came to match the energy. Fuck is you talking about? Cause you ain't like that. You acting like you like that cause you in the police parking lot. You ain't like that. Your ass ain't never did nothing to nobody. The fuck outta here. Your ass ain't never had a fight. Your ass ain't never had a fucking fight. Motherfuckers think they tough cause they hollering and screaming and police face all fucking day. Fuck outta here, bro. If a motherfucker get on your ass with some real smoke, you ain't gonna do shit. You was not ready for that west side wrath. You, you ain't ready for that shit, bro. That shit ain't no joke, bro. Don't let Brandon Johnson lie to you talking about crime down, bro. Your ass tweaking. Standing in front of my eyes too. I done saw that shit hit people. I done saw people drop to the floor like a motherfucking bag of laundry. That shit ain't no joke. That shit ain't nothing pretty to see. My kids have a motherfucker traumatized for two, three months after seeing that shit. The fuck? Well, your ass somewhere on a t-shirt. Playing. Playing tough protester. Sit your motherfucking ass down. Fuck is you talking about? They won't even call him out on the shit. Think I'm finna join some shit like that. If I was in that shit, he gonna get his ass smacked. That's just the reality of it. Cause you putting us all in danger, gang? Fuck is you doing? It's the same thing if you in the hood, bro. You gotta check your homie. Come on, bro. You gotta be able to tell your homie when he wrong, bro. Some shit you do can, we all could be in a fucking war after this for some shit you did. Fuck, you talking about, I gotta hold a motherfucker accountable. Sit your goof ass down somewhere. Fuck up outta here. Being in a crowd like that, a motherfucker like me gonna get targeted first all the time, cuz they know I'm from where they from. Know what I'm saying? So, I'm already getting looked at like somebody who might be a problem. Cause just like I could see it on them, they could see it on me. It is what your homie do, bro. Plenty wars that started off with shit that one member did, bro. Ain't even get with the crew. Ain't nobody even green light this shit or nothing. Motherfucker just ran off and did some shit over a girl, over some small shit. And now, two hoods is in two. It's up. Come on, bro. I ain't finna be out here in two if, cause no motherfucking protesters. Y'all got me fucked up. Be out this bitch in two if, cause no motherfucking protesting. Not finna be out this bitch brawling, cause no shit that just happened at a fucking town hall meeting. The fuck? If, if we was at a, say if we was at a town hall meeting for Brandon Johnson or something, and we was in that motherfucking city, and we was in Chicago. Bro, man, please. I fucking wouldn't be in there acting like that, bro. Your ass wouldn't be able to come out the building. My kids. Acting tough ain't gonna help you at all when a motherfucker really is tough. Acting like you'll do something ain't gonna help you at all when a motherfucker really will do something. That shit ain't gonna help you, bro. Should not talking to all that shit, then get hit in your mouth. Now what? Now what's the plan? You ain't got no fucking plan. Your plan was to run your mouth. Right, new teeth on my kids. Dentist appointment. They just gonna target me the same reason I'd target one of them if they was in a crowd like that. Because you trying to take the fucking threat out. You trying to, you trying to get the one who might be a problem. That's how that shit go. A lot of times, you have these crews of 20, 30 people, it's only really like four, five of them who really will do some shit, so they the ones getting targeted. Cause you know, if you get them four, five motherfuckers, the rest of them just gonna move out of town some motherfucking way. Ain't nobody targeting no goofies. Ain't nobody going for the lames. Nobody want you. Ain't no motherfucker looking for you. You free to go where the fuck you want to. Fuck, we gonna waste our time trying to get you for? Your ass ain't no threat. That's how this shit go. There don't be no fights here. That ain't what happened here. That's what them protesters think gonna happen. This shit ain't about fighting. This shit ain't about fighting. This shit past fighting. Where I come from, you beat a motherfucker ass, you know what's gonna happen. My kids, you know what's gonna happen. No nobody fight. Know the type of shit people got in this city, bro. And I'm not even bragging on it, the shit, it's the reality of it. Bro, these people, they got shit. My kids. Ain't nobody running around this bitch with no Ford cars, bro. Ain't nobody running around this bitch with no legal shit, bro. It's a reason for that. Come on, bro. Ain't no motherfucker looking to catch no self-defense around this bitch. Bro, if you got a legal one, you can't even go. If that bitch registered to you, you can't even get in the car. You can't even come. The fuck? I swear, I been to got your ass stomped a few times after you down. You ain't getting in this motherfucking car with no registered weapon. Your ass tweaking. The fuck on? Ain't none of these bitches registered. Fuck, these bitches stolen and all type of shit. It's like, he came up that bitch looking for me though, I ain't even gonna lie. It's like, shit, it's like yesterday, he was like, "He hope I come." On my kids. But it's important not to be scared, bro. You can't show no weakness, bro. That ain't gonna stop no motherfucker from doing shit to you, cause you scared. I'm not scared. If it happened, it happened. If a motherfucker go, a motherfucker go. Do I wanna go? Hell, no. But if it happened, it happened. I'm not finna be scared, bro. My mama. And if you do it, you better do it. You better absolutely do it. I ain't even thinking about the man. The man like kinda walking by me, sucking on his teeth. Doing shit like that, shaking his head. Like, body language a motherfucker in this city, bro. Motherfucker ain't gotta say too much, bro. Motherfucker ain't gotta do too much, bro. Like, fuck ain't gotta do too much, bro. A lot of shit be real simple, bro. And if you know, you know. If you don't, you toast. That's how it be. No motherfucker gotta do all that hooping and hollering and all that shit, bro. See, for the most part, them dudes was quiet. Them women hollering. Them women talking. Them dudes are quiet, bro. You always gotta watch the quiet motherfucker, bro. That motherfucker who hollering and screaming and saying all this shit, he probably a bitch. Ten times out of ten, he a bitch. But that motherfucker who quiet in the midst of all the commotion, that's who you watch. That whatever he went, I went. Cause I gotta stay close to you, bro. I'm not even necessarily on what you on, but I know you on it. I gotta stay close to you. No angles, no positioning on me, none of that shit. That's just, that's, that's just the rules of the game. I'm trying to get my damn car tanked. Dang. Leave me alone. I don't be shit by the devil. You trying to do good, you trying to do the right thing, you trying to change, and here come the goddamn death. Head on the swivel, shit, motherfucker steady looking up. Every car, every... Come on, bro. I know what'll happen. I know what can happen. I ain't blind to that. I done lived this type of shit my whole life. Yeah, I know how to control myself, you know? I'm just in the mode where I'm gonna protect myself. I, I'm not, I'm not finna do nothing to them first. I mean, he could say what he wanna say, he could do what he wanna do. That's his right. Just don't touch me, gang. But I ain't, I ain't got no hate in my heart for bro now. Shit, I, I, I'm standing in that motherfucking shit, then I'm thinking the girl who's standing next to me, pretty as fuck. I'm more worried about trying to talk to her. A motherfucker get outside, I see she related to them. I'm, damn. I'm trying to talk to a fucking girl. Ain't nobody worried about these dudes. She's, we standing there the whole motherfucking time. She ringing the chat and all type of shit. We get outside, she acting a motherfucker for the YouTube channel, saying she wanna watch it and shit. Trying to talk to the fucking girl. Man, I wouldn't even be able to feel comfortable doing that. You know? That happen a lot here too. For the end of this stream, I love y'all. We'll be back at it tomorrow. Thank each and every last one of y'all. I love y'all. And we gonna be back out here tomorrow, doing the same thing. Can't even do my outro like I used to do it, but I love y'all for the end.